Hours will be cut. Eventually, we have to start informing people about that. So that's what I'm trying to get at. I know the discussion is going on, but I'm talking about when do we as council members, as mayor, as you know, different entities representing our constituents, when do we start rolling out the hard reality check? When do we start notifying? Is it in two weeks? Is it a month? When do these discussions begin to finish so we can make some statements?
I would say exactly two weeks or a month. The fact of the matter is that we're facing a really horrible budget time and departments are going to very quickly need to define what they're going to be doing and what they're not going to be doing and adjust their staffing accordingly. And those decisions have to be made.
There was no vote on item thirty-six, but it was noted and filed with a request for regular updates on the state budget situation. Troubled by the fire department's modified coverage plan, Janice Hawn wants details on the reduction of services.
The department has informed us that they will begin to reduce operations as early as next week, which is why I thought it was crucial to bring them here today to explain what this plan is, maybe what the plan seems, what the problem seems to be with the negotiations. And according to what we've heard, this reduction will result in an elimination of as many as thirty-eight engines, trucks, and ambulances, and one hundred and twenty-five fewer employees on duty every day. And we're worried that these cuts will result in increased response times to emergency calls throughout our entire city. The mayor has proposed a transfer of thirteen million from the reserve fund to LAPD to help mitigate one-fourth of the required resource reductions, but the department will still face a thirty-nine million dollar shortfall. So again, I felt it was very important to invite the fire department to the table and to explain to us what their modified coverage means in terms of our public safety. And we don't have to say that public safety has been number-one, number-one, number-one with the city council. When we go through our contract negotiations of our employees, sometimes we even get criticized because we have always been about firefighters and police officers in the city, so this troubles many of us. And this is, I think, very hard to sell to our constituents that in these times, that your answer to the budget is to reduce services, increase response times, and take out of service these engines, trucks, and ambulances every single day. So you've got some explaining to do.
Good morning, Mr. President and the council members and Councilwoman Hahn. You're correct. The Los Angeles Fire Department has been given the unfortunate task of, in the oh-nine-ten budget year, of reducing ten percent of its cost. In that, we have a total reduction of fifty-six million dollars, four million of which is being handled or put upon our civilian workforce, and a balance of fifty-two million dollars, which is unfortunately upon our sworn service delivery. As Councilwoman Hahn said, this is not something the fire department wants to do, absolutely not. It's nothing that any of us want to do, and we all understand that because as a city, we do feel that public safety is one of the primary goals of government. But with that said, the fire department also understands its responsibility in that the city does face a deficit, a huge one, and that we also have to be responsive to the needs of helping the city fulfill that deficit void. With that said, what the fire department has been charged with is develop a plan. The plan is called the Modified Coverage Plan, and in that plan, there will be citywide rotating closures of fire companies, ambulances, and other types of resources.
Standing to explain how the current budget was developed and approved, District Eight Councilmember and Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee Bernard Parks calls on the chief legislative analyst Jerry Miller to further detail the harsh reality.
Many of the decisions that's driving the fire department in every department of the city were approved when we approved the budget. And just to remind everybody that we cut every department three times. We took all of their positions that were vacant. We took all of, we took about from five to maybe seven percent of their salary so that they had salary savings, so they had no flexibility. We even took all the new positions, unfunded them and put them in the UB so they couldn't fill new positions. And then we had something called shared responsibility. It said every department has to then cut ten percent. So this was a part of the budget that we approved. Now, the positions were still in the budget, but there's far less money in the budget. And so I'd like Jerry to go through the chart, just give you an idea. And I think what's important when you look at the chart, and I won't steal Jerry's thunder, but the one thing that you need to be aware of is that gray line on two-nine-ten, four-point-four billion dollars. Just be aware, if the revenue doesn't come in, that number drops wherever the revenue. This is a projection, not real money. So Jerry, why don't you go through the chart and tell us what this means?
Sure. We put this together, I think, as some of the questions about the confusion between special fund and general fund and discretionary, non-discretionary. What this is intended to do is to show you how much money you actually have available to you to balance the budget. Now, there is a four-point-four billion dollar general fund budget this year, but fully half of that is non-discretionary. Half of that, two, four-point-four billion dollars, is pensions, it's benefits, it's the Wreck and Parks Charter appropriation, it's the Library Charter appropriation, it's liability claims, it's utilities, it's debt service. That's not money that you can use to program for services. So of the two-point-two billion you have available for services, police and fire sworn takes up one-point-four billion of that. That's sixty-five percent. So if you're exempting police and fire sworn from budget cuts, in essence, you have seven-hundred-and-eighty million dollars to use to try and balance the rest of the budget. Now, you know, clearly, there are a whole series of bad decisions that are coming before you. None of these decisions are going to be pleasant to make. If you were to not, if the fire department was to not move forward with the redeployment plan, and that forty million dollars was moved from the shared sacrifice column back into their budget, you would need to go down and move forty million dollars out of somebody else's budget into the shared sacrifice. And that represents approximately nine-hundred layoffs. That recommends, that represents approximately ten furlough days for all civilian employees on top of the twenty-six furlough days that were already approved. If you move forward with the E-RIP, and again, I'm speaking here on things that have been discussed publicly, not in terms of negotiations, but the E-RIP, which will come before you next week, would exempt the coalition employees from furloughs and layoffs, which means that of the remaining people, that would require an additional twenty-two furlough days on top of the twenty-six. That's just the forty million dollars we're talking about here. That does not address the one hundred and thirty million dollars that still is unidentified with LAPD. And I think, as Mr. Solana can indicate to you in terms of the balance of the reserve fund, there really is very, very little left in our contingency reserve.
Cutting ten percent across the board is not the correct approach, according to District Five Councilmember Paul Coretts, who reveals his one strict rule.
Approach to this. We heard this item in public safety yesterday, and although you had to be prodded a little bit, but my sense of your testimony was, there's no question, if we implement this, this will actually cost lives. People will actually die because of the decisions that we're about to make. From my point of view, as an elected official for many years, I have one strict policy, which is I don't vote for anything that kills people. So given the choice, if a few fewer trees get trimmed, or a few fewer potholes get filled, the people who aren't alive to view the fact that you filled the pothole in front of their house, I think would appreciate that priority. I think, I wasn't here to vote for the budget, but a budget that just makes an across-the-board ten percent cut without taking things like this into effect, I think this is really budgeting with a meat axe, which I don't think is the way this council should approach this. I think we either need to work with the unions to come up with some sort of an agreement that can resolve this problem, which I've heard could be in the offing, or we need to find the money from somewhere else. And I don't necessarily care where it comes from because this is the absolute worst place to cut. Certainly, we have to take the thirteen million from our reserves because the alternative, I think, is clearly too disastrous. But the rest of this thirty-nine million, I think, is almost equally disastrous. You can't slow down response times without killing people. I don't think that's an option. It's certainly not an option for me. So one way or another, I want to see us turn this around, and I want to see us give clear direction, August first, they cannot start this process.
An impassioned Tony Cardenas explains the possible consequences if Los Angeles is forced to declare bankruptcy.
Are we going to look at the issues for what they are and realize that we have to make tough decisions, that we were elected to do? Or are we going to say, oh, no, the fire department, we're not going to make them make the cuts because it's about fire, life, and safety, and people are going to die, Mr. Coretts? But then again, when the Parks Department comes over to us and they let us know that if we shut down our parks, more kids just might shoot themselves or get shot at because they don't have a safe place to be. That's life and death too, especially in my district. So the reason why I'm starting here, and I'm going to push my button again because we only get three minutes, is that this is, this is a disingenuous conversation that we have with the public and with our departments when we bring in issues like, people are going to die, that's my rule as an elected official, and I can't vote for this. Sorry, we don't get that privilege. That is something we don't get. We do get to vote however we want, and then we have to deal with the consequences. But the consequence that is before us today isn't about the department, the fire department alone. The consequences, ladies and gentlemen, are this. People talk about people are going to die. The city of Los Angeles can die by bankruptcy. And when the city of Los Angeles goes bankrupt, guess what, fire department, police department, recreation and parks, you're going to get cut thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent. I'd like people to start addressing that because that's the real issue that Bernard Parks brings up, and people are sick and tired of it because he's the most diligent person when it comes to bringing that up. And it's just like, you know what? I swear, it's just like my children. I have to tell them all the time, clean your room. Guess what, council members? Our job is to keep clean the city of Los Angeles, and bankruptcy is unacceptable. That is what this is about today. The root of what we're talking about today is bankruptcy. And I'm going to keep saying it, and keep saying it, and keep saying it because too many politicians today don't have the guts to talk about that. All we're worried about all too often is our rear end in our next election, and we do not want the firefighters to be on the opposite side of our election. We don't want the LAPPL to be on the opposite side. We don't want the police chief and the fire chief to say something about us, which might be true, he cut my budget, but nobody talks. It's too complicated to talk about the fact that this is about bankruptcy of the city of Los Angeles, period. That's what this is about.
No action was taken on the fire department's request to transfer thirteen million dollars from the reserve fund to help ease the fifty-two million dollar shortfall the department is facing. The item will be held over for further discussion and subsequent action. On Wednesday, July twenty-ninth, your city council considered the mayor's appointment of Miguel Santana as permanent Los Angeles City Administrative Officer, known as the CAO. District Eight Councilmember Bernard Parks introduces Mr. Santana and asks for remarks.
This may be one of the most important decisions that any of us will make over the next several years. As we know how much we rely on the CAO's position, we saw how we went through at least an eight or nine-hour exercise to select the CLA a couple of years ago. And so it is important, is something that I think all of us should be prepared to listen to Mr. Santana's remarks, but also ask those questions early on as to the issues that you may have concerns about so he can explain them in open public so that you're fully aware where he stands on a variety of issues. You know, I don't know whether we would congratulate him or give him condolences to walk into a job in which he's confronted immediately with several hundred million dollars of deficit and attempting to move this administrative process forward. I would not like to, in my comments, without thanking Ray, who I think did a wonderful job as the interim, that basically kept us on course and certainly understands that budget as well as anybody in this city. And one of the things, as a selfish issue with this appointment, we get Ray back in the Budget and Finance Committee, which is something that we will work him even harder. But I just want Mr. Santana to just give your opening remarks. We discussed some of these issues with you at the committee, and I think it's important that the whole body hears your remarks, and then they may formulate their own questions to get back after you finish.
Good morning. I guess this is the official hot seat. I'm used to the one down the street. Council President Garcetti and members of the city council, I am honored to be before you today as a nominee for the position of City Administrative Officer for the city of Los Angeles. These are certainly difficult times. However, today's challenges bring an opportunity to improve upon our ability to deliver services, restore confidence among our employees, and set a new solid foundation for our city's future. This is the reason that I'm here before you today. I am proud to state that I'm, my parents and my wife and daughters and family are with me today. And as a son of Mexican immigrants, I have chosen a career in public service. As public servants, we are entrusted by taxpayers to ensure that each dollar is spent wisely to produce quality, responsive, and relevant government services. Our greatest challenge is to balance our responsibility to live within our means while ensuring the best services in an effective, efficient, and transparent manner. This work can be done together as one city towards a common goal. As your CAO, it will be my responsibility to work with your council, the mayor, labor and community stakeholders to set priorities, eliminate inefficiencies and redundancies, and develop a blueprint for change. Moreover, it will be my duty to help you harness your ideas and drive them towards results. The CAO is the city's independent voice in providing the mayor, the city council, with the best fiscal counsel and credible factual information to enable you to make the tough decisions that shape the present and future path. The CAO is here to assist the city's elected officials to set a course, and once that course is set, it will be my job to keep the ship sailing in that direction, no matter how turbulent the fiscal realities may be.
After a lengthy period of questioning from council members, the vote was taken.
Thank you. That is the last speaker on the queue, so colleagues may now have the vote on the new city administrative officer before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard.
Looking forward to it.
Please get the handcuffs. There's no leaving now.
The CAO is the chief financial advisor to the mayor and council, and assists the mayor and council in the preparation of the city budget, and also represents the management of the city in negotiating all labor contracts. We here at Channel Thirty-Five congratulate Mr. Santana on his new appointment. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And now, those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall located at six-thirty-eight South Beacon Street, room seven-hundred in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at ten AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings beginning at ten AM. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at nine-thirty AM and six-thirty PM, and on Sunday at nine-thirty AM. That concludes our program for the week ending July thirty-first, two thousand and nine. On behalf of Jack Pope, Joy, and everyone here at Channel Thirty-Five, I'm Mike Hoffman. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
My name is Daniel.
I lost my puppy. Can you help me?
We have a critical missing. There is an Amber Alert, so let's look for any information you get, pass that into the Watch Commander. Let's be careful out there.
To fight crime and to keep our streets safe.
I think we're nuts because of my dog.
We're here at seven eight five five seven eight five two hundred and seventy. In our home, they can hardly find the child market. Suspect may have been found in a private residence by a suspect who tried to take him to the police.
Seven eight five five.
All units, call four eleven to call the suspect.
Standing with our community.
Now, please, upon this warning issued account holder, a suspect is driving a black car Pacific.
Working as a team.
Hey, what's up?
I think I saw that car that you were looking for.
Is yours?
Yeah.
That's your ride.
They take pride in what they do.
And when duty calls,
the LAPD responds.
Pause it on the vehicle.
Roger. Pass that to you, El Pausa, on the Amber Alert vehicle.
It looks like they found the car.
The LAPD is hiring. Become a part of the team. Visit us at joinlapd.com.
G'day, Troy McAlvin from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Reyes seconds without objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next order of business, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Weston moves and Mr. Smith seconds without an objection. Those will be approved as well. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday and there's a flag salute.
I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Parks, would you be kind enough to lead us?
Everyone stand, face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Next, if we can run through the agenda.
Mr. President, item one is the notice joint meeting with the CRA and the City Council regarding the Adelante Eastside redevelopment project. Do you wish to hold this on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk.
Next items, items two through four are street lining district ordinances notice for public hearing.
Okay, do we have any cards from the public on this?
There are no cards.
Okay, let's go ahead and we do, we are expecting, no, I'm sorry, we're not expecting 12 members today, so let's go ahead and prepare the roll on those and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Since we have less than 12 members, that will go to a second reading a week from today. Next items, please.
Items five through forty are items for which public hearings have been held. On item six, there is a request to continue that matter to September 8th.
Okay, I'd like to call thirteen special if there's no objection to continuing six to the eighth. We'll go ahead and do that. Mr. Parks?
If you have five special.
Okay, other specials, colleagues, we're on five through forty. Items five through forty. Ms. Han? Twenty-four for Ms. Han. If there are no other specials, let's go ahead and take the balance, please. We can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Fourteen and twenty will send forth with without objection. Next items, please.
Items forty-one through fifty-five are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Sorry, I'd like to ask for item number forty to be continued for one week.
Item four?
Forty.
Forty. Okay, we just, we just voted on, so let's go ahead and reconsider item forty. We can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
We have a motion for Mr. Kretz to continue forty for, sorry, one week, you said? One week, okay. That would take us till August 11th. There's no objection, we'll continue it till then. Okay, next items, please.
Mr. President, we're still in forty-one through fifty-five, and item forty-one is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold forty-one on the desk.
And on item forty-two, there is a request to continue that matter to September 11th.
Okay, is there any objection to continue item forty-two till September 11th? Seeing no objection, so ordered. Next items?
Still within that section, and there are cards on a number of those items.
Which items do we have public speakers for?
Forty-three, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty-five.
Okay.
And forty-six as well.
And forty-six, all right. We'll close the other public hearings. Mr. Cardenas?
Forty-eight special.
Forty-eight, okay. And Mr. Parks?
I have forty-nine H, continue till tomorrow.
T, as in Tom?
The H.
Oh, H, as in Harry, okay. We'll continue forty-nine H without objection till tomorrow. Any other specials, colleagues? If there are no other special items, let's go ahead then and prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please, from, yes, Mr. Smith?
As Mr., if fifty-four could go forthwith, please?
Fifty-four, okay. Without objection, we'll send fifty-four forthwith. If we can go to continue, sorry, the supplemental agenda.
On the supplemental agenda, item fifty-six is an ordinance notice for public hearing.
Okay, we'll call that special for cards in the public. Next items?
Items fifty-seven and fifty-eight are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there is a card on fifty-seven.
Okay, if there's no objection to consideration, that's before us. Mr. Reyes?
So, fifty-six and fifty-seven?
Okay.
Thanks.
Call this special as well for Mr. Reyes. Fifty-eight, I'll call special. There's no action required today on that, but we, actually, I think we're not going to call that special, then we'll just continue that to the next meeting, I believe. But let's hold on the desk just for a moment. And that will complete those items. We'll come back to the special meeting for 11:30. Is our commissioner here? On item forty-one? Okay, Ms. Navarro, if you'd like to come forward, and if I could recognize Mr. Weezer on the El Pueblo appointment?
For item number...
That's item number forty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. It's my pleasure to have Ms. Navarro here with us, someone who's served on the commission for El Pueblo and has contributed greatly to some of the improvements we've seen there. And I just wanted to ask for your support that we reappoint Ms. Navarro. She's someone who certainly understands the underpinnings, the issues at El Pueblo, but more importantly, understands the significance that this site plays for the city of Los Angeles, and so I ask for your support. I do ask, Ms. Navarro, that, as you know, we are undertaking an effort to bring up to date the leases, the outstanding leases that have not been signed by some of the merchants on El Pueblo. It has been a decade-long issue, if not longer, and we recently reappointed some other commissioners, and we want to get a take from them as to their support for bringing up some of the leases to near market rate or market rate, depending on what we can be negotiated, but if you feel that the timing is right to finally move forward to make El Pueblo self-sufficient, financially self-sufficient for the future. So, any thoughts on the leases?
Well, basically, it's been a real hard issue because it has been such a long process. But, yes, I believe the timing is right. The longer that we wait, the harder it's going to get for us to accomplish that. So, with the general manager's input, it's, I believe it's time to go forward.
Thank you, and I know that the general manager has been working diligently to come back to the Budget and Finance Committee with an update on a possible blueprint on what those leases may look like with a goal of having all the leases finalized by the end of December, by the end of this year. So, we ask that you work closely with our general manager and along with my office and the mayor's office, and not only make El Pueblo financially self-sufficient beginning the year to fiscal year ten, eleven, but also to continue to support the merchants at El Pueblo, because they are, after all, providing a great service, not only in some of the businesses they have, but they put on a number of performances, a number of cultural events, reminding us all about the great diversity we have in this city. So, thank you for your work, and I look forward to continue working with you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. For the other members who wish to be heard, we'll take up the nomination on this. If we can, please, hold on, we've had a public hearing on this or not?
No, this was waived out of committee.
Mr. Dog, if you'd like to come up. Mr. Zuma Dog, and then Arnold Sachs will follow.
Yes, thank you. I think it's worth spending a minute to talk about something so important as the historical monuments here in the city, and we have a commissioner. First of all, I'd like to remind City Council before approving every commission appointment of Viarigosa, you must be aware that a lot of these commissioner appointments you've approved are in some deep, deep hot water with the SEC, with feds, with investigations. And so, please be aware when you approve these commissioners, your name is on their job approval, and then we find out like, oh, we lost $7 billion in the pension.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this.
Okay, look at that, people. I'm trying to make the point that when you approve these commissioners, when things blow up in your face after you approved it, so please be aware. Now, regarding this commission appointment, Southwest Museum, I'd like to hear their position on maintaining the integrity of the Southwest Museum, and also loopholes. Don't let hired consultants find loopholes to get out of historic preservation.
Thank you. Mr. Sachs will be our next commenter on this nominee for the El Pueblo Historic Monument Authority.
Good morning, thank you. Congratulations on your reappointment. A reappointment, that means you already served four years on this commission, I would imagine. So, please, how and what, I mean, we heard last week there was somebody appointed, I believe it was Councilman Cardenas said that, or maybe it was Councilman Weezer who was on the school board, or started out on the Pueblo Commission, and for years, 20 years now, they've been working on this rental agreement. Now, we have a blueprint, quote unquote. So, what's been happening for the last four years? Why wasn't this ever addressed? What was the commission, what was so important, other than this rental agreement for the city, what was the commission addressing in those four years? And I asked for the other four years, but you probably weren't on the commission. So, maybe somebody from the City Council can enlighten the city on what the heck was going on at this historical commission.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. That will close our public comments. I'm sorry, on that one. If we can please open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. We'll now go to our general public comment, which is for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. Zuma Dog is our first speaker there, and John Walsh will be our second.
Yes, thank you. First of all, good morning to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody who has such nice things to say. It's very emotional, it's very overwhelming, and on the days I really do not feel like coming here, I think of the people that stop me on the streets and tell me they tune in and appreciate what I'm doing. So, this is the people's day. Anyway, I'd like to remind council that the rules of the quorum have not been put into effect yet. Carmen Trutanich, I'd like to give a shout out. Congratulations. I do think Carmen Trutanich has already saved the city millions. He fought against the lawsuit of LAPD, and, you know, the first time I talked to Newt, he said, you know, Zuma, the city of Los Angeles is just known for rolling over lawsuits, and they're just sitting there like praying for all the city, for all the attorneys across the city. So, you know, you can try to eat me, but I'm going to be like a parking plan going down. It looks like he already saved the city millions, one month in office, yeah. Now, for a major shocker, a city council rocker, a bamboozle popper, Zuma Dog on the ballot for CD2. Thank you so much to everybody who got me on the ballot. I'll be on the ballot September 22nd. And I'd like to mention that one of the big things I'll be talking about in the community is an opportunity to take back the schools. I do believe that the schools, LAUSD, is the biggest plague that is blighting the city, and previously, we haven't had any opportunity to do anything about it. Now, there's something called the Parents Revolution. It's called the LA Parent Union, and it will allow community members to sign a petition, to take it to LAUSD, to say, damn it, we need this thing fixed now, and you can take measures to do it. LAUSD, the teachers... It has been a decade-long issue, if not longer, and we recently reappointed some other commissioners, and we want to get a take from them as to their support for bringing up some of the leases to near market rate or market rate, depending on what we can be negotiated, but if you feel that the timing is right to finally move forward to make El Pueblo self-sufficient, financially self-sufficient for the future. So, any thoughts on the leases?
Well, basically, it's been a real hard issue because it has been such a long process. But, yes, I believe the timing is right. The longer that we wait, the harder it's going to get for us to accomplish that. So, with the general manager's input, it's, I believe it's time to go forward.
Thank you, and I know that the general manager has been working diligently to come back to the Budget and Finance Committee with an update on a possible blueprint on what those leases may look like, with a goal of having all the leases finalized by the end of December, by the end of this year. So, we ask that you work closely with our general manager and along with my office and the mayor's office, and not only make El Pueblo financially self-sufficient beginning the year to fiscal year ten, eleven, but also to continue to support the merchants at El Pueblo, because they are, after all, providing a great service, not only in some of the businesses they have, but they put on a number of performances, a number of cultural events, reminding us all about the great diversity we have in this city. So, thank you for your work, and I look forward to continuing working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. For now, the members who wish to be heard will take up the nomination on this, if we can, please, hold on, we've had a public hearing on this, or not?
No, this was waived out of committee.
Mr. Dogg, if you'd like to come up, Mr. Zuma Dogg? And then Arnold Sachs will follow.
Yes, thank you. I think it's worth spending a minute to talk about something so important as the historical monuments here in the city, and we have a commissioner. First of all, I'd like to remind City Council, before approving every commission appointment of Viarigosa, you must be aware that a lot of these commissioner appointments you've approved are in some deep, deep hot water with the SEC, with feds, with investigations. And so, please be aware, when you approve these commissioners, your name is on their job approval, and then we find out, like, oh, we lost seven billion dollars in the pension toward...
Mr. President, he is not talking about this.
Okay, look at that, people. I'm trying to make the point that when you approve these commissioners, when things blow up in your face after you approved it, so please be aware. Now, regarding this commission appointment, Southwest Museum, I'd like to hear their position on maintaining the integrity of the Southwest Museum, and also loopholes. Don't let hired consultants find loopholes to get out of historic preservation.
Thank you. Mr. Sachs will be our next commenter on this nominee for the El Pueblo Historic Monument Authority.
Yes, good morning, thank you. Congratulations on your reappointment. A reappointment, that means you already served four years on this commission, I would imagine. So, please, how and what? I mean, we heard last week there was somebody appointed, I believe it was Councilman Cardenas said that, or maybe it was Councilman Weezer, who was on the school board, or started out on the Pueblo Commission, and for years, twenty years now, they've been working on this rental agreement. Now, we have a blueprint, quote-unquote. So, what's been happening for the last four years? Why wasn't this ever addressed? What was the commission, what was so important, other than this rental agreement for the city? What was the commission addressing in those four years? And I asked for the other four years, but you probably weren't on the commission. So, maybe somebody from the City Council can enlighten the city on what the heck was going on at this historical commission.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs, that will close our public comments, I'm sorry, on that one. If we can please open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved, congratulations. We'll now go to our general public comment, which is for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. Zuma Dogg is our first speaker there, and John Walsh will be our second.
Yes, thank you. First of all, good morning to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody who has such nice things to say. It's very emotional, it's very overwhelming, and on the days I really do not feel like coming here, I think of the people that stop me on the streets and tell me they tune in and appreciate what I'm doing, so, this is the people's day. Anyway, I'd like to remind Council that the rules of decorum have not been put into effect yet. Karmat Trutanich, I'd like to give a shout-out, congratulations. I do think Karmat Trutanich has already saved the city millions. He fought against the lawsuit of LAPD, and, you know, the first time I talked to Newt, he said, "You know, Zuma, the city of Los Angeles is just known for rolling over lawsuits, and they're just sitting there like praying for all the city, for all the attorneys across the city. So, you know, you can try to eat me, but I'm gonna be like a parking plan going down." It looks like he already saved the city millions, one month in office, yeah! Now, for a major shocker, a City Council rocker, a bamboozle popper, Zuma Dogg on the ballot for CD Two. Thank you so much to everybody who got me on the ballot. I'll be on the ballot September twenty-second. And I'd like to mention that one of the big things I'll be talking about in the community is an opportunity to take back the schools. I do believe that the schools, LAUSD, is the biggest plague that is blighting the city. And previously, we haven't had any opportunity to do anything about it. Now, there's something called the Parents Revolution. It's called the LA Parent Union, and it will allow community members to sign a petition, to take it to LAUSD, to say, "Damn it, we need this thing fixed now," and you can take measures to do it. LAUSD, the teachers' union, will be bowing down to the community. Zuma Dogg is making that as a pinnacle, because that's the first thing that has to be fixed. Much more at electzuma.com. Thank you so much. See at the polls. Tell everybody to vote Zuma Dogg, September twenty-second. Get me in that chair, thank you.
John Walsh is our next speaker. After that will be Jordan Bentley.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org for what's really happening up here, when you can't see because the cameras are directed away from the funny business. I would like to know from the chair, are you going to have reopen a public hearing on number thirteen? Yes or no? Okay, they won't tell me, so I'll have to talk about what's happening on thirteen. Thirteen is a thirty-million-dollar sexual public stimulus program, economic public sexual stimulus grant to a corporation, French-Canadian, originally Cirque du Soleil. In this city, children are having their throat slit. Are we spending thirty million dollars for public...
Mr. President, this has already had a public hearing, and it is on the agenda.
I asked you whether you were going to allow us to speak on the public comment. This constant interruption. We are going to President Obama. This is President Obama's economic stimulus program, and now it's thirty million dollars so you, in Los Angeles, can see trapeze artists with waxed crotches swinging around. That's what this thirty million, and we're saying to President Obama, "Hut can stop this." This is a hanging jury up here, okay? They're gonna vote the thirty million, and I want it on the record, we only spent sixty million of regular stimulus money on the police, and now we're spending thirty million dollars so a handful of tourists can spend a hundred and ten dollars and watch people swinging back and forth. And the Oscars, when you do this, will use their escape clause, leave the Kodak Theater, and go to Nokia. I'm always right.
Thank you. Just as a point of information, though it's not before us right now, we're supposed to have discussions of items that are not on the agenda during this period, and the money on item number thirteen is not federal stimulus money, it long predates the federal stimulus money. Jordan Bentley is our next speaker, and then Bruce Darian in Van Nuys will follow. Is Mr. Bentley here? Mr. Bentley? Okay, here he comes. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I would like to make a public comment, and I realize that two minutes, all will be as brief as possible, and I really wanted to, I really wanted to bring it to the attention to the entire city of Los Angeles. I'm from San Francisco, and I'm a songwriter, and I moved here a while ago. I'm in the music industry. A few short years ago, I wrote some songs for several people in the music industry, including Madonna and a couple new artists. And there's a person in the music industry named Sean Combs that tried to make some attempts on my life. And for the past couple years, several things have gone on in my life, and he's been pretty much following me from state to state, including Los Angeles, California, trying to have me And certain, certain things have happened here in Los Angeles recently about some attempts that have been made on my life, and I told Richard Branson about this in London, England, because certain illegal things happened in London, England. And I would like to bring it to the attention, because I'm asking for some protection, because there are some attempts being made on my life, and I reported it to the police. I reported it to the police, and there's no way I can tell you in two minutes everything that I have to tell you, but this situation and this matter is very, very serious.
Our next speaker for general public comment will be Bruce Darian in Van Nuys, and after that will be Rick Knighten. Thank you, sir, this is the time for us, we can hear public comment, we can't respond to everything, but we appreciate your comments today, and our next speaker is Bruce Darian. We're waiting for the connection to Van Nuys. We do have a city clerk, sir, who might be able to address any of your comments?
If he says, "Hold my time," then...
Hey, good to go.
President Garcetti, I signed up for item number forty-one and had called in quite some time before you had closed discussion on that.
Okay, we'll make sure to reopen that and get your comments.
Okay, that'll be after this public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, yeah, once again, I have a piece of the dam, the St. Francis Dam, that broke nineteen-twenty-eight, and one of the reasons that I have it here is it's so important for the public to realize that when there's construction fraud, and there's payoffs to city officials, or county, or state officials, or federal officials, Congressman Cunningham went to jail for it, there is generally inferior workmanship in materials that are put into the product, there's a switching of materials. The money has to come from somewhere to pay the politicians the bribery, and the contractor saves the money by shorting in the materials. And sometimes it's found out, and sometimes it isn't. In the case of the St. Francis Dam, it resulted in tragic results of more than five hundred people perishing. But that was then covered up along the way as to the defects in the dam itself, and in the fact that it ever happened. In reality, most people don't know, or know very little about it, when it's the largest civil engineering failure in California's history. Malibu Pier, another state historic landmark, failed in the pilings, which were leaking out chemicals, and there were bribes with the Sheriff's Department and public officials and that as well.
Mr. President, again, these matters are not within the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, sir, these may be very important matters, but if you could please bring them back to the specific jurisdiction that we have in the city of LA, that's what's before us, we appreciate that very much, Mr. Darian.
Prosecutor for the County of Los Angeles, and his offices were seeking to prosecute me for vandalizing public property, when in fact I was marking that the facings of the pilings were leaking out the toxic chemicals which are banned under federal law. So, there's a network...
Thank you, sir. And again, sympathetic to what you're saying, the County of Los Angeles is not under our direct jurisdiction as well, the District Attorney's Office is separate from our City Attorney's Office, but thank you for your testimony today. Rick Knighten is our next speaker, and then Miriam Fogler, both also in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Knighten.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Knighten. I'll tell ya, it seems like there's only two people in the state here that they even recognize and do something really about shorting money, and that was Schwarzenegger and the sheriff down in Orange County. You're the only ones that done anything and says, "Well, I'm sorry, we have to cut the budget, we're gonna have to lay off," and she laid off from the top, not the bottom. Boy, that takes courage, more than what you people do over there. Even the unions turned around and said, "We're gonna fight you." "All right, we're not gonna take, we're not gonna take layoffs." They are so crazy. I mean, I'm used to being asked to stay home for a week or so because there was no work. I'd rather do that than get fired, you know, laid off and go get, wait for another job, even though I was in the union. And these people just look at it that way. I cannot believe that they wanted that this way. And you people wait for the stimulus package. "Oh, we're just waiting for the government to do something, like they're gonna give you fifty, hire fifty more police officers for three or four years." Then who's gonna pay for 'em? You're gonna raise our trash pickup again to turn around and make up the difference? It's just unbelievable that you people just are waiting and waiting and waiting, wonder what's gonna happen. "Well, we're waiting for what the state's gonna, how much it's gonna give us." That's the same thing as the school board. They turn around and thinks the money's gonna keep on coming. "Oh, we're waiting for the stimulus package." It's just unbelievable. Now, how about why don't the college students, that they're complaining and complaining that they're raising? Guess what? Go join the service now, and they'll give you college education for free. Do something that you should be doing. I was brought up that I owed a military service to this country. I did my military service. I joined the National Guard, but I still did my military service, that these people don't. I think every man, woman, should turn around and have to be in the service of some type. You can be a clerk, you can be anything that you want to be, and you can do it. If you want to get a college education and quit bitchin', thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knighten, and thank you for your service as well. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, and after that is Donna Perman. Good morning, Ms. Fogler.
Yeah, good morning. I like what Rick Knighten has put it, but the thing is about this, that you people are fools. You think you're fooling God? No, you're not, because what you did here, you allowed that other speaker to speak about his problem, and then you cut Bruce Darian down. I mean, you're gonna tell us what word I can't say here, and tell me what to do here? That I can't expose myself, that I can't say what I want, and not, you people then shouldn't be here. If you're gonna be in that seat, don't be here. If you can't take it from the public, don't be here. This is our right to be here, to speak and tell the public what's going on here. If you want respect in these chambers, then you show respect. You have to give, if you want the public to give. It's tit-for-tat. And also food, same thing. You don't want to eat, have the public eat and drink soda here, then you don't eat and drink soda here. Now, getting on to the more important information here. Michael Jackson, we should have the funeral paid for by the family or whatever, I don't care how it's, get the money, just get the money back. On the thirty million dollars, you need to get the money back too from that group. I don't care how you do it, but you cannot come here and act like, in my opinion, act like tyrants, and telling the public what they can say and can't do. They know that we should have some etiquette and some respect for the children, and we tried, I do that, but I will not take it from politicians setting the rules for themselves so they can tell us how to do and how to act and what to do here. You can't do this thing with this decorum rules. This is unconstitutional and against the law, and you won't get away with this. It's not right to do this to the public. We worked dang hard for our money, and you can't take it away from us.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler, as always, for exercising your uninhibited right to speak. Donna Perman is our next speaker. Ken Bush will be our next speaker here in council chambers. Good morning, Ms. Perman.
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti. I probably won't have time to talk about the thirty million circus that you love so much, or Mr. Jackson's funeral, but I think we need to get the money back. First, I wanted to thank Erwin Westen and the City Council for saying that Miriam and myself say our opinion without disrupting the councils. I like that, but how long? Who knows how this amendment is up to, within the whim of the City Council, and who is chairing the presidency, and how he or she is feeling. And without a warning, some of us could find themselves banned up to thirty council meetings. It would break my heart, Mr. Garcetti, if you would ban either myself or my friend Miriam from any council meetings. I would like before a warning. Miriam and I are not crass, but if we feel the need to single out a councilman, if we say, if it's prevalent, which is always the case, we should be able to do this. I'm also against the rule not allowing my friend Miriam to not eat in the chamber. She is a diabetic, she is, she always keeps the chamber clean, no crumbs, and is being punished for those others who don't clean up after themselves. There is, you have a room outside, oh, yeah, there is no room outside in Van Nuys to eat, she would have to miss the council meeting. You have a room near you so you can eat and drink, like whim, except the president, who must find somebody to sit there. This is an amendment that doesn't, does encroach on our freedom of speech, because it makes us worry about where we're crossing an invisible point of no return, all because of a man in a KKK outfit, which is protected by the First Amendment speech, but my speech mentioning council members is not. Does that make sense? I think not. So, use this power sparingly, or you will find yourself in a lot of hot water. And so, then I'm against this amendment because I see it as a serious, against First Amendment speech. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perman. Just as a note of information, the change to our rule last week did not in any way change what can and cannot be said, that is, again, governed by the Constitution of the United States. You are, there's nothing that said you couldn't single out council members and talk about that, but you're supposed to address the councils as a whole. We appreciate, as you just did, talking about individual council members, that speech will be protected, and we'll see what we can do to look into Ms. Fogler's medical condition, and we appreciate you bringing that up. Our next speaker is Ken Bush, here in council chambers, and after Mr. Bush is Michael Hunt. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. The United States Department of Homeland Security has a program, a project for recruiting what it refers to as retired law enforcement, and sending them over to become teachers and administrators in the school districts in the state of Hawaii. In nineteen-seventy-four, under Senator Sammer, when the Senate Constitutional Committee reported that through privatized drug addiction programs that the Central Intelligence Agency had experimented on brainwashing children using strategies that it referred to as those brainwashing tactics used by the North Koreans against American prisoners of war. It's hard to imagine two examples that are more revealing of the pathologies of power and manipulation by a national police state. The state of California has a Department of Homeland Security, unless I'm mistaken by the sign that I read through the council chamber doors, and at the end of the hallway, the city of Los Angeles also has a Department of Homeland Security. I have a proposed amendment to the California State Constitution that reads, "No Department of Homeland Security may exist. Any existing executive Department of Homeland Security is repelled upon passage of this amendment, and its place the legislature's commanded to organize the California Department of Federalism. The duties of this department are to examine the state of America's foundational pillars of dual government and the threat to that foundational pillar posed by the expansion of ungranted national police powers upon the Republic of California and her citizens, and report such findings to the citizens from time to time with strategies for repelling the sedition and preserving the constitutional order of dualism." I need twenty-five signatures in order for this to proceed through the ballot process, and I appreciate the signatures of both those who may agree with these ideas, or those who simply agree with the idea of allowing the democratic processes of a free people to proceed. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear much of that, Mr. Bush, but if you get a little closer to the microphone, in the future we'll be able to hear you a little bit better, my apologies for not saying that earlier. But thank you for your testimony. Michael Hunt is our next speaker, and then Arnold Sachs will follow.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you for making limitations on the First Amendment. We have the right to assemble peacefully up under Banning Bird versus the city of Ohio. The city attorney should have checked before he tried to make censorship. Disruption brought by words, symbols, such as the KKK outfit, without more, does not justify censorship or punishment. Your decorum rules will be up under the water in the next thirty days, and the city of Los Angeles, you should really listen. Not listen to your attorneys, but listen to the First Amendment expert. And I told you guys when I first came in here, do not play with people's First Amendments. Mr. President, you won yourself a trip to CNN on the Larry King Show. Believe me, it's coming up. We will challenge you openly in the public about what your decorum rules are. It all started back in Venice Beach. We told you guys, "Let's mitigate this out." We told you guys, "Let's do it someplace else." You guys pushed us. You guys pushed me. Our new press release will be coming out probably in approximately two and a half days. Mr. President, you should reclaim the decorum laws before you see yourself in federal court again. You want to say KKK cannot have front-row seats, or is it Afro-Americans cannot have front-row seats? You stated it, "Long as I wear the KKK outfit in the back, it was okay, but I couldn't wear it up front." But Banning Bird says something else. It says, "To censorship that brought by those symbols are not justified for censorship or punishment." Restructure your decorum rules immediately. Thank you, Michael Hunt.
Thank you. Just to correct the record, you can wear that up front, I've said that many times, if your hood, your KKK hood blocks people's views, we will make sure that people's views are unobstructed. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker, and after that is Walter Bechtel.
Yes, thank you, good morning. Thank you for, Mr. President, for calling for a quorum before you started the meeting. We had this, I mentioned this last week several times, about the fact that maintaining a quorum, a count of over ten councilmen in the chambers, is important for you to discuss city business. Please, sir, or Mr. City Council Attorney, please show the public what part of the Brown Act allows members to go into the back, and that be considered part of the council chambers. If it's part of the council chambers after the meeting is called with a quorum... If it's part of the council chambers after the meeting is called with a quorum, then it would be part of the council chambers before the meeting is called for a quorum. So please differentiate for the public how you arbitrarily decide that. That being said, I'd also like to move to open a preferred parking district in the Mid-City Expo Line area, but unfortunately, I can't find where the Mid-City Expo Line starts and ends. It's either in Councilwoman Perry's district, Councilman Weston's district, Councilman Carrance's district, or Councilman Park's district. There are no delineations before the Mid-City Expo Line lighting district, rail line, or any construction authority, but there is an Expo Construction Authority, and there is an Expo Line. People need to realize that by adding that word in, the effects may not occur here in the city of L.A. But in Washington, when somebody puts, comes up to somebody who's considering legislation and they say, "Add this rider to this bill for the Mid-City Expo Line," that could be millions of dollars of pork being rustled. Thank you.
Thank you. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. After that is Barbara Monahan Burke.
Hello, good morning. Thank you. I just wanted to say, I was trying to tell you some things about what's going on. Mr., what was his name, Palmer, he did succeed in his lawsuit against the city of Los Angeles. You know, you keep discourting people like me. I was trying to be generous with the city of Los Angeles, and I think you should understand there's people watching this, what's going on, what was happening over there. And apparently, Mr. Palmer doesn't like the idea of you throwing me away like a piece of trash and coming over and patting him on the back and saying, "Now, hello, Mr. Palmer, why don't you come on over here and sit down?" So if, I was only trying to assist you people. I told you, you asked what to do, you need to see these people prosecuted. You don't wanna prosecute them, you know. This, I'm not the only person you've done this to. There was a friend of mine who donated, who was a docent over at the Central Library, and the last time I saw him, he was once a millionaire. The last time I saw him, he was living under the bushes over there, the docents over at the Central Library. Somebody had kicked his head in, and the only thing he could say when he wanted to get something to eat is chicken and mushrooms. And the guy at the restaurant didn't even wanna serve him that. I think it's a serious crime, the way you treat people like us, but, you know, I just thought, you know, if you think that somebody's gonna come back and sue you for it and win, then you're wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Barbara Monahan Burke is next. After that is Solidad Garcia. Good morning.
Good morning. Barbara Monahan Burke, Studio City Neighborhood Council Board Member. Speaking personally for our stakeholders, Honorable City Council, I ask you to make our city safe, to enforce our laws and protocols that we do have. I ask you to keep our children safe, our Lilly Burkes and our Jamil Shaws. First mistake, the three-strikes law was not enforced. The treatment house facility did not have adequate rules, and those they had were not enforced. Lilly Burke's alleged murderer was not supposed to be out of prison. He should have been three strikes, and Lilly Burke comes from our neighborhood. The law to have criminal illegal immigrants deported straight from prison upon release was not enforced, and so Jamil Shaw's killer was on the streets again to murder. Please do not let various jurisdictions be an excuse for our children to be murdered. Let the city, the county, the state, the federal governments all cooperate. The children are our future, and they deserve our love and our safekeeping. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Solidad Garcia is our next speaker, and then DeeDee Odet will follow.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I am here because I am concerned about one thing, that the MOU with DWP is not being observed to the fullest extent of the meaning of outreach and communication. The word, it should be extended to the fullest spirit of the MOU, not to the least as far as communication is concerned, and not as, quote, "as practical" or "as best efforts." In a short period, it could be just one day that would be considered the least, the best. I don't think so. The reason I bring this to your attention is because this is in relationship to the solar plan, and if you look at it in terms of the solar plan and where the Measure B came into play, the Measure B was there and was defeated because we were not included and because it was a rush job. And if the solar plan is not prepared and includes the neighborhood councils, the MOU Oversight Committee, then we have lost, I hope we haven't lost, or perhaps we're going to have to work closer with a DWP to do something about it. That is our concern, and I bring it to your attention, and I would hope that we would have your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Solidad. DeeDee Odet is our next speaker, and then Jose Aguilar will follow.
Good morning.
Good morning to you. My name is DeeDee Odet. I'm from Venice, and I want to tell you that I feel very good this morning. I just came from the Energy and Environment Committee. I believe this city now has a chance to harness the energy of the sun in a manner in which everyone can participate to the fullest extent. So I want to thank the members of the committee for moving in the direction that they're taking. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jose Aguilar is our next speaker, and then Matt Dowd will follow. Good morning.
Could I have a city council member's attention?
You have a certain credit.
I'm noticing the complete disregard of public comment, speakers, and from city council having sidebar conversations and just basically ignoring the public comment. You know, it's a very disgrace how city council treats the various neighborhood councils out here, and the one problem that I have, and I want city council to pay attention, is I don't even see the city attorney here to instruct city council to pay attention.
He's here, sir.
The city attorney himself is having a sidebar conversation.
Go ahead, sir.
Look, I'm gonna make it very clear. I have a lot of issues with DWP not providing the neighborhood councils with a hundred-and-twenty day notice on any actions that would increase our rates or utility rates. I had an issue with the ECAF. It was, I was given a seventy-two hour notice, and that does not give me enough time to go back to my neighborhood councils and agendize the issue, and it takes about at least a month to do it. Okay? I have to agendize it, and then it gets put on a list of other items that other people agendize, and, you know, sometimes I have to wait and turn until it, you know, gets read out and, you know, and we have a vote on it. And then we have to vote on the minutes, so it might even take as long as a month and a half. So the issue that I have with DWP is that they do not afford us, under the MOU, a hundred-and-twenty day notice to let us properly educate our members, to vote on it, and then vote on our minutes, and then bring back the results of our deliberations to either city council or DWP Board of Commissioners. That's not taking place. Now, I would like for the city attorney to instruct us on, does city council have responsibility to listen to public comment? So I'm asking this question, again, he's having a phone conversation, so I have a question on the floor.
Thank you. I'm sorry, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your comments today and listen to them closely. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. Yes, Mr. Labonge?
Someone from the CLA, Sister Anne from Reagan Heights.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Dowd, and then Mr. A. Herman.
Yeah, thank you. I want to talk about recycling first of all. The Pacific Ocean is full of plastic right now, it's breaking down, and there's six times more plastic than there is plankton in the Pacific Ocean, so all the fish out there are eating plastic. So I gotta warn people, stop eating fish, or you're probably gonna turn into plastic. So recycling should be the number-one thing in the city, not decorum, because this, see, here's what happened yesterday, first of all, in committee, all right? Budget and finance, Bernie Parks, this is what they did. They just voted to pay half a million dollars into the United States District Court on the Michael Hunt, Matthew Dowd, Venice Beach First Amendment lawsuit. So you're down half a million on that instead of just settling the case. See, let me tell Mr. Park something via this council. The judge told us we won. He told us we're gonna win. That's why we're still here. He would have dumped us out of here if we were gonna lose, and now, look, four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars out of the general fund already. I remember when I stood here, fifty thousand was the tad. Parking tickets from years, I'm, see, I'm not paying the parking ticket now, 'cause you're not paying the four-hundred-and-seventy thousand. Cameron Diaz, her star is illegal on Hollywood Boulevard still. You violated the Brown Act, so you treat the First Amendment as a joke, and we don't. See, you know how much effort it takes to get my ass from Venice Beach down to this council meeting every day, down that freeway? It's a bunch of effort. I'm a piece and a political activist, and I march down the freeway. I just have to use a car 'cause it's too far to walk. So I'm protected like a mother, and I'm gonna say that.
Mr. Herman is our next speaker. After that will be Terry Wool, Terry Wolberger. Mr. Herman here?
Councilmembers and residents and Los Angeles stakeholders, I'm here today to point out a point to my councilmen. I'm here because, under the subject of being too busy to answer constituents' concern, I'm bringing it to public forum. I've been an activist and advocate in our community of Boyle Heights for the longest time, and all I try to do is make things better for our children, for our future, and hearing all these points today is very disturbing. It hurts. I care. If I didn't care, I wouldn't spend the time to care. So I'm asking that sometime down the line, there be a little more professionalism, appropriate action when it comes to the council members to listen to, the folks that come here. They have specific points of interest in Los Angeles, such as I do and many of you do. Our concerns are about the budget. Our concerns are about our welfare living in Los Angeles and not being displaced and so forth. So again, I notice we have a big party, the CRA, here, and hopefully, they can be more transparent when they're open, as opposed to doing things behind closed doors or forcing those of us in the community into situations where we can't participate or be heard on our points. So in conclusion, I ask, Mr. Weisar, please, when I go to your field office, I'm there not to bother, not to butt.
You can adjust the council's.
Okay, I'm sorry. Again, I'm only here to represent folks in Los Angeles, represent CD-14 of Boyle Heights, as you heard, and as I reiterate it again, Boyle Heights is a community of people of many genders, and so all I ask is that we be a little more hearing and more accountable and be more actionable when we take our measures to represent the folks in our area. And so, again, when I attend your office, Mr. CD-14, please invite me, and don't be so hostile. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony today. Terry Wolberger is our last speaker for general public comment. Good morning, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Good morning, commissioners. How you doing this morning? First of all, I want to say, I bought some buildings downtown, and these are on Eleventh and Grand, also on Olive, I mean Flower and Ninth, but what I hear, and from the gentleman that I spoke with, Jerry Jackson Dean, said that your city councilperson or clerk is altering the records for you to sign to them. Now, in my investigation of this, the Staples Center and the Los Angeles East End, and another, same thing. You're altering records, they've been burgarized on Sunday. I have the letters, but I don't, I'm not bringing them here because, on the simple fact, if you're altering documentation and things to that nature, you need to quit, because I don't spend money for, or make an agreement for Gabe or anyone to alter these records. Now, in the process, Ms. Perry, Jan Perry, she sent a man, Officer Oliver, at night to burgarize a man home. True, and Officer Oliver now is addressing the issue that he can't do nothing about it. Their council says they can't do nothing about it. Full closure. I have a statement, both. I bought a home for three-hundred-and-thirty-nine, three-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars, 'cause I was doing an investigation on a murder and foreclosure of the home. This is what the new agency called foreclosure, or teach me foreclosure. May I go a little further, sir?
I'm sorry, sir, we have to keep to two minutes per person, but thank you very much for your comments. We'll see. We're gonna reopen public comment on item forty-one for Mr. Darian. Our apologies about that, Mr. Darian, for not calling up before. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
And on the El Pueblo Commission appointment, Mr. Darian?
Mr. President, Garcetti, City Council. In regard to the comments that Ms. Navarro said, and what's typical in public leases, there's a lot of rigging going on. The leases are regularly rigged, and that doesn't even necessarily mean that the commissioners themselves are gonna know it, because what goes on behind the scenes with these lucrative lease agreements, where there's restaurants, there's alcohol involved, there's a lot of backroom dealing. So it's quite possible that Ms. Navarro or any of the other commissioners are not gonna be aware that these things are going on, but when you look at the passage of time and why it's not efficient in getting these leases dealt with in a public forum, putting them out to bid and having it under a fair forum, the way it's supposed to be under the law and not rigging it with payoffs in the back rooms, this is pertinent to the issue here. As far as Ms. Navarro, I can't comment on whether she should be approved or not, and I'm not making any judgment one way or the other, but it did raise the flag as to ten years to get the leases in order, which Mr. Weisar was talking about, and that goes right to the point with the fraud at Malibu Pier, and I'll make a correlation to that anytime I want, and I put the city attorney on notice that if he continues his acts, I'll be talking to the state bar about possible disciplinary action. Thank you.
That will close. We have one more card, Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to come forward on forty-one.
Mr. President. Yeah, thank you. I want to address this one because I was in the Arts and Parks Committee the other day, and there was an item on the agenda, and it relates to this historical monument authority. They're trying to put a bike rental, the city of Los Angeles wants to put a bike rental downtown at this monument as one of the vendors that we're talking about here. It's absolutely ludicrous. It's just opening up the city to more lawsuits, litigation, 'cause you know people are gonna get hit by all your buses and trucks, and you're building all these developments and condos everywhere, every corner downtown. There's a bunch of workmen and trucks and traffic and everything, and you're gonna be having a bike rental. It's just dumb. It's, and it's Tom Labonge's committee, and he's more, he was way more concerned when I talked about it. He's trying to get me to fill in the address on the goddamn speaker card instead of listing...
Mr. President, he's not talking about the commission appointment here. Thank you.
I was at the committee getting shut down by, interrupted by Tom Labonge when I was trying to address this very thing at the El Pueblo Monument, and this is one of the guys making decisions on the stupid bike rental. So what's off-topic about that, fool?
Sir, you're being abusive with your language now and personal. There'll be a warning, sir, that'll be a warning. We ask you not to, please have respect and not call somebody a fool. And I'll play it on the record, sir, your microphone is not on, and you're not back on the record. We'll now go to item number one, and that is a warning to you. We'll now go to item number one.
Mr. President, a revote on forty-one is needed.
Oh, yes, excuse me. Let's reopen the roll. Oh, yes, excuse me, so reopen the roll and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. We'll now go to item, yes, Mr. LeBonge?
City Attorney, a question?
Yes.
In my committee, Mr. City Attorney, I want everybody to fill out their address and if they have no address, they could fill out no known address. I just want the whole card filled out. What do you advise me as a committee chair? I want everybody to fill it out because in case there's a problem, I wanna be able to do it.
The filling out of the address should be voluntarily done?
Who is, I wanna see that in writing because when there's a problem, Mr. City Attorney, and someone comes in here and we don't know where they come from, we don't have any address, how are you gonna find out where they live? Thank you.
Okay. We will next, uh, take up the ordinances, we do have twelve members now, if we could reconsider those ordinances, that's, uh, two, three, four, and, um, I think just those three, excuse me. If we can prepare the roll on reconsideration and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Uh, that is back before, so we can open the roll on those three, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Uh, next we'll move to item number one, which is a joint meeting of the, a joint hearing and joint meeting, uh, of the Los Angeles City Council and the Board of Commissioners of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles to consider the approval of a proposed amendment to the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Plan. Uh, the proposed, uh, amendment to the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Plan is to be approved and adopted pursuant to the Community Redevelopment Law of the State of California and this is also a public hearing for the proposed five-year implementation plan for the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Project area. Um, will the city clerk please call the roll of the members of the City Council and of the CRA of the City of Los Angeles?
Alec Concardness, Han, Weeza, Corretts, LeBonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Bressen, Zangrasseti, twelve members present and a quorum of the City Council, Commissioners Jackson, Ackerman, Ling, Janice, Ortiz, Sickler and Bolton, six members present and a quorum of the CRA LA Commission.
Okay, now declare this joint meeting, uh, public hearing of the proposed amendment to the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Plan and proposed five-year implementation plan for the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Project opened by the City Council and the Community Redevelopment Agency, uh, hereafter to be referred to as the CRA LA. Um, I'm not sure if that's an easier mouthful, but we'll try it nevertheless. Pursuant to law, it is my responsibility as council president to preside over this joint, uh, hearing and this is the time and place set for the joint public hearing as specified in the notice mailed, published and posted pursuant to this Community Redevelopment Law. This is the time to comment on or object to the proposed amendment to the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Plan, the proposed five-year implementation plan or any proceedings taken in connection with either the amendment or the five-year implementation plan. Uh, in a few minutes, we'll take public comment, so all those wishing to speak, well, I know we have public comment cards for those, those are available in the back and we will make sure we hear everybody's public comments on that. The redevelopment, sorry, the Community Redevelopment Law requires that we follow certain procedures in the conduct of today's joint public hearing. Uh, persons making statements and comments are asked to direct them, um, to the body as a whole and all persons desiring to speak will be given the opportunity to do so, um, subject to a time limit of two minutes per person. The order of procedures for today's hearing will be as follows, for those, um, who are following along. The CRA LA staff will present a brief report on the proposed amendment that is before us to the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Plan. Then the CRA staff will present a brief summary of the proposed five-year implementation plan for fiscal year two thousand and ten through fiscal year twenty-fourteen, um, for the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Project. Next, we'll receive any written comments and folks are welcome to submit any written comments that they have as well for this hearing and then any oral comments from audience members. Um, after questions, comments and objections have been responded to as needed, the City Council and the CRA, uh, Board of Commissioners will close the joint public hearing. If written objections are received from affected property owners or taxing agencies before the close of the joint public hearing, no action will be taken on the adoption of the amendment or five-year implementation plan today. If no such written objections are received after the close of the joint public hearing, the CRA Board of Commissioners and the City Council may deliberate on the actions before them and proceed with those actions and consider the adoption to the amendment, um, of the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Plan and the five-year implementation plan. So with that, I'd like to call upon Councilmember Jose Weezer, um, and see if he has any introductory comments before the CRA staff report. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and, uh, this, uh, item is a long time coming to the City Council to move forward with a redevelopment of an area that if you drive by there now currently has a lot of vacant industrial spaces that can be better utilized and can better provide jobs and opportunities for not only the residents who live nearby, but certainly for the region. Uh, if we go, as we go forward, Mr. President, if we could have a brief, uh, presentation by the CRA and then hear from the public, and I also have an amended motion to this because to be quite honest, when I first heard about this, I had a number of questions, but I understand that the action we are about to take today is simply an action to start the ball rolling, to get the type of information we need to make a final decision. This is not a final decision, but this is a decision to move forward, to say we wanna dance for the county for the possibility of having an ultimate merger to provide an opportunity to create more jobs and a biotech center here on the east side of Los Angeles. So with that, Mr. President, I would ask if we could first go to the CRA, make a presentation, then go to public comment and then come back to me if that's possible, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, I'll now call upon Cecilia Estalano, who's our chief executive officer of the CRA LA to begin the staff presentation. Ms. Estalano?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, my name is Cecilia Estalano, I'm chief executive officer of the Community Redevelopment Agency. We're here today to consider the proposed amendment to the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Plan and the proposed...
Hold on one second, Ms. Estalano, we actually had a couple other council members who, just before the presentation, wanted to say a couple things.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. LeBonge and then Mr. Reyes?
I'll wait after the presentation, I just wanted to say this is a very good first step and, uh, thank the CRA, but also especially thank the council member, the district, but I'll wait till after the presentation.
Okay. Mr. Reyes?
President, I just rise to, uh, first, uh, thank the CRA for the hard work. I know there's a lot of, uh, inter, action and interface that needs to occur with all the different stakeholders, but I think I believe they have about maybe ten, fifteen percent of this area right in the Lincoln Heights Pocket, which is, uh, right across the street from the General Hospital Complex. Uh, it's the main street corridor that leads into downtown. I believe it's a very critical piece when it comes to a gateway corridor. So in that perspective, I appreciate the hard work and looking forward to this process to see how we continue unfolding a way of leveraging our, our abilities as a CRA operation and also to embrace what this community has to offer both historically and economically. So I look forward to this process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Estalano.
Okay. As I said, we're gonna be considering the amendment to the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Plan and the proposed five-year implementation plan for the project area. The main purpose of the proposed amendment is to maximize redevelopment potential for specialized manufacturing, mixed use, housing and commercial uses. Each of these contributing to new job growth within the city of Los Angeles, this by merging the Adelante Project Area and the adjacent County of Los Angeles Whiteside Project Area. The merger of the redevelopment project areas is an effort to eliminate blight by expanding the biomedical technology sector in this area. This effort will also create jobs that will benefit area residents. The Adelante East Side Redevelopment Project was adopted in March nineteen ninety-nine and covers twenty-one hundred acres east of downtown Los Angeles. Ninety-seven percent of the land is industrial and commercial with approximately three percent residential. The redevelopment activities within the Adelante Project Area fall within the jurisdiction of CRA LA. The one hundred and seventy-one acre LA County Whiteside Redevelopment Project Area was adopted by the LA Board of Supervisors in October two thousand and six and consists predominantly of heavy industrial land uses with pockets of commercial, institutional, residential as well as vacant land. The redevelopment activities within the Whiteside Project Area fall within the jurisdiction of Los Angeles Community Development Commission. Since adoption of the redevelopment plan for the Adelante Project Area, even though a moderate number of projects have been taking place, substantial blight remains prevalent. Since the time of adoption of the Whiteside Project Area, no new projects have taken place. Consequently, the blighted physical and economic conditions in the Whiteside Project Area have not changed since its adoption. Whiteside sits adjacent to the northern, northern part of the Adelante Project Area. In this area, there are already important biomedical research companies and institutions such as the USC Health Science Campus, LA County and USC Medical Center and Grifols, a privately owned biomed company. CRA LA and the county see an opportunity to eliminate blight and bring jobs and commercial services to the east side by creating a district for companies and institutions that research and manufacture biomed tech products. Coordinated planning is essential for successful redevelopment efforts within this area. Industrial properties often straddle city and county jurisdictions and the infrastructure surrounding this area is a combination of city and county maintained roads, services and utilities. Rather than having two governmental agencies engaged in two similar but separate redevelopment efforts, merging the two redevelopment project areas is expected to significantly accelerate the rate of change and facilitate revealed redevelopment activities within the merged area. The proposed merger will help implement a redevelopment program to address blighting conditions and attract companies in the biomed technology sector that develop and manufacture medical devices, instruments and fixtures commonly used in research laboratories and doctors' offices. It is important to note that while the Adelante Project Area and Whiteside Project Area would be merged if the amendment is adopted, each redevelopment area would continue to be governed by its own redevelopment plan and its own five-year implementation plan. In addition, unless and until an agreement is reached between the CRA LA, the LA City Council and Los Angeles County, tax increment between the two project areas would not be shared. The proposed amendment would also amend and add various administrative community participation provisions in the redevelopment plan. And in order to assist with the continued orderly implementation of the plan, it also contains alterations and additions relating to administrative procedures and other treatment of certain land uses for the Adelante Project Area. The proposed amendment does not increase or change any fiscal or time limits in either the Adelante Project Area or the Whiteside Project Area, nor does the proposed amendment change any boundaries of the existing Adelante Project Area or Whiteside Project Area. A binder has been provided to members of the City Council and the Board of Commissioners of CRA, which contains required documentation for your consideration. It's hefty, it's, it's big, it's thick, it includes the proposed amendment to the plan, the proposed new five-year implementation plan, thank you Commissioner, the final EIR for both the Adelante Project Area and Whiteside Project Areas, both the environmental impact reports for both of those, and the addendum to the Adelante Final Environmental Impact Report. The binder has also been made available for public viewing and is available today in the front of the council chambers. The five-year implementation plan for the Adelante Project Area is proposed to be adopted as part of the normal five-year plan. It includes the following. The industrial development program, which includes the rehabilitation of industrial building stock with a special focus on upgrading to current building code standards, an expansion of existing businesses through the development of vacant or underutilized parcels, the commercial development program, which similarly includes acquisition of vacant or underutilized parcels, the expansion of existing businesses, the rehabilitation of commercial building stock with a special focus on upgrading to current building standards and eventual sale of acquired properties back to the private sector, and the public improvements program, which includes transportation, circulation, sewers, utilities, parks and streets case improvements. It also includes the development impediments alleviation program, which provides assistance to remove impediments to development. Um, it includes the economic development program, which provides for entrepreneurial development and assistance services utilizing existing commercial industrial space as well as employment opportunities for area residents. It also includes the housing engenderment program, which includes utilizing housing set aside revenues generated from the Adelante Project Area and other housing development and rehabilitation funding sources to preserve, improve or construct affordable housing for residents both within and adjacent to the Adelante Project Area. Again, the Whiteside Project Area would continue to be governed by its own five-year implementation plan, which was adopted by the county. Thank you very much for your patience and for the opportunity to present this information to the members of the City Council and to our Board of Commissioners of CRA LA. We, the staff and consultants, are ready to answer any questions you may have. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Um, we now have, uh, time for questions by members of the council or the CRA LA Commissioners. Uh, do we have, we have Mr. Weezer on the queue? Mr. Weezer?
I'll wait to my, uh, questions till after public comment, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right. Um, will the, is anybody else wish to be heard before public comment? Mr. LeBonge? Okay. Um, we now, uh, will the city clerk, uh, please read into the record the names and addresses of persons or organizations submitting written statements?
There's a statement received from Ms. Lori Stone of the University of Southern California, nineteen seventy-five Zonal Avenue, LA, California, nine zero zero three three. Southern California Biomedical Council at four forty-four South Flower Street, LA, California, nine zero zero seven one. James Rosser, California State University LA, fifty-one fifty-one State University Drive, LA, California, nine zero zero three two. Ken Jackson, Dynamic Builders Incorporated, two one one four South Hill Street, LA, California, nine zero zero seven. Debbie Hoover, Ellis Paint Company, thirty-one fifty, East Pico Boulevard, LA, California, nine zero zero two three. Hector Hernandez, two nine zero zero, East Olympic Boulevard, LA, California, nine zero zero two three. Mike and Chris Colker, three one one eight North Main Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. Philip Manley, El Dorado Tortillas, twenty-nine twenty-eight North Main Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. Eleanor Lopez, eighteen nineteen to eighteen twenty-three Johnston Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. A One Eastern Homemade Pickle Company, eighteen thirty-two Johnston Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. Jenny Hong, eighteen twenty Hancock Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. Ms. Quang P. Feng, eighteen twenty-nine Hancock Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. Dem T. Lu, eighteen thirty Hancock Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. Xu Xiaoju, eighteen twenty-eight Hancock Street, LA, California. Yu Zhu Pan, eighteen twenty-four Hancock Street, LA, California. Quan Fang, thirty-one hundred North Main Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. David Fong, eighteen eighteen Hancock Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. Chris Colker, Gorilla Arts, three one one eight North Main Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. And Mike Colker, three one one eight North Main Street, LA, California, nine zero zero three one. That does conclude the statements.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the proposed amendment to the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Plan, the report to council and the proposed five-year implementation plan fiscal years twenty-ten to twenty-fourteen as well as the addendum to the final EIR prepared for the amendment to the Adelante East Side Redevelopment Plan will be made a part of the record as well, um, and that's of course available to the public, um, along with the staff presentation. Uh, the public hearing notices for this meeting and any other documents that we receive will be included as well. Now's time for any, uh, oral comments in opposition. Um, we'll now hear comments from those present in opposition. Um, we do have, uh, folks, uh, that are here for general comments and some that are here for, but we'll start with the opposition. Mike Colker is the first, uh, speaker and, um, we'll have two minutes per speaker after Mr. Colker. See, we'll next, uh, hear from Mr. John Walsh. Good morning, sir.
Thank you very much. Twelve stakeholders in this project area, specifically in the north main corridor between Mission Road and the Interstate Five Freeway, sent twelve identical letters to the CRA as well as to our councilman Reyes in opposition to the five-year plan as well as in opposition to the, uh, merger of the two areas. We specifically, we specifically also asked for a delay of this meeting due to substantial notification problems. I first want to discuss some of the issues we all brought to the attention of the CRA or the problems of the plan. First of all, the boundaries of the plan don't make sense. You're in our immediate area. You've got a line going right down the center of North Main Street and even blops into part of the side of North Main Street the CRA is covering. Where you can have a situation where one side of North Main is gonna be redeveloped into fancy biotech labs and the other side is still gonna stay the same, some of which are tenements, uh, very, very poor living spaces and, and industrial space. It's just plain doesn't make planning sense. Um, the next thing is, is it says in the plan very clearly that they can raise property taxes in our area and, and they can use the property taxes in our area for projects in the other side of the plan and it even says, if it's agreed due by the county and the council, that it can be used in the county Whiteside area. We are opposed, first of all, to raising of the property taxes, particularly in this horrendous economy, and we're also opposed to the money being used on the other side of town. The next thing we're opposed to is the use of eminent domain for the purchase of property. We've been told that the CRA, by the CRA, that they would not do this and yet clearly in their document says that they will do this and, because it was ever the right. We're very, very concerned, uh, that, uh, Councilman Reyes has this wonderful plan for the LA River and Main Street could definitely be a wonderful corridor between the LA River and between Lincoln Park and Plaza de la Raza. It's an amazing neighborhood with wonderful restaurants, with wonderful, wonderful people and a diverse people, including the twelve people that wrote you, who represent a substantial portion of the property in the area.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your comments. John Walsh is our next speaker. After that is Zuma Dog.
John Walsh, chairman of Hollywood Project Area Committee, you've come to our, one of our meetings, uh, Mr. Garcetti speaking as the whole. Here's our written statement. CRA, bad job, quit, leave town, fast. That's our, somebody pick that up. City Attorney, come over here and pick that up. Ladies and gentlemen, we're talking about an agency that is preparing to sue the State of California... of California, including these people up here, and if they are successful, it will poke about forty to fifty billion dollar, with a B hole, in our budget over the next twenty years. This is an agency that Satan would not have anything to do with. Ladies and gentlemen, Eastside Rail, the Eastside Rail, and every prediction I made on rail, you don't have quad gates, you don't have the kind of gates. When the Eastside Rail comes, opens, people are going to be killed. The reason people aren't dying with huge numbers now, in Long Beach, is they have the quad gates. Blighted, I think your area is much less blighted than Hollywood. Your major areas in Eastside LA, East LA, don't have ugly rubble-filled vacant lots as we have on the historic corner of Hollywood and Vine. And you remember what you told me six months ago? There'll be a construction here, John Walsh. You're just psychotically raving. John Walsh's psychotic ravings last month are conventional wisdom. This month, John Walsh's psychotic ravings this month will be conventional wisdom next month. Merger, I think there should be absolutely no merger. You want to see blight come to any CRA areas, and I want you to know that it's just a matter of time. We have taken your money away from them in Sacramento, and you're gone, baby, gone.
Our next speaker is Zuma Dog. After that will be Miriam Fogler in Van Nuys.
Yes, Zuma Dog here with the CRA before me. You have made my life such misery for so long, the CRA community robbing a-holes, as I call them, an evil, evil body that runs through the community like an evil steamroller. This time, and by the way, I heard President Barack Obama's not too happy with the way some of the pension money's been used in CRA projects. I say no on all CRA projects. I call for William H. Jackson to step down because of his involvement with Weatherly Capital that might cause problems down the line. Now regarding this specific project, they want to take tax money from all across the city, all across the city, and give it to USC for a bio, oh, I'm sorry, they want to give it to the county, who will give it to USC for a biomed center. First of all, I don't think we should be raising property taxes in the area on people for something of USC Biomed Center. I am against using eminent domain for this project, and I always tell you it's one thing and it ends up being something else. Look at Grand Avenue project, look at the CRA projects down in my district, CD2 by Laurel Canyon. You talk about blight. CRA creates blight by going half-cocked on these projects, and they never end up getting through because they're too impossible. And as if somebody is running for city council, I have to stick up for my district and say right now, if I was standing from the podium, I would say I do not want the money from my district leaving and going to the county for a biomed center in USC. That money should be used to redevelop the entire city so that we can have entire, it's so unfair. So you know what? I hope if I was city council member, I wouldn't be saying it this loud, but I probably would because I'd still be pissed off. I'm here to represent the people of CD2, and I don't want this money going to USC. I want it to be used throughout the city, and you're still going to have half the area to be blighted. And they think, hey, Zuma Dog, we'd like you to make the motion right now. Please dissolve the CRA. Don't approve any projects. Have William H. Jackson step down and go call Barack Obama and make amends. You guys are in big, big trouble.
Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler in Van Nuys, and after that is Donna Perman.
Yeah, you guys, you know what? We need more people to come down here who oppose the CRA, the ones that had their homes and businesses shut down by them. Look at the North Hollywood down on Lincolnshire Boulevard. They got a million-dollar fountain, folks, that you paid for. They are a, they are a cancer, and we need to cut them out. We need to dissolve them, period. They need to go. They need to get rid of them all. They're across the whole country, folks. They depleted all our money from the government. That's why the government can't raise any tax revenue. The federal government today just said that they're going to be short, may not get that stimulus money, folks. CRA is expecting that money to come in here. Zuma, it's in the paper. And let me tell you, folks, these guys are illegal because eminent domain, it goes against the US Constitution. You have a right to, you know, they replaced the word property with happiness, and it's really the name property, the right to have freedom, speech freedom, you know, all that, and right to property, not happiness. They did, they took that out so they can confiscate your property in this country and then tax you out of your homes, using that money. This is the same thing they've been doing for centuries, folks, the leaders. They've been doing this over and over, except now they don't use violence, they use hiding and making it look like you're legitimately giving the money, and making it look like you're paying the taxes for good purposes, but they're not good purposes. You're throwing good money at bad because there's nothing there that can keep the money flowing, and they're taking it away from the public to make the private, rich people rich. And that's what they've done with the circus thing. This is all done here by the CRA. They're the ones that are taking down our whole country and the Federal Reserve. Both of these people, we need to do something to take back our tax increment money, the property taxes. We are short here at the city and the county and the state.
Thank you. Donna Perman is our next speaker in Van Nuys. Then we'll come back here, and Jose Aguilar will be our next speaker in the council chambers. Good morning again, Ms. Perman.
Yeah, good morning. We don't need the CRA with their large development projects, changing the looks of our community and the use of eminent domain, causing more density, causing worse traffic, and stealing our tax increment money so we don't have services. Like, San Fernando Valley used to be a somewhat small rural town, and the CRA and other developments have changed our town like they're going to do in Los Angeles. CRA is taking money, as I said, for need of public, and Los Angeles, and it's not right to raise property tax for that area. We don't need large development projects in the valley. We don't need it in Hollywood, and we don't need it in LA. We need to stop giving free rein to the CRA. I know you love them so much, and I know you're going to pass it, close the roll, tabulate the vote, twelve eyes. There's no CRA project that the council doesn't love. I know the, what's particular on this project, but I do know that the CRA always comes, usually comes with very bad projects, and we don't need the CRA. You take your time, you cause blight. You talk about getting rid of blight, but you cause blight, and you fence off an area and you keep it a long period of time, and it takes a long time to build it, and that brings in riffraff. So you are the problem. The CRA is the problem in the communities. We need to open spaces for ourselves. We don't need all these large, ugly projects. Matter of fact, I think Mr. Garcetti, and when you get termed out, maybe you should get a job with the CRA because you did so much for the CRA. So I say no on the CRA. Don't approve it, but I know you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Jose Aguilar is our next speaker. After that is Angelica Pereira.
Yeah, I would like to say that the CRA misrepresented the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council by simply stating that we had concerns. No, we don't have concerns. We are opposed. Now, I'm going to read this into the record, okay? It states here, request for the Secretary to send a follow-up letter, fine, fine, concerns with it. We previously voted not to approve the merger unless the CRA can make specific guarantees that there be no housing losses, tax increment, funding raised for housing, redevelopment will be used for the three affected communities. Now, this is very important because I'm going to read this, because we've been shafted in Boyle Heights and Lincoln Heights, when that metro subway were promised jobs. No, the union had their people outside of our region getting those jobs. The same thing with the General Hospital. Again, another jobs program, but everybody outside of our region got those jobs. Only a handful of people got those jobs. And one of the main specific reasons that we are opposed is that we wanted a guarantee from the CRA that a specific program of job training and recruitment with the goal of ensuring a minimum of sixty-five percent of the jobs in the categories presented to go to residents in the three affected communities. That's something that we wanted a guarantee on, and we presented this to the CRA, and they completely ignored us. They couldn't care less about our concerns. But that's fine, because you know what? We're going to deal with this politically. Next February, all your budgets are going to get, are going to get cut in half. We're going to present, we're going to present a resolution, a ballot measure, to cut city council salaries in half. Because you know why? Your job performance stinks to holy hell. You guys totally ignore, you allow the CRA to ignore the two representing bodies, which is Boyle Heights and Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Councils. So I want to add this into the record, that Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council is opposed. The main reason we're opposed is because we were simply summarily ignored, okay? Our suggestions were summarily ignored, but I'm going to have this entered into the record. Thank you very much, and I need the CRA to have some reassurance it's going to be entered into the record.
Angelica Pereira is our next speaker, and after that will be Jorge Olivares. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, council. My name is Angelica Pereira, and I live in City Terrace. I reside in the Whiteside Redevelopment Zone, and I'm here with several homeowners from the area. Upon my surveys, only one in eight residents in this area got notice of this hearing. This kind of gesture impedes transparency and raises suspicions in the community. And upon that gesture alone, I would like that any decisions today be postponed, just until the community has access to more of the process, has their questions answered, has their concerns about eminent domain satisfied, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Jorge Olivares is our next speaker. After that is Michael Hunt.
Good morning. My name is Jorge Olivares. I represent El Mamá and my dad. Okay, like she said before me, we never, in the five or seven years this project's been going on, never have received any notice in my house. Okay, my parents, they live, we lived there for forty years. My parents are in, they're on a fixed income. We don't need this eminent domain. We don't have any place to move. Like I said, this is bad. Supposedly, cities don't have any money, and all of a sudden you have money for this? Like I said, I don't understand these people. I've never seen them in my life. Sometimes we've got problems in our neighborhood, and I call, and they never, never have ever told me who is my representative. Never, and all of a sudden, you guys want to take my house? That's not, that's not fair. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hunt is our next speaker. After Mr. Hunt will be Matt Dow.
Yes, I too agree with my co-partner, Zuma Dog, on this. I say no, no, no. I think the CRA or whoever they are need to investigate before they spend the people's money, and I think you guys ought to listen to the people. So please, listen to the people. If you listen, you might find some true understanding about what the people want in their communities. Michael Hunt.
Our next speaker is Matt Dow. After that is Armando Herman.
Thank you. Yes. You know, your record right now is bad. It's disgusting. And you're like, who are you to stand up here and say anything, okay? But you know what? You've already seen the people coming forward that are being displaced. A lot of these projects are not getting finished. The mayor is running amok, right? A bunch of money's been lost from projects that we stood here like nobodies and said, don't get into that Grand Avenue and all these other things. You know, and the city's already a mess. There's not, the infrastructure's not here. It's beyond trying to replace what was already established so long ago. And you're really in the pocket of the developers now, who just, it's all, it's just a money train, the front-end loaded management contracts and all these, all these things, affordable housing, it never turns out to be affordable. It's all just politics, coined words, you know, and you're just, we're just playing with a bunch of money, and now the fire and police pension, money's gone. So the record is what I'm talking about, and the sense in the community, you can hear it in the public comment. You know, I don't need to know the nuts and bolts of the operation. I can already hear it. So, you know, I hope you get some fire and then some people resign, you know, William Jackson, and, you know, anybody involved in any of those Weatherly Capital and all of that, it's just, you know, and I'm almost at the point where I, you know, I can't even be angry over it. I'm just sad, you know? So I really hope you get some fresh energy and start conserving things people work for in the city for a hundred years that's all gone down the tube right now.
Mr. Herman is our next speaker. After that is Gillian Spear.
For the record, my name is Armando Herman, a longtime resident of Los Angeles. My apathy to the people who are going through this misery, the mistakes of local government to take advantage, to utilize their power for their own aggressive, assertive manners, and to measure it in a way that is unwavering for their own, what, position? You want to call it position? Or should we call it gain? But look at the people you hurt, residents that live in Los Angeles. We hear about foreclosures, we hear about people losing their jobs, and you have no apathy or sympathy for them, except it must get done this way, it's our way. The heck with the people of Boyle Heights, the heck with the people of Lincoln Heights. But no, because yes, I can speak assertively, I can speak politely, and I can speak quietly, like a calm person. Who cares, not just for my own well-being in Boyle Heights, but the caring of the people who are losing their homes for eminent domain, people who are being taken advantage for eyesores and this provision of yours to leave vacant lots and corners, to make graffiti in our neighborhoods that you find it appropriate? It's murals, it's art? No, it's inappropriate. And I take that very hard because the last seven years, I've complained, when Vera Gosa was our councilman, that these inappropriate actions of putting visual blight in our communities was wrong. But I knew why, because you had CRA, and CRA was to take advantage of Boyle Heights. And let me not say just Boyle Heights, the areas that they're affecting, how's that? So in conclusion, all I ask and all I say is I oppose of your, of your projects. I demand more oversight, more transparency, and more accountability, and I want this proposal to stop now to allow me, the stakeholder of my community, to take action and participate in these meetings at any time. Thank you, and have a nice evening, Mr. Weezer.
Mr. Herman. Gillian Spear will be our next speaker, and after that is Sam Perdomo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Gillian Spear with Grifols, and we're here today in support of the redevelopment plan. Grifols is a biotech company headquartered in Barcelona, Spain, with our US headquarters and manufacturing facilities located in the El Sereno district. Grifols pioneered plasma freeze system in the 1940s and continues to be a leading and trusted innovator in the field, with more than sixty years of safety, innovation, and service. We currently serve healthcare professionals and patients in over ninety countries around the world. Our primary products in the United States are lifesaving therapies for people with blood disorders, including plasma volume expanders for shock and burn victims, coagulation products for hemophiliacs, and intravenous immunoglobulins for autoimmune disorders. All of these are manufactured in our plant in the El Sereno district, which is part of the Adelante Eastside Redevelopment Plan area. We believe this merger will complement the city's efforts to the biotech corridor and serve to attract biotech companies to the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That will be, we had some that were just marked general, so that was one of the general ones. We're now hearing comments from those in favor, or potentially one more general one from Sam Perdomo.
Good morning. My name is Sam Perdomo. I'm a stakeholder. I own a property in the Whiteside area of the county of Los Angeles. My family's owned that property well over twenty years. I'm neutral on support for the project at this time. I'm opposed to eminent domain, but I'm here more to inquire. The property I own is comprised of about twelve thousand square feet of building space. The buildings were constructed in the 1940s. I'd be interested in looking to redevelop this parcel. It's an acre of land. It's M1 zone, but obviously, in these most difficult economic times, I'd like to know where funding is available to pursue a project to redevelop. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perdomo. Now we'll hear the remainder of the comments which have been marked in favor of the proposed amendment to the Adelante Eastside Redevelopment Plan. Cordae Carrillo is our next speaker. After that is Ken Jackson. Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Garcetti, members of the City Council, and Board of Commissioners. I'm Cordae Carrillo. I'm Director of Economic Development and Redevelopment for the County of Los Angeles. I'm here to express the strong support of the County Board of Superior. I'm here to express the strong support of the county board of supervisors for the merger of the Whiteside and Adelante redevelopment areas to facilitate our mutual goals of redeveloping this area. As you know, this support was originally expressed when the board approved the Whiteside redevelopment plan and the merger in October of 2006. As a reaffirmation of that support, Supervisor Gloria Molina had a motion before the Board of Supervisors this morning, calling for the board to send a five-signature letter to the mayor and city council, supporting the merger, and take the next steps toward implementation of the joint project. That motion passed this morning unanimously. At the direction of our board, it has been our pleasure to work with CRA management and staff on this important endeavor. We look forward to continuing that effort for the benefit of the businesses and residents of the area. We thank you for your consideration of this important matter and look forward to a favorable vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Carrillo. Our next speaker is Ken Jackson. After that is Lori Stone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. My name's Ken Jackson. I'm with Dynamic Builders, and we own one of those rubble-filled vacant industrial parcels in East LA that they don't have in Hollywood. Our site is a former brownfield, is a chemical plant that British Petroleum and Castrol tore down and remediated, and we're in the process of commencing a redevelopment of that site without any city funds, purely private sector dollars. We will fund it and finance it ourselves. Our support of this program is a little more practical. We're at a point in the area where our property's in the city of Los Angeles, but the streets are in the county. The infrastructure's not consistent. The city of LA has firewater, but without enough pressure, whereas the county has pressure, but not enough access. The infrastructure in the neighborhood is substantially below par. We believe that the merger will allow for a better, more consistent planning of the infrastructure. We think that it'll allow the city of Los Angeles and the county to make for a more consistent development as the project moves forward. So, our support is purely practical from that standpoint, and we encourage the council to adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for doing business in the city of Los Angeles. Lori Stone is our next speaker. After that is Dr. Jose Gomez. Good morning.
Good morning, honorable council members and commissioners. My name is Lori Stone, and I'm with the University of Southern California. I'm here this morning to extend the university's support for the proposed merger of the Whiteside and Adelante Eastside Redevelopment Project Areas. The university has been working for a number of years, working towards the goal to develop a research park adjacent to our health sciences campus. It is our hope that advances in medical research and biotechnology that occur at our campus, as well as at academic institutions in the vicinity and in the area, can be advanced to the point where they are new medical devices and products that can be developed in a new manufacturing corridor just down the street. The proposed merger of the redevelopment area will facilitate the development of these manufacturing jobs. We also believe that it will provide incentives that will invite industry into the area, and the university looks forward to participating in job training opportunities with our colleagues in the area, so that our neighborhood, community residents have the opportunity to benefit from the jobs that are created. We urge the commission and the council members to consider this project carefully and hope that you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Dr. Jose Gomez.
Mr. President, council members and commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Jose Gomez, and I'm here representing California State University, Los Angeles. California State University, Los Angeles supports the merger proposal and is very interested in becoming a leading partner in the development of the biomedical technology corridor. We have an uncontested track record of student and faculty achievement, particularly in the disciplines and fields of study important to this undertaking. As its eastern anchor, it is our intention to become a productive pipeline for talent and expertise, supporting and sustaining the biomedical technology corridor. Cal State LA, with its interdisciplinary laboratories and research components, will play an essential role in this critical endeavor. We support the proposed amendment and look forward to being a part of transforming your vision into reality. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could, we now have the oral comments finished. Are there any staff responses at this time?
No, Mr. President.
And the members of the city council may now ask some direct questions. Mr. Weezer is our first speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I don't have any questions now, but colleagues, if you can see, if we do nothing, we will continue to have over a hundred acres, more than a hundred acres, of vacant industrial property that continues to stick there and not contribute to the tax base, not contribute to the potential jobs that can be created. If you look at these maps, as was mentioned by one of the speakers, you have parcels that sit on both the city side and the county side. On top of that, you have aging infrastructure that no property owner would want to invest in the property, because they certainly cannot bring in the type of new industry, the type of new manufacturing that they would like to bring in. The vision to create this biotech corridor started with the realization that we have a wonderful asset with General Hospital and a number of other research facilities there that are looking into biomed. And the other side of this corridor, you have Cal State LA. So, the idea was, instead of having these vacant industrial buildings sit there, create the types of offices and research facilities that could contribute both to the local community and to these wonderful institutions that are on each end of the industrial corridor. The local project area committee for the Adelante Eastside area has approved, has voted to support this merger, and so has a number of other local residents who have expressed their support. Again, this area covers about ninety-seven percent industrial and commercial, very few to no residential, probably a few parcels in the county side. That's very important as well, because one of the things that's been important to me, as I've worked with this project area, is to ensure that we have at least impact as possible to the local residents. Finally, as I said, when we take this vote, it's simply a vote to make an amendment and to merge the two. Following this planned amendment, the city, the CRA, and the county will sit down and attempt to negotiate an agreement. If we ever reach an agreement, the process will include multiple additional public hearings and substantial community outreach. That agreement will have to be adopted by the city council, the CRA board, and the county board of supervisors. And certainly, one thing that I'm paying close attention to is the tax increment financing that is being realized in the Adelante Eastside, and to make sure that it is equitable, the way we distribute it, and that we do not give any of our tax increment financing away. The other issue that I'm keeping a close eye on is governance. Who's going to decide how we distribute that tax increment financing and what plans are developed as we move forward and take advantage of the assets we have in that area and create what I would think would be a nationally focused biomed center that's going to bring the types of attention that a company like Griffles is already bringing in their biomed research, right here in the city of Los Angeles? Because if you look at Griffles and the type of company it is, the type of research it is doing to benefit human illnesses, you would say, that's the type of facility we want here in Los Angeles, let's take advantage of this area, and let's move forward. Colleagues, I know we've heard some comments today that we need more public input. We'll have that public input as this process moves forward. This is just the beginning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Laban.
Thank you very much. Again, I wanted to thank the CRA board. In 1969, I was at high school. I remember Larry Wise, who was a printer, took me down Legasham Boulevard, and he said, "This is the main drag of North Hollywood." And you know, in 1969 and post-years after that, it transformed, it stalled, it needed help. The CRA came in, and it took many years, but finally, the combination of the right action brought about change, and more change is coming. Now, I want to praise Mr. Weezer and also Mr. Reyes. This is a part of the city that's very important. My mother was born in Lincoln Heights, so I feel always inclined to stand up and speak about that. And also, I went to Cal State LA and always planned to speak for the university. Fifty years ago, they moved from City College plus over to the Eastside. That was a very important move. Then you go back in time in the 1930s, the city said, and the county, "We're gonna have the greatest hospital in the world, the greatest hospital in the world," and that was USC County, now USC County. That was a big commitment that they made. Over these years that have passed, things need to be corrected and changed, that Alameda Corridor East, I guess if they call that, would be a concept there, to look at that rail there. Also, I want you to look at the county area there, too, because I hate to see county islands in the city. I'd rather see it all be one way or the other, with the support of the people. But also, Mr. Weezer, this is the vision that you have, which is so important, because there's a first-term council member with a second term and hopefully further terms down the line, you could see this through, where you make change to improve it. The county has a big investment out there, some of that county could be consolidated with the needs. And I know Mr. Cardis' work, he talks about the challenges of juveniles and juvenile halls, and there's a Missouri project that you talk about, Tony, you know, the old county juvenile hall shouldn't be where it is today. All these are things that we should stand up and try to think about and work with the people, work with the people, but it takes leadership. Mr. Weezer, I thank you, and Mr. Reyes, I thank you for what you do at Eastlake Park, which is important in the area there. So, I think it's a good first step as we move forward in looking at this area for a very important connection between the university, California State University, Los Angeles, and USC Medical Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Always interesting to hear and exciting to hear Councilman Laban speak to Eastlake Park. Most people know it as Lincoln Park, but being the historian that you are, you know it's called Eastlake and Westlake, the Carter Park and Lincoln Park. So, thank you, Councilman Laban. The very first zoo, you're right, the Zalek Zoo. We've heard some assertions in the public hearing process today, and I want to be able to have the staff respond to it, because I just don't want to leave it hanging out there. One of the assertions was that we are going to be taking people's homes, that residences will be taken from individuals in that area. Can we speak to that? Please hold my time.
These actions are not before our board or the city council, that the eminent domain is not part of these. These are two existing redevelopment project areas, and nothing changes in that regard.
So, they're two existing redevelopment areas? And is anyone right now in peril of losing their home?
No, they are not. And under our redevelopment amendment for Whiteside, we are not allowed, not permitted, to take properties where people lawfully reside.
So, I want to be very clear for a Joe citizen, right now, you're not in the process? Or do you have plans to take anyone's homes?
No.
And furthermore, Mr. Councilman Reyes, not only is this not allowed in our redevelopment plan, the state of California, the voters voted to prohibit the taking of single-family legally occupied residences. That is prohibited. We are not allowed to do that, nor do we have any plans to use eminent domain against residential units in this project area.
So, one of the persons that came today, I want you to be very clear, that you can sleep tonight knowing that your home is safe. The state does not allow for the CRA to take your home. So, let's get that out of your mind. Rest in peace about having your property intact. So, again, I need to say that three or four different ways, to be very clear, that's what's gonna happen, that you keep your home, they're not gonna take it. Second, the posture taken by the representative of Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council, he made an assertion that, a statement was made by the CRA that was false, that indeed, this is their true position based on his interpretation. I'd like to hear from you what happened at the first meeting, we invited back to a second meeting, and what you understand the posture is from the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council?
Yes. We attended the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council, is one of fifteen presentations that we made to community groups, and at that time, we made our-
I want to be very clear, one of fifteen community groups, there was one presentation-
Yes.
-to Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council?
One presentation, and that occurred on March 5th, 2009. And at this meeting, there were concerns raised, but there was no action taken, and the concerns that were raised were about future actions regarding tax increment and governance that are not being addressed at this time.
So, tax increment concerns and governance-
Yes.
...of the CRAs are yet to be discussed in the future within this process, but it's not during these actions today?
That is correct.
And so, that was the question that they raised, that you could not answer at that time?
Yes.
Because they're not being considered?
Yes, sir.
So, were you being evasive by not answering them?
No, sir.
So, you're just pointing the fact that what they were asking about is not in front of you?
That's correct, and that there would be adequate time for the public to address these concerns when we've negotiated and those actions have been reviewed by our board and city council.
So, when you're ready to discuss governance and tax increment, you will go back to Neighborhood Council and engage their concern?
Yes, we will.
And that will happen sometime in the future?
Yes.
Once this process is terminated?
That's correct.
Okay, just for the record, and I know he's filming and taping this, and take this back home, understand that the questions and answers you've raised will be answered, that the notion of tax increment governance will be discussed with the stakeholders of Lincoln Heights. So, I want to make sure very, now, when they voted against it, when did they vote for that?
Well, I'm understanding they voted this week, but we were not aware of that until yesterday, I think, or today.
So, they voted against the-
Excuse me, excuse me, the floor is right now, Mr. Reyes.
Okay, so, just again, for the record, they voted against it, but you were not present?
No, we were not present.
Were you invited to that meeting?
No, we were not.
Okay, thank you. So, again, this is about building up relationships, this is about engaging community stakeholders, this is not us versus them, but this is about clarity and fact. And sometimes folks are misinformed, they raise anxieties, they raise pressure about what's gonna happen to me, when in fact, they're being misled. And our point here is, let's be clear, be transparent. For us to join the General Hospital, the area that's in Council District 14, the Council Weezer is focused on, the areas that I'm working on, have a tremendous capacity to build jobs, redesign, redevelop urban fabric, and genuinely address the needs of these communities. And the density's here, we're at about fifteen to twenty-five thousand people per square mile. So, the impact on individuals could be very, very great. We proceed in a methodical manner. So, I look forward to meeting with the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council, look forward to working with CRA to address these concerns, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Are there any other final questions or comments from the city council or from the CRA commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Estelano, do any of the written statements in opposition received, as the record, require written response to be prepared for consideration by the city council?
Yes, Mr. President, they will require some written response for consideration.
Okay. Well, we will, as our next step, await that response from the Community Redevelopment Agency. Want to thank everybody. The joint public hearing on the amendment to the Adelante Eastside Redevelopment Plan and the five-year implementation plan is now closed. Because written responses to written objections must be prepared, the joint public meeting will be continued for the purpose of responding to written objections received prior to or at this joint public hearing, and we appreciate the Community Redevelopment Agency's work in those responses to make sure that those public comments are heard and responded to. The joint public meeting thus is going to be continued then. I move to continue this until next Tuesday, August 11th, at 10:00 a.m. here in the John Forrow Council Chambers, Room 340, at which time the council will consider the written responses to the written objections that are considered today. The CRA, LA, and the council may then deliberate on the actions before them and decide whether or not to proceed with actions to consider the adoption of the amendment of the Adelante Eastside Redevelopment Plan and the five-year implementation plan. There's no objection, we will continue to them. Thank you very much, appreciate it. And if we can also adopt, I'm sorry, as part of that motion, 1A was submitted, if there's no objection, we'll consider that as a friendly amendment. Let's go ahead and vote on 1A today. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Thank you all for your patience. We know it's a very busy day with a lot of big issues, so we really do appreciate people's patience in all things today. I know that Ms. Han wanted to reconsider item 14 and put that on the desk for a little bit later. If we can open the roll and reconsideration.
Mr. President, that item did go forth with Councilwoman-
Okay, we'll have to suspend the rules then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And if we can move to reconsider, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And we'll call that special for Ms. Han. And I'll switch over to Mr. Smith. And I'll switch over to Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Take up item number 13.
And that was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. If I can ask the CDD staff to come forward. And colleagues, today, we have a very exciting proposal before us. A recent report by the Los Angeles Economic Development Corporation said that approximately 894,000 jobs in Los Angeles are now part of what we call the creative industries. It is the number-one industry in LA, accounting for more than $40 billion a year. 894,000 jobs. We know that Los Angeles, as a theater destination, actually outstrips New York City in terms of the number of venues. We have about 150 more venues than even New York City, being the top city anywhere in the country. And we also know that the tourism industry has recently surpassed international trade as our number-one industry as well. Today, we have before us a loan from the federal government, Section 108, a line of credit that the federal government opens up for economic development projects throughout the city of Los Angeles that is being proposed to be used for the first time in a neighborhood where we have never used it, although it's been used in other parts of the city, in South Los Angeles and East Los Angeles and the center of the city, et cetera, to help fund a project that would bring jobs to not just the core of Los Angeles, but we estimate somewhere between 1 million and 1.2 million visitors a year to Los Angeles. Let me start by thanking our chair from the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wesson, for his support and his diligence in looking at this matter as well. We have before us a show that is known worldwide, or company, Cirque du Soleil, by some estimates, one of the most successful entertainment companies ever, and one in which Los Angeles has a real strong role. As we know, when we celebrated the 25th anniversary, I believe, here recently, Cirque du Soleil was a circus that decided to do things differently. They got rid of all the animals in the circus, which was one of the first progressive circuses anywhere to do this, and put an emphasis on human performance and on theater, to not just be the typical entertainment, but to have some of the classic elements of a circus, but also to wrap in other elements of timeless themes and a visual extravaganza unlike anything that had been seen. When Cirque du Soleil was starting out, it had a rocky start and came here to Los Angeles with a small loan for a tent and set up right next to the Santa Monica Pier. And it was the audiences here in Los Angeles that helped save Cirque du Soleil. It has now gone on to world acclaim and fame. The last 20 years, they have not had a single show that has flopped. In fact, they've been the biggest successes on a stage anywhere in the world. Today, we have before us not $30 million of city money, because it had been reported at different times that this was city money. It's $30 million, not of surplus money, I'm sorry, of stimulus money. This did not come from economic package for the city to spend someplace, but a federal line of credit, essentially a place to go for loans when sometimes banks aren't loaning, which is the case right now throughout this country, but it is very difficult for any development, for individuals to get credit, but to help stimulate and bring about jobs. Now, it is done through our Community Development Department, which has to review and make sure that it meets federal requirements, and by the way, picks up a fee for the city of a half million dollars in executing the loan. So not only is the city, it's not city money we're loaning, we earn half a million dollars for the people of LA when we execute this loan. But, in fairness, this is money the city could be on the hook for if it is not repaid. It is money which we put forward from the federal government, but the federal government says if we come up short, the city of LA could pay for it. Thus, in looking at this money, which is over $350 million, by the way, colleagues, because some folks have said, why can't we have this in our area? You can have this in your area. This money is out there. And we'll hear from the Community Development Department in a second about how that can be achieved. But this money has been used in other places. This is 30 million of that 350 million-plus dollars as a loan that thus has to be securitized and that we want to make sure is well-protected while bringing jobs. So I have a series of questions, and I'll press my button again because I know that was pretty long already. But I want to ask a series of questions of CDD, because I have questions about it too, and I want to make sure that the work has been done and done well. And I also want to recognize folks that are here and may invite some of them to the table later. We had a public hearing on this in committee, but we have folks I know from the building trades, there are construction jobs that are generated from this, and we have the iron workers and electricians, the pipe trades and others, as well as the building trades here. And I may ask Mr. Slosson to come up in a second. We also have IATSE, which will have the permanent jobs of the stagehands. I was at a play this weekend just outside of Los Angeles, and somebody came up to me and said, "Thank you, I heard you on the radio." It's the first time anybody's ever said "stagehand" on the radio in my memory. We are people, we are the middle class, we have jobs, and this is good for us. And we also have members of the business community, the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce, and Los Angeles Inc., which is in charge of our visitors that are coming here. First, I think I might have explained most of it, but what is this money and what is the balance in this account? And how has it been used in other places in the city?
Thank you, Chairman Garcetti. Richard Venbal, General Manager for the Community Development Department. As Councilman Garcetti indicated, this is federal money that we are entitled to borrow, and it is based on a formula that is related to our annual block grant allocation. Currently, we have available to us about $350 million to loan through the Section 108 program that has to meet a number of criteria, including jobs, living wages, et cetera, in order to qualify. In addition to that, they have to be sufficiently collateralized. In this particular instance, we have a project that is more than sufficient in meeting the collateral requirements.
While you're on that, how is it collateralized? And folks who, you know, obviously know collateral is what we get should payments not come through. And I do want to say something for the record to my colleagues and to the public. We have done loans in the past out of this loan fund that have been collateralized or paid off, sorry, not collateralized, paid off by taxes generated on-site. That is not the case here. We're not taking sales tax, bedroom tax, parking tax. In fact, besides, I think, the Snyder project in the Valley, this is only the second time we have said, for the person who is taking the loan out, you have to pay 100% of this by money that doesn't come out of any potential taxes that are on-site generated.
Mr. Chairman, let me indicate, I'm joined here by Assistant General Manager Robert Seines, and also our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Ninos Benjamin.
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin is the staff person who worked on this deal, who prepared all of the material that was sent forward. I'll ask Mr. Benjamin to ask your specific technical questions.
Okay, okay. And we'll return to your narrative. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mr. James. I just want to pause on those points, it's important. Mr. Benjamin?
That's correct. In the past, Section 108 loans were based on pledges, future general funds, tax increments, those type of loans we have done throughout the city. About two years ago, market situation has changed. Banks have stopped lending. Conventional laws are not being provided by the private sector. As a result, we have given seven new loans, which are not based on cities' resources. They are based on operation, net operating income of the project.
So we've been doing that as policy?
That's correct. Market situation changed, and as a result, we adapted to what, where the market, free market, is not able to provide to demand of the borrowers. It is the role of the government to step in to fill that gap. And we have stepped in, and we have been filling that gap. And this loan is in continuation of that new policy.
Okay.
This is not a subsidy. This is a loan, has to be repaid, is collateralized. There's pledge of revenues from the activities of their theater dreams to this project. There's debt coverage ratio, loan-to-value ratio. This project is one of the safest loans that we have made.
Okay.
We are recommending.
What is the, Mr. Venbal, what is the collateral on this loan?
The collateral on this loan includes revenue generated from the Cirque du Soleil performances themselves.
Let's say something happens, which hasn't happened in 20 years, and this is a flop. Nobody wants to come see a Cirque du Soleil show about Hollywood, which I don't believe. But if it's a flop, does the taxpayer then, we say, "Sorry, we didn't get enough people coming to the theater, you're out $30 million"?
No, not at all.
What happens?
If, there are two recourses. First of all, this loan is first, has recourse to our entitlement grant, which is, last year was about 72 million, and it's projected to be about 81 million next year, based on the budget proposed. If this loan goes bad, recourse is our first to the block grant, and then we have recourse to the collateral. We have a security interest in the real estate, which is not only Kodak Theater, it is Kodak Theater, retail, and the hotel.
The entire Hollywood and Highland complex, the hotel, the mall. Is that worth at least $30 million?
Well, the properties were to about $600 million.
Okay. So we're well-protected with that?
That's correct.
Just wanted to establish that for the record. Mr. Venbal, if you want to continue?
Yes. Also, I wanted to indicate the other criteria that are being met here. We have a loan-to-value ratio of less than 50%, and we just demonstrated that in the comments we made earlier. Debt coverage ratio of 1.5, one and a half times more than what we need to actually pay the loan off, has been identified as probably available. The jobs requirement has been met. We have a solid developer and an operator with a successful track record. So these are all ingredients that are elements that have to be met, that we've evaluated and determined to be adequate for the purposes of recommending this loan.
Where has Section 108 money been used geographically in the city before?
Section 108 has been used primarily in South Los Angeles, East Los Angeles, Central, and even, and out in the valley as well, south.
So throughout the city? And to your knowledge, has it ever been used in Hollywood before?
I don't think we've ever had a project in Hollywood.
And just to be clear, the money generated, does that stay in Hollywood? The sales tax we get, the additional parking tax, the hotel room taxes?
That money can be used anywhere.
So this is not a loan for the Hollywood neighborhood that people in Northridge or Boyle Heights or San Pedro don't benefit by? They all will benefit by that if there is more jobs and more revenue?
The whole city will benefit.
Okay. They will. So 30, and by the way, Ms. Han wants a performance down in San Pedro, I believe. She's already reserving the right to have some circus players come down there. This is a 3,500-seat theater, which the city owns the land under and helped build that project. But we built it for the Academy Awards in order to bring them back to Hollywood, which has been unquestionably a great thing to have them back, footsteps away from where they started. The amount of, you know, we have a billion viewers, 2 billion ayes, that watch those awards in the world every year, and all the, you know, concomitant economic activity that happens with that. But we've had a theater which has been dark for most of the year, or much of the year, where we have months at a time, sometimes when there's nothing more than a show or two or a special event. Part of that is because this was built for the Academy Awards as a vertical theater, which is very good for TV and for the Oscars, but not as good for Hollywood, I mean, sorry, for Broadway shows, for theater shows. Cirque du Soleil requires a certain verticality for its acrobatics, and so it's actually naturally made for this. But how many weeks a year do we anticipate this show to be on, and how many seats are in that theater?
About 900 seats of the theater have visual constraints, cannot be used for circus events. Six weeks of the theater are booked for the Academy events.
And the Academy Awards, but by the way, the Motion Picture Academy is on board with this. They have not threatened to leave because of part of this. They've been a part of the conversations, they've embraced circus.
That's correct. Academy's staying, and this circus agreement is built around Academy's event. There are 386 events a year, which is two events a day, and there are some dark nights which will be booked for alternative use of the theater.
386 performances by Cirque du Soleil?
A year. So 386 performances a year, about 3,000 of the 3,500 seats, or about 2,600 of the seats will be available?
Something like that, yes.
Okay. So if you do the math out there, we're talking about, probably about a million visitors to Los Angeles that otherwise would not be there. People have asked, how do we know this stuff? I want to say, there's a few studies, not just the LA DC one. In New York City, 84% of the tickets that are bought on Broadway are not bought from city residents. 65% of them are residents, 20% are suburbanites. And for folks who say, well, they just come to New York anyway, those are for folks who say they wouldn't have come. By the way, the people who said that they went to theater in New York, they specifically came for shows. Of 10.3 million tickets sold on Broadway, 4.7 million of them were just for people who came for the show. They didn't want to come to New York and happen to be there and see a show. If you go to the Pantages, you see that similar ratio. People come from suburbanites, so people come from Orange County, outside the city, inside the county, and people from across the country and abroad. So we're looking at probably somewhere in the hundreds of thousands of visitors that would not be in Hollywood, in the city of Los Angeles, spending money each year otherwise. Is that a good estimate?
That's correct.
Okay. Let me say just a couple other things in closing, folks, and then I want to just ask some of the jobs people, because then the rub is the jobs for me, too. There's no question to me that this makes financial sense. The amount of tax revenue that we will get for the city to spend throughout the city is good. The jobs for our stagehands, for our restaurateurs, that they have to be living wage, that they have to go through local hiring, means jobs for my constituents in Hollywood. It means people who have not been at work will go back to work. It means that they will be able to spend money and support their family, that they will go out each evening. It means people will stay the night, and our hotel rooms will be full. And when we have none of our own money being put forward, but certainly, we need the guarantee because it could be our money on the line, we make a half million dollars from this, and it is not coming out of sales tax or anything generated on-site. We're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. This makes a lot of sense. It was brought up, though, and I know the LA Times wrote an editorial about this this morning, and it was before, I think, they got the job analysis that came about. My understanding is just after they had finished writing. And I agreed with them, because before, I didn't want to just take the word on the job analysis. I need to see exactly what the breakdown. And this doesn't include the construction jobs, which are very important, but the permanent jobs that are necessary as part of the loan was passed out to all of you colleagues, and it's also been made available to the public as well. There is, and I understand part of the reason this was withheld was the confidentiality agreement between the developer in the area and Cirque du Soleil, who are putting more money than this loan into it themselves, as a reminder. And this is not just for the owner of the Hollywood and Highland, Cirque du Soleil itself, has invested its own money, which it doesn't really do much anymore, as a side note. That's the confidence it has in this production. So they've got their own money on the line that is not going to be filled from the city. The theater staff, it's directly the ushers, the treasurers, the sellers, the security, the housekeeping. The Cirque du Soleil show staff that is here, that's shown as 191 jobs there. Wolfgang Puck is here as well, and I want to talk to them about their catering thing. And then the Renaissance Hotel also puts in that. The vendors that would be there, and the retail tenants and restaurant tenants, and our own city parking attendants, in anticipating these visitors, come out here to the jobs that are generated. If I could ask, just briefly-
Mr. Garcetti, you're well over your time. If you push the button again, we'll let you go.
I will sit down and wait to speak next to them. Thanks.
I always enjoy doing that. Mr. Cardenas. Is in the back with Mr. Labons?
Mr. Garcetti, I just wanted to, Mr. Garcetti, state with this group here, this is a loan, correct? Your agency will be paid back.
Yes.
And this is important.
Yes.
And your professional assets stand by all the way on this. And absolutely, Mr. Garcetti, we're fortunate to have the roles that we have in city government, to share a part of the city that does have entertainment. And this core of entertainment, it does make a difference if there's activity at the Pantages, at the Kodak, at the other venues, whether the other restaurants or the businesses see traffic. I know that certainly from my experience as well. So, Mr. Garcetti, I support this effort here, and I thank you for the work that you have done in Hollywood. It is unbelievable, the work that you have done over the last short years in making it the destination that everybody has an experience of a positive note. In the past, often they came and it was an experience that didn't live with the touch that we all want them to be. So thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for your leadership on this loan that will be paid back so other people could be helped as well in their enhancement of economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Last call from Mr. Cardenas. Not here, Mr. Garcetti.
I won't take up much more time. I do want to say two things. I do want to say two things. The money that's been put forth by Cirque du Soleil outside of this loan is how much? Do we know approximately?
In excess of 50 million dollars.
And by the developer here?
In excess of 20 million dollars.
Okay, so there's 70 million there on top of this 30. And the reason for the build-out, some people have said, why do they need so much money? If you've been to a Cirque du Soleil show, the hydraulics lift and tilt the stage and do all sorts of stuff, these are some of the construction jobs. I was wondering if Richard Slosson would come forward, if he's still here, or representative of maybe one of the building trades, Kevin, if you want to come forward, and just talk briefly about the jobs you believe are going to be generated here in terms of construction jobs?
Kevin Norton, IBW Local 11, Richard's not here right now, but it created quite a few construction jobs, desperately needed construction jobs. I know, speaking on behalf of electricians, we've seen a 30 percent decrease in working hours from our members this year over the past previous few years, and this will be an excellent project, be a great benefit to the community, and many developers in similar situations haven't had that commitment to local hiring and apprenticeship opportunities, and we wholeheartedly support the project.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. We have also LA Inc. here, representative from LA Inc. You could have come on forward. In terms of the visitors to Los Angeles, again, on this loan that is not city money and will be repaid, what do you think the impact is? I know you've written a letter in support of this, but if you could summarize that very briefly as well, and what do you think the impact will be?
Well, we think the impact could be tremendous. It could be an enormous magnet for visitors, particularly visitors that are in that geographic triangle bordered by San Francisco, Phoenix, and San Diego. We get fully half of our visitors from that triangle, and about 13 million visitors a year come from there. About 13 million visitors come from that triangle each year, and the reason they come back, they've been to LA many times, they've seen the sort of landmarks that all first-time visitors want to see, but it's actually arts and cultural activities that keep bringing them back, up to four to six times a year. So we think this would be a huge, based on every success they've had in every other venue, would be a huge magnet for visitors coming to our area. And as you mentioned, President Garcetti, tourism is now the number-one business in Los Angeles, bringing about $14 billion into the economy and supporting about 250,000 full-time permanent jobs.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. In Las Vegas, there's 36.7 million visitors a year. A full 5 percent of them said the only reason they were in Las Vegas was for a Cirque du Soleil show. 5 percent of those 36.7 million visitors. One, two last folks, if I could just bring them forward for a second. Iasi, in terms of, is the representative from Iasi still here? Come on forward. Put a human face on this loan, that this is not just about building out a stage, it's about people who will work that stage. Let us know where Iasi stands on this, representing the good people who work every single day in our theaters.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is George Blanch. I am the president of the International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees, Local Number 33. We are the theatrical stage technician union in Los Angeles for over 115 years, representing over 1,315 members. I am also here with business agent Sergio Medina of Local 857 Treasurers and Ticket Sellers, and we've come here today to offer our union's support to CIM for their Cirque du Soleil project. They have been good friends and employers to our union since they took over the Hollywood and Highland facility in 2004. This is the first viable opportunity for the theater to house permanent resident theatrical company and the first long-term project that has committed to the theater. As others have said it, and as you have heard, it'll bring 2,000-plus people to the Hollywood and Highland facility eight times a week, 48 weeks a year. This would increase tourism, which will bolster the struggling shops and restaurants in the complex, as well as the surrounding areas of Hollywood. Most important to our union, it'll offer 70 to 90 permanent middle-class jobs and hundreds of part-time jobs throughout the year.
Can I ask you something about that? As a union leader, you can't overcount those jobs, because your members will be pretty upset with you if you do. So you feel that's an accurate number, a 70 to 90 jobs for your members?
Those are permanent jobs. There'd be a lot more jobs doing maintenance and things like that. It's, yes.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
May I continue?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
All right. The Cirque du Soleil company in itself has a long-proven track record in promoting successful blockbusters and innovative productions. This Hollywood-themed production would offer our city a unique, high-quality production with an enriching culture experience not available anywhere else. For the sake of the middle-class jobs and hundreds of part-time jobs, we urge each of you to vote in favor of CIM's request, and we thank you for your time, and it's very important.
And one last question. Are your members rich?
No, no, we're middle-class.
Middle-class of Los Angeles, and this is hanging on to that. I appreciate that very much. I appreciate it. One last is, we have analysis in here about the catering jobs. Is Wolfgang Puck company still here? If we could invite them to come forward. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it. There's estimates here on another 65 jobs that would be generated, full-time equivalent about 60. These pay also 13 to 19 dollars an hour above the living wage for Wolfgang Puck. Can you tell us how you came to those numbers as well?
Well, we operate theaters throughout the country, and personally, I've operated throughout the country, and we know when you have full theaters what that does for concessions and snacks and so forth. So the amount of jobs that we would have for bartenders and servers and bussers and cooks, just to supply those 2,000 people a day would be that 65 number, and that's conservative, because there's also a lot more feeding the stagehands and backstage food and so forth. So there's a lot to be generated, and as far as the complex goes, what CIM has done there in the last number of years has been fantastic. This is what that complex has been built for, and it's fantastic to see something that would be so permanent and really add to the viability of Hollywood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do promise I'll sit down after these last two sentences. I urge your support, colleagues, today. This is no city money. It is collateralized with something worth more than 10 times the amount of it. We earn half a million dollars executing this. This is about middle-class jobs, construction ones in the short term, and the hospitality and stagehand and theater-related jobs in the long term. The worst shows in Las Vegas that Cirque du Soleil does average about 85 percent capacity every single night. 85 percent capacity. The next highest in Las Vegas is in the 60 percents. And so even if this were to fail, we have the guarantee and the backstop without any city money being lost, but we do anticipate a great success, not only for Hollywood, but for all of the city. Let's be business-friendly, and let's be middle-class friendly, finally, and let's make this loan.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti, and congratulations on being fortunate enough to have this tremendous project in your district. But one of the things I want to clarify for the public, because as this became something that was talked about on the streets of Los Angeles over the last few weeks, somehow this got into the press, to the news radio, et cetera, and then some misnomers came about. And one thing that a constituent told me was, well, why, if the city's got money issues, why are they giving 30 million dollars to the Kodak Theater? And first of all, I said, nobody's giving 30 million dollars to the Kodak Theater. It's a 30-million-dollar loan, correct? And then, secondly, so it's not a gift, it's a loan. And then, secondly, this loan is against a project. Is this project collateralized beyond its capacity? Or how much, how many, how much in loans roughly are against this property compared to what the property is worth or the complex is worth?
Complex worth about 600 million dollars. There's a first mortgage of 220 million dollars, and this loan is the only other loan, 30 million. So the total's about less than 50 percent loan-to-value.
So as far as underwriting guidelines goes, that's pretty ideal. I mean, that's like, that's a great opportunity. Most banks, even though banks aren't really lending money these days, even banks today might want to lend a 30-million-dollar loan on a project that's worth 600 million dollars when they only have a first of 220 million. So, well, how often do these 106, Section 108 loans come across a property that is so low in collateralization?
This is...
Is it rare, or is it often?
This is one of the strongest projects that we've ever written, underwritten.
That you've ever underwritten?
Yes.
Right? So I don't understand why some people are a little confused, because help me clarify something for the public. Isn't one of the main purposes for this federal money, Section 108 loan, to be utilized in projects similar to this, isn't one of the reasons is to take federal money, infuse it into the local economy, and create local jobs?
That's correct.
And now, this is going to create construction jobs, correct?
That's right.
And then, which are somewhat temporary, most of them.
Yes.
And then, but this is going to create a bunch of permanent jobs, isn't it?
That's right.
So if Cirque du Soleil is anywhere near as successful on this site as they are over and over and over again on all the other Cirques du Soleils that they have around in Vegas and other parts of the world, if they're even somewhat successful, it looks like this is a good thing to do, correct?
That's correct.
And then, we're going to have people working five days a week at the Cirque du Soleil doing various different things that are going to be living in and around Los Angeles.
That's correct.
Isn't that exactly what a Section 108 loan is for?
Precisely.
That's precisely what a Section 108 loan is for. What's that?
Seven days a week.
Seven, seven. Well, then, maybe they'll be working overtime. But, I mean, they're going to do shows seven days a week, but what I'm saying is, you're going to have people showing up to a full-time job.
That's right.
Dozens and potentially even 100 and some, 200 and some people showing up regularly to work.
That's right.
Which is exactly what a Section 108 loan is for.
Precisely.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify that, because unfortunately, somehow, some misnomers got out there in the community, and it's kind of ironic. I was expecting to hear a totally different tone from that seat, from that seat, when it came to this issue, and all of a sudden, we're hearing nothing but the facts of the matter and really getting an opportunity to let the public know that this is a great, wonderful opportunity. Once again, congratulations. I'm not, I try to stay away from being jealous of my colleagues, but on this one, I'm so jealous that this is happening in your district and not mine. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One other question that folks in the public have asked me, and I think needs to be clarified, is the source of the funding. That's what people are asking is, you're having trouble paying for some significant city services. Why can't this just go into your general fund and pay those services instead of taking on something like this project?
That would be an ineligible use of this money. This money is federal money that is set aside for economic development purposes under HUD's Section 108 program.
And that's what I think the public is also not clear on. So this can only be used for these kinds of projects.
It could not go to the general fund to pay for general fund expenses. Could not be used for that.
Right. So it clearly can't pay for more police, it can't pay for more firefighters, it can't pay for some of the other things that we're short. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. That ends the queue. There is no motion for a public hearing, seeing no motion. All those who were asked to speak, there has already been a public hearing on this matter. There's no request for a public hearing this time. Therefore, Mr. Clerk, if you please proceed to open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That passes. Thank you very much. There was a public hearing, ma'am, in committee on this, and that meets the state requirements. And, Mr. Garcetti, if your staff would meet with the lady, we'll proceed to the next item, I believe, item number 47?
Yes, and that was called special by cards.
Item number 47, John Walsh.
You haven't taken my written comments for the hearing, previous hearing. It's up here. As far as 47 is concerned, Fire Department, relative to responsibility of resident managers, hollywoodhighlands.org, they should be, have emergency preparedness training. This, we absolutely need. We support it. We support it as much as I want you to know that right today, we gave 30 million dollars to Theater Dreams, LA, Chicago Limited Partners as the borrower. They are the borrower on the previous loan. Nobody but them, and if they go out of business, we lose 30 million dollars. Thank you.
He's not talking about this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes the discussion on number 47. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. I'm sorry, Mr. LeBange.
And forthwith, this is a great idea. Thank you.
We've got to pass it first, Mr. LeBange. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Now, Mr. LeBange.
Thank you, forthwith. This is a very needed idea.
Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Cardenas, number 48.
Thank you. Do we have public comment cards on that one?
The cards.
How many do we have? Four. If we can go to one minute each on this, because it is a resolution, and it is getting late, and we have other items, we can go to one minute each for those public comment cards.
Okay. So there's no objection. So ordered Judy Mancuso. Followed by Ed Buck.
Hi, thank you. I'm here to support the resolution for SB 250. I want to thank the City of Los Angeles for their leadership on this issue with humane issues for animals, for dogs and cats. And I just commend you, and the rest of the nation is looking. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ed Buck, be followed by Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, Ed Buck. I want to commend this city council under the leadership of Alarcon and Cardenas. When they passed the spay and neuter bill, I believe they didn't realize what a revolution it would cause, and that they had the tiger by the tail. Clearly, it's a tough issue to deal with. It has brought a lot of passion, but you have engaged in a humane act without costing the taxpayers any money, in fact, saving the taxpayers' money. Supporting Senate Bill 250 will extend your leadership, and I strongly urge you to pass that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Arnold Sacks, Mr. Sacks, Ellen Laventhal.
Hi, I'm Ellen Laventhal. I'm the president of Animal Alliance, an organization with a large membership in Southern California. I know the opposition has said it's none of our business what they do with their dogs, but it does become our business when we're spending over a quarter of a billion dollars to house and ultimately euthanize over 60 percent of the dogs brought into the system. It does become our business when rescue groups like mine and many, many others have to pick up the pieces of reckless, irresponsible pet owners. It does become our business when city and county shelter workers all over the country have to look these animals in the eyes when they euthanize them. So it is our business, and I want to commend Los Angeles as being one of the first cities in the country to pass a mandatory spay and neuter bill. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments. Hayes Lynn.
Hi, my name is Hayes, and I'm with Take Me Home Rescue, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for supporting the LA spay and neuter ordinance. People are spaying and neutering their pets, and it is such a joy to see it. You are saving money, and you're saving lives, and please give a nod to the rest of the state to pass the state ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank Councilmember Alarcon for all of his leadership and support on this issue. If you all remember, the City of Los Angeles was the first big city in the country to actually pass a comprehensive spay and neuter ordinance, and although it's not working perfectly, the shortcomings really have to do with the city catching up to the public and making sure that we have enough vouchers and things of that nature. So we're doing our best here, but it's not good enough for the largest city in the state of California to do the right thing. What we need to do is make sure that this bill, SB 250, passes the state legislature and gets signed by the governor. This is being carried by Senator Dean Flores, and he's doing the best job that he can. Currently, it's stuck in the Appropriations Committee, but I don't understand why it's stuck in the appropriations, because this is a cost saver to the state of California. The state of California has mandated itself to spend 250 million dollars to meet the demand of all the animals that are being held in shelters and the euthanization of over 500,000 animals in last year, and it looks like it will be this year or possibly more, with so many people losing their homes and so many animals being left out on the streets and are filling our shelters. So I think it's really important for all of us to understand that this is the right thing to do, and I'd like to thank Ellen for bringing up the point about this is everybody's business, because when the taxpayers are infusing 250 million dollars of their state tax dollars to take care of this problem on the back end and to euthanize 500,000 animals in the state of California annually, it is everybody's business, and it's the right kind of business for us to support this state legislation and to make sure that we do the right thing and reduce the killing of animals by the hundreds of thousands of years, hundreds of thousands of years, hundreds of thousands of animals a year, and that we reduce the over expenditure of taxpayer dollars of up to two hundred and fifty million dollars a year. That's what this bill is about. It's a responsible bill. It's the right thing to do. And one of the things I'd like to point out to the opponents of this bill, that they say that it's not fair, but it is fair, because every person in the state of California who wants to be responsible, breed animals, and if they don't want to breed their animals and they just don't want to comply with having to spay and neuter them, all they have to do is register their animal, follow through with that, and they don't have to spay and neuter their animal. It's just like the City of Los Angeles. You don't have to spay and neuter your animal. If you go through the proper process, you don't have to. But if you don't, you need to spay and neuter your animal. It's going to save the taxpayers' money. It's going to save animals' lives. It's the right thing to do. That's exactly what this bill does. I hope that my colleagues will support us on this. And once again, I'd like to thank Councilmember Alarcon for him partnering with me and making sure that we put this forward and also making sure that we pass the ordinance that is now the law in the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. Corretts is on the speaker key.
Mr. Corretts, please.
Yeah, I think, well, L.A. City's done a great job. Unfortunately, people don't understand what a massive problem this is statewide, that we wind up, because of the lack of spaying and neutering, having a million animals a year go into shelters, and such a high percentage of them get euthanized. Twenty-five percent of dogs, two-thirds of all cats that go into shelters are euthanized, and that is because of lack of spay and neuter. So this is an absolutely critical bill to change this. We've provided great leadership in the city so far, and by pushing this item, I think we have a better chance of making this happen statewide. So I appreciate all the leadership on this council on this issue, and I urge an eye vote.
Mr. Clerk? All right, let's open the roll, Mr. Clerk. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
So ordered. Next item I want to call is a special, for the meeting, special roll. Mr. Clerk?
You wish to recess the regular and now go into the special?
Yes.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weesa, Corretts, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Roswell, Smith, Westen, Zain, Corretti, eleven members present and a quorum. Mr. President?
Yes, members, are there any specials on this?
Mr. President, Items fifty-nine and sixty are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on fifty-nine and sixty.
Fifty-nine special.
Okay, we'll call them both special. So we're going to call, we want number sixty-first or fifty-nine?
I believe there was a request to take item sixty.
Sixty-first, then, for Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I call forward Chief Pasinger, who is here representing Los Angeles Police Department. As you recall, last week, we introduced a motion dealing with how the city was going to deal with the motion picture industry. We had a discussion with the chief of police, vicariously through Chief Pasinger. The chief of police has got a statement he wishes to have read in the record, and then I will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Mr. President, members of the council, on the issue of the film security sets, I would say that our department is acutely aware of and respects the concerns that have been expressed by the council on this significant issue. And we fully understand the importance of ensuring that the parties who are standing have an opportunity to meet and discuss and thoroughly weigh the relevant issues and reach a meaningful consensus concerning the best course of action as we move forward. In the interest of achieving broader accord, the chief of police has agreed to postpone implementation of the new regulations for the film set security until the involved parties have had a complete opportunity to more fully evaluate the policies and procedures that govern the many aspects of the off-duty and retired officers who work in LAPD uniform at filming locations in the city. We have every belief and expectation that these discussions will yield positive results that will meet the needs of the city, our department, and the entertainment industry.
Thank you, Chief. And for the member of the council, as you recall, the discussion we had around the horseshoe last week is we're very concerned about preserving and protecting the movie industry in the City of Los Angeles, that we maintain and keep it vital and keep it its home here in Los Angeles, which we've been fighting to do for many, many years. It is vital to the self-interest and the best interest of the City of Los Angeles that the movie industry is strong and vibrant and that we support it every way we can. In the process, the police department was looking toward internally what their concerns were, what their issues were, and had not taken the broader discussion into debate. This will give us the opportunity to do that. I thank the chief, particularly Chief Pasinger, for stepping into this discussion, looking at the motion we introduced last week and saying, we can do a better job. Let's sit down and continue that discussion. I think it's in the best interest of everyone if we remove this and take it back to my committee, public safety, and initiate, beginning today, a process of proceedings in which we will bring forward all the interested parties with the police department to find a resolution that benefits the City of Los Angeles, certainly the movie industry, those retired officers who I have great respect for, and the Los Angeles Police Department, which I also have great respect for, as does the chief. And so I thank the chief for stepping into this. I thank the chief of police, Chief Bratton, for his willingness to give back that timeframe and look forward to coming forward with a resolution of this whole matter in the near future. And with that, I would move it back to committee. We can have a public hearing if you folks wish, but this matter is going to be heard over a longer period of time, and I would suggest that we just hold your comments. We'll get together with you in the coming month and find these, find a way to resolve all these issues. With that, I move that go back to committee.
And thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Corretts?
Yeah, I think this is a critical issue, and we don't want to do anything that scares off more filming than we already have in the City of Los Angeles. So I appreciate Mr. Smith bringing this forward, and hopefully, we can, we can resolve this in committee. One thing I would point out, it's been flagged for me that in the process, we may be taking away part of the film permitting process that we may not want to do, aside from the issue, excuse me, of the retired officers. So we'll want to keep an eye on that and get some input from Film L.A. and other film industry folks to make sure we don't foul something up inadvertently in the process. So I just want to flag that, but I appreciate you bringing this issue forward, and I think it's critical for the film industry that we don't do anything else to scare folks off. And I'm sure at the end of the day, we can, we can come up with an approach that does that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. Members, we do have a required public hearing. If someone does want to speak, I'm going to just call their name and put it in the record. Gene Peterson? If Gene wants to say Hal, Dinsdale?
My name's Gene Peterson. I just want to thank Councilmember Smith and Labonge for all the work and effort they put into making this happen. It was a long deal, a long struggle. I want to thank the council for listening to them, realizing the financial impact upon the community, and helping to make this possible. Again, I want to thank you all for allowing us to be out there and be representative of the city, to work with the community, and work with the film people that work in our city, to help them stay here and to help them come back and keep the business here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would Hal want to speak, or you want, well, put a card in the file?
I'll wait, Councilman.
Very good. And then, Mr. Walsh?
My written statement hasn't been picked up for the CRA public hearing yet. I want to congratulate the city council on creating a great compromise for being diplomatic. I'm not against the city council when you do a good job. You know, you did a good job on this. I'm against the city council when you ask President Obama's HUD secretary to spend thirty million dollars on certain lay sexual stimulus giveaway project, and when Obama's secretary vetoes this project, you won't get the thirty million, because Obama wants to get re-elected.
Excuse me, Mr. President, he's not talking about this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilar? And Mr. Sacks here? No doubt for the file. Mr. Dowd here?
Oh, God, Mr. Walsh, he kills me, the sexual stimulus stuff. Listen, I support the fact that we need uniformed officers out on film sites. The reason I support the uniform, because there's some very dangerous neighborhoods out here in Los Angeles, and the uniforms is a good scarecrow-type thing. It puts the residents on notice, it puts the gang members on notice, and any vagrants on notice, and this issue that they shouldn't wear uniforms is wrong. I've worked on movie sites as a security officer, but I did it unarmed, and when I was working as a security officer on these movie sites, I did appreciate uniformed police officers being, well, maybe retired or moonlighting or whatever you want to call it, but I did appreciate the uniform, because I thought it added more sense of security to my job. So I want the movie industry to maintain these officers with their uniforms, even though they're retired, even though they're moonlighting. It provides extra form of security to the movie industry and to the security officers working with the movie industry. Thank you.
David, AKA Zuma Dog Salzman?
I didn't see those other two words, y'all. Anyway, yes, now, this is very touchy. As soon as you start talking about LAPD, and I want to be very, very careful here. So what I'd like to say, my general concern as a citizen, is a lot of times, if you see somebody with an LAPD uniform or police uniform, you're thinking that's the police. Hey, you better do what they say. You know, it's legal law. Well, on some of these sets, and again, not all of them, but there is times when, you know, one of these, they're only security guards in a cop uniform will say, well, gee, you got to go here, you got to do here, you can't go here, you can't go there. It's just a security guard. It's only recommendations and suggestions, you know, and there's somewhat of an intimidation because they're recognized in the police uniform. So that is a real issue. Of course, yeah, I'd say that's my main issue here. And I'd like to say that it hasn't been a problem yet also, so maybe we can just let it go for right now while we need to have a further discussion to clarify some of these things. You know, what if, what if somebody has to draw a gun? Well, are they drawing it? They got the LAPD uniform, you know, so then, when they're drawing a gun and firing, is it as the security guard, or would LAPD be accountable at that point? You know, very confusing to have a badge and cop uniform when you're only a security guard. That's my concern. So why don't, for now, we just say, you know, everything's fine, we don't want to drive away Hollywood production, we can't make it any more complicated, but we need to have a serious discussion just how to clarify that one little parameter. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. No other cards were here. All names that filled out a card were called, and those who spoke, spoke. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll on this item.
Mr. President, this is to refer it back to public safety.
And let's just do that, then. Send it to the editing room. Next item, I think it's fifty-nine.
Item fifty-nine called special by Councilmember Cardenas, and there are cards on that matter.
Mr. Cardenas?
How many cards do we have? Okay, we can give them a minute apiece.
Okay. Mr. John Walsh? Arnold Sacks? Zuma Dog? Matt Dow?
Guys, I'm a little...
Matt left, he said.
He went down.
He didn't want to speak? He didn't want to speak?
Oh, so the guy walking up is going to speak? All right.
Forget about it. All right, we're going to have staff at the table. Mr. Cardenas, the floor is yours. The public hearing is closed.
I think Zuma was saying that Matt Dow didn't want to speak.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Off the phone, sir, off the phone, and please pay attention. I called your name earlier. You didn't come to the post, okay?
Go ahead.
Let's go.
Okay. Boy, Tom Labonge, you put him back there for one second, he abused his power. Now, let me say, this is about a general bond obligation, and I'm here to say that the city's got a terrible, 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 terrible bond rating. It is sinking so fast and hard, and I'd like to say that, hey, do you got anything to add to this, bro, on the bond? For stormwater projects, what?
Thank you very much, Mr. Zuma Dog. You can get off the phone if you want to address the city council, okay?
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
We're going to have staff. We're going to have staff come up.
Under these stormwater drains, we need to stop the plastics, and I hope that this bond can be used to something about that, because we got more plastic running through the L.A. river than water, as I'm sure. And so thank you so much, and I'd like to remind everybody, there's no law against holding a phone to your ear, y'all. Thank you, Tom Labonge.
Thank you very much.
Information, Mr. President, the City of Los Angeles has the highest bond rating in the United States of America of a large city. Your comments were totally wrong.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, the floor is yours. Thank you.
You stole my opening remark, Greg, but thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, what is our bond rating right now for the City of Los Angeles?
Natalie Brill, CEO's office, double A.
Double A. And how does that rank when it comes to big cities around the country?
We're the, we're the best rated city of the five largest cities in the United States.
Okay, thank you very much. So that's consistent with, with Councilmember Greg Smith just reported. Thank you. Now, so when it comes to these bonds, you're here before us because you went to competitive process, and if you've done so, where are we at right now? Did we get any bidders? Did we get satisfactory bids? How do we feel about them?
Hato Cao. Yesterday, we sold bonds on a competitive basis. We received seven bids with a net true interest cost of three point seven three percent.
That was the winning bidder?
The winning bidder was Merrill Lynch.
Okay, and they bid what rate?
A net true, a net true interest cost of three point seven three percent.
Okay. Now, based on what we were hoping to get from these bidders, is that three point seven three net, is that good, kind of okay, kind of surprisingly good, surprisingly bad? How does it, how do you feel about that?
We believe it's good. If you compare it to a tax exempt, oh, these were Build America bonds. Had they not been tax, had they been tax-exempt bonds, it would have been four point seven five percent. That's about a hundred basis points above what we received, and that equates to about ten point six million dollars that we saved.
So basically, when we went out to this competitive bid, because the market's kind of crazy right now, right? I mean, those are layman's terms, but, so the market's a little different right now? We're experiencing a market that perhaps we haven't experienced in many decades? Is that what's going on?
Yes.
So it kind of makes you nervous when you put one hundred and eighty million dollars out there for bid. It makes us a little nervous, doesn't it?
Yes.
Because of the market?
Right.
Not that we're, we, it doesn't make us nervous that we're doing that, because we do it all the time, but in this market, doesn't it make us a little nervous, because we're kind of crossing our fingers, hopefully, we get a good rate, correct?
Yes, to a certain extent.
Okay, I'm using layman's terms. I know you probably don't cross your fingers and stuff. You, you're, you're much too professional for that, but I'm just trying to just break it down to, to simple layman's terms. So, the bottom line is, we went out to bid, is seven bidders in this market a healthy amount of bidders?
Yes.
Okay. Natalie, did you want to add anything to that?
I think...
I mean, is it, is it possible in this market that we cross our fingers and we only get one or two bidders or no bidders? Is that possible?
Yes, it is possible.
And that's not a good thing, right?
No.
Okay, so seven is a good thing?
Oh, yeah. We were extremely pleased with seven bidders. One of the reasons, when we put our report forward with our findings, one of the reasons we did a competitive bid was because of the Build America bonds. There was a lot of interest in Build America bonds, and we can see that by having seven farms step forward and commit their capital to building on these bonds. And you can see by the result that we believe that the council, with our recommendation, made the right choice with going competitive, because of the seven bidders. Last year, in comparison, with straight tax-exempt, we got nine bidders. So, like you said, in this crazy market, to have seven bidders come forward means that they were confident in the way that we had gone out and bid the bonds.
Okay. And by the way, I appreciate you calling it a crazy market, but I'm not trying to encourage you to use those terms. I think it's a crazy market. It's a very nervous time to be putting bonds out there, and likely, rightfully so, it's a very nervous time for people to bid and say, I'm going to get you this rate, because that's what happened with this competitive process, right? So Merrill Lynch, if, as we vote in a few minutes, and if they're successful in getting the bid, they got to run out there and go in and try to capture that rate so that we can actually get that rate, correct? And if they don't get that rate, what happens? They kind of eat the difference? I mean, it's a bad thing for them, right?
They bid, but the market will bear. So somewhere out there, there was somebody who wanted to buy a twenty-year bond at that interest rate.
Okay. So basically, they're sort of, in a way, taking a little bit of a chance by telling the City of Los Angeles, we know what we're doing, we're going to get you this rate, this net rate, so they were the lucky winner so far, and if we vote on it affirmatively in a few minutes, then all of a sudden, they're going to have to run out there and go find that person or call them back and say, we got the bonds, we're ready to sell them to you, correct?
Correct. I mean, they do have orders that come in during that period. They probably have investors lined up already, especially in this market, but they, they pretty much knew, based on other interests in Build America bonds, that there was a market out there. There's been eighteen billion sold in Build America bonds, so we know that investors kind of like that program.
Exactly. So one of the reasons why I wanted to have this dialogue with you, thank you very, very much, is because I think it's important for Angelenos to understand that when they see things on, you know, in the news, thirty million dollars here, one hundred and eighty million dollars there, all these different things that we're doing in these very difficult times financially, it's not all bad news. The fact that we're selling these bonds, the fact that people are willing to buy these bonds and invest in the City of Los Angeles means that the City of Los Angeles isn't exactly doing all that bad, especially when the rating agencies have us as one of the top-rated big cities in the country, which is something that we should be very, very proud of. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the staff in the city of Los Angeles for doing all that they're doing to make sure that we get those kinds of bond ratings and making sure that we are as healthy as we are. So, once again, I think there's a great opportunity for us to express to the public, it's not all doom and gloom out there. There are good things happening, and we're gonna do wonderful and good things with this $180 million. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardness. Councilwoman Janice Hahn of the 15th District.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Acting President. I was just gonna ask a little, big-picture questions about Prop O bonds, and this is our series, the 2009 B, and this is for 180 million. This was a $500 million voter-approved bond measure for Prop O. What have we sold so far? In addition to this, what do we have left to sell, and when do we think we're gonna sell the rest? Hold my time, please.
Before the sale, we have 354 million authorization remaining. Today, we sold about 52 million. So tomorrow, we will sell about 123 million. After tomorrow's sale, we should have about 174 remaining.
Left to sell. And when do we think we're gonna sell those?
The 174 remaining. We usually analyze how the cash flow needs of the Prop O program, and we issue it on their cash flow needs. So maybe next year, if they need more cash, then we will issue.
So for these bonds that we're selling tomorrow, do we already have the projects lined up for these particular bonds?
Yes, we do.
Can you tell us what those are?
Well, I don't know the details to the project itself, but I don't, I don't think we have our program manager here right now.
No?
But I believe we submitted a list of projects along with our report. We can get you a list of those projects.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to kinda know where, where we are, what we're doing. Again, I think this is also important for people who are paying attention to this. This is something the voters approved pretty substantially, that they really believe in this idea of cleaning up our storm drains, cleaning up our water. They were very enthusiastic about this, but they want to make sure we, we move forward, we sell them, we get a good deal on them, but more importantly, that we, that we spend the money for the projects that they expect us to complete under Prop O. So, thank you.
Thank you. Members, there's no matter before us, and Mr. Clerk?
The resolution awarding the sale is before council.
Let's open the roll on this. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. Thank you very much, staff. Thank you very much. Fourth whiff is requested by our city attorney. Next item.
Mr. President, do you wish to adjourn the special and go back to the regular?
Yes, and let's start with number 58. I'd like to call on the President of the City Council, Mr. Eric Garcetti of the 13th District.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, today before us, we have actuarial report, which is the financial analysis report on our early retirement incentive program, part of an agreement that was made between some of our unions here in the city of Los Angeles and our EERC, as well as obviously in the discussions we've had in council. There are estimates that were made. These are the hard numbers now that have come back, and I'd like to ask the CAO, if you'd like to come forward and introduce our actuarial, who's been doing the work on the report, I believe who's here as well, and present to the city. We, we know these are, let me just frame it this way, colleagues. We know these are immensely difficult times for the city. There are not gonna be any easy answers or easy ways ahead. We put some principles down that it was, that we had to right-size our workforce, that doing that by incentivizing people to get off the payrolls voluntarily was a more humane and a better-for-our-economy way of doing things rather than laying people off. But we also wanted to make sure that we're not doing this in the way that we've seen early retirement packages in the past cost the city or other entities more in the future. And so, we, we couldn't, until we have our final numbers, and these are, again, estimates because we'll never know until the last widow or widower of a city employee on Lasers Retirement passes away exactly how much this will cost. But today, we have some more information for us to make an informed choice. None of our choices are easy ones. None of our choices are attractive ones. They're much better than certainly what the state has been looking at, and I think there've been very responsible ones in the city family, but I have no leading framing other than that in asking our CAO and actuarial to give us a report of what we have before us. We're not gonna be taking action here today. We can't take action before the Lasers Board themselves decides what the impact of this is. So this is a chance for us to hear directly from the actuarial, who was available today, and to ask any questions that we have. So I encourage you to do that today. We won't be taking any action on this today, but hopefully we'll get more information as we deliberate about what the right route forward is. Mr. CAO?
Yes, thank you very much. Before you today is basically a discussion on the early retirement program. This is basically the fourth study, I believe, that was completed on the end of July. I think it was the end of July 31st, I think 30th, we finally got the, the acts, final report from the actuary. Paul Siegel is, I'm sorry, Angelo, sorry. You know, the Siegel keeps coming up as well. We also have Andy Young as well, from the Siegel Company, who will go over the early retirement program. We have their presentation up on the screen, and we'll also hand out copies for you to follow as well, okay?
Good to see L.A. Assistant handing out those copies, please.
Paul will go through the, the presentation, and certainly, I know you guys will have plenty of questions, and, I mean, you want questions to wait till after you get to the presentation, you want them...
I think if there, if there are, you know, things that are unclear as we go through, if you could certainly, sorry? Okay, if there are things that are unclear as we go through, we'd certainly take your questions as we, as we go along. But we'll try to get through the formal slides fairly quickly to leave a great deal of open time for questions. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ray. As you can see on the screen, we go ahead, we are discussing an early retirement window. As Mr. Serrano mentioned, this is the fourth in a series of studies. We are both the actuaries retained by the retirement system Lasers and also by the, by the CAO's office. We will not go through in this discussion what the details of the actual program are. Those are described in the report on pages four and five. Page four, there are actually five different groups of members who would be eligible for this program, and for each of those groups, there's a different benefit structure, which is called a scenario, but those all taken together are the, are this study, study number four. There are two assumptions. Actuarial reports depend a lot on actuarial assumptions. There are two assumptions that are unique to this study. One is that because we don't know how many people will actually elect the early retirement program, we have two sets of take rates, and those are described as alternative one or alternative two. So see, as we go through, whenever we talk about a cost, there are always two sets of costs based on how many members are assumed to elect the actual, actually elect the, the program. There's also the concept of backfill. One of the key discussions in analyzing an early retirement window type of program is, will the positions actually remain open? And so, we have, working with CAO's office, we have a set of backfill assumptions, which were developed by the CAO's office. Those are also a crucial, crucial assumption, these results. Just do 10 seconds of Pension 101. When you determine the cost of a pension plan, it always comes in two pieces. The first is what we call a normal cost, which is the cost of each new year of service. But in addition, we measure the liability for all years of service to date. We call that the actuarial accrued liability. We compare that to the assets, and that produces something called the unfunded actuarial accrued liability, or the UAAL. And you'll see a lot of talk about UAAL as we go through here. The UAAL is sort of a, it's sort of the, the unfunded obligation of the plan. That is not funded in a single year, but rather, that is paid, kinda like a mortgage, over a period of time. So we say that it's amortized over a period of time. But you can see on the slide, that top little blue slice, that's the portion of the UAAL that is paid in a given year. That, together with the normal cost, is the contribution rate to the plan. So when we talk about the impact of a new benefit like the window, we'll talk about it in both of those terms. So when you're measuring the cost of what we're calling the E-RIP, the Early Retirement Incentive Program, you have to consider really two ways. We look at it both as a rate of pay. We normally think of the contribution as a percentage of pay. That's what we recommend to Lasers, and that's the way the bill is sent over to the city. But of course, you also look at it in terms of dollar amounts. Well, the thing about an early retirement program is because it changes payroll, it reduces payroll, you really have to look at how these two numbers change separately. First of all, if all that happens is you reduce payroll, well, the normal cost as a rate doesn't change, but it'll be applied to a smaller payroll, and so that will produce a smaller cost in dollars. That one's kinda easy to track. The unfunded liability goes the other way. It's a little bit trickier, because the unfunded liability is like a mortgage payment. It is calculated in dollars, and then we divide it by payroll to turn it into a percentage of pay. Well, if, if we're talking about the pre-E-RIP liability, okay, the, the existing liability, if you lower payroll, that same mortgage payment now is spread over a smaller payroll, so it looks like your cost went up, but it's only the cost rate that goes up. So all through here, you gotta watch how the dollars move and how the cost rate moves. And then on top of that, after the reduction enforced, the additional benefit included in the early retirement program, that creates an additional unfunded liability. That makes, you know, basically, your, the, the size of the, of the mortgage go up, which makes both the dollar payment and the percentage payment go up as a percentage of the new lower salaries. So those are the moving parts we gotta keep in mind as we go through. We'll look at those two parts now. Oops. I have to remember that when I flipped a page here, it doesn't necessarily move the slide. Let's look first at the unfunded liability. When you put in an early retirement incentive program, the unfunded liability increases for two reasons. First of all, we assume that members are gonna retire based on different probabilities of different ages. This is all based on actual Lasers' experience. Well, the early retirement program is intended to get people to retire earlier than they would have anyway. And that means that generally, they're gonna be collecting benefits longer than we had built into the existing contribution rates. That on its own creates an additional liability, which will increase your amortization cost. And the second piece is, if you are actually enhancing benefits, in this case, we're adding years of age and service, that also increases. So you really have two different things that increase your liability. And then, there's a special wrinkle that comes up in the first year, which is, there's a one-year lag between when we do our valuation and when the rates go into effect. So for example, when we do the June, June 30th, 2008 valuation, that determines the contribution rate for the nine-to-ten year. Well, so think what happened when we did the June 30, 2008 valuation, the early retirement program, the reductions enforced, were not anticipated. We calculated a certain rate. When the city actually made their contributions for nine-to-ten, it was based on a lower payroll, which means in effect, for that one year, you're underfunding the existing liability. So that's just a point to keep in mind. Now, when we look at normal cost, similar, as, as we mentioned before, the normal cost rate will change slightly because the demographics change, but not a whole lot. So, but it does decrease payroll, which means the normal cost dollars will be smaller because the same rate's applied to a smaller payroll. Now we get to the first, I would say, subjective question, which is, if you talk about what is the payroll savings as a result of this program, there are different ways to answer that depending on how you ask the question. One question is, would the positions have been eliminated anyway? Sort of what's your, what's your baseline? And there is, for example, the, the Government Financial Office Association, 2004, did a brief report on these window programs. This is just one opinion to, to consider, and what they said was, you wanna really, as I'll read here, regarding financially-driven early retirement incentives, a cost-benefit analysis should compare the long-term benefits and costs against the default scenario. That is, what would your payroll have been if you had the salary reductions, or if you had a hiring freeze, but did not have the, did not have the additional incentive benefit? So that would, that would say in some sense that the salary savings is not really attributable to the early retirement incentive. Even if you do consider that the salary savings is linked to the retirement incentive, you still have two ways to interpret this. Remember, we mentioned that the members are retiring earlier than they would have been assumed to retire anyway? And so, the idea is, well, if they were, let's pick somebody. If they were assumed to retire in five years, and you put in the incentive program and they retire now, well, one argument would be that the only real retirement savings is between now and when they would have retired anyway. That's one way of looking at it. Another way is, if you leave that position open, that is, five years from now, maybe you normally would have replaced that position. Now you leave it open, so maybe the salary savings is as long as the position remains open. And these are two different perspectives. Okay? Okay? So now, we're gonna go to the cost. Before we get there, a simple, basic, no-free lunch rule about pensions is that increased benefits mean increased costs. And so, the increase in the unfunded liability due to the E-RIP will increase the city contributions. And that is actually a relatively easy number to measure once we know how many people actually took the deal, that is, once the election period is over. So then the question is, given that the city's costs have gone up, what are possible sources that would offset that cost? And there are two that are, that have been discussed in our discussion with CAO and other parties. One is that there could actually be increased member contributions, that is, actual new cash flows into the plan to offset this additional cost. And the other is that there might be salary concessions, whether they are pay reductions or deferred COLAs, that would be included in the mix as an offset against the cost. These are just possible, you know, visible sources of, of additional savings to the city's budget. With that, I want to jump into the numbers. These are in, in the full report, these are on pages six and page seven. The reason there are two pages is because, as I mentioned, we have two different alternative, what are called take rate assumptions.
I've got the numbers on eight and nine.
I'm sorry, it's on slides eight and nine.
Slides eight and nine. I very...
In the bound report, I'm sorry, referring to the full 60-page bound report, they are on pages six and seven. They are on slides eight and nine in your handouts. Thank you. So under alternative one, alternative one, when you apply all the probabilities, everything else, comes up with about 20, not about, 2,229 members, spread across the five groups, would actually elect the E-RIP benefit and terminate service. This would decrease your payroll by about $175 million. It would increase the actuarial, the unfunded actuarial accrued liability by $250 million. It's crucial, this is where the actuary starts with the calculation. We think of everything as a present value, as a value today. So what we're saying is that the increase in unfunded liability expressed as a lump-sum value today would be $250 million if 2,229 people elect the E-RIP. Now, what would that do to the contribution rate? What we did was an, sort of an as-if 2009 valuation. And what you would see in the 2009 is that, first of all, remember, because payroll went down by $175 million, the unfunded liability payment expressed as a percentage of pay would go up by 1.46 percent. So if you're thinking in terms of percentages, even though you save money in payroll, you'll be applying a larger percentage to that because the old unfunded liability needs the same dollars that it needed before. However, the E-RIP benefit itself, when you take that increased liability of $250 million and amortize it over a period of time, you get, in this case, 1.07 percent. Now we get to the next open question, which is, what is the mortgage period? What is the amortization period over which the additional unfunded due to the E-RIP should be paid off? The, the bound report, the blue report, uses a 15-year period, and we will discuss after a couple of slides, what are the considerations, some of the considerations in selecting that. But that matter is currently under review by the Lasers Board, and it's our understanding that that is the purview of the Lasers Board. Just to show you the effects in dollars, because the payroll has gone down, you have a net decrease in dollar contribution of about $25 million. And because the liability has gone up, you have a net increase in dollars of about $20 million. So the $20 million is a 15-year mortgage payment to pay off the $250 million additional liability. On the next page, we have exactly the same, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, we should mention, there is, let me go back, there is a, a portion of the E-RIP benefit, which is referred to as the cash incentive. That is, this is simply immediate dollars paid to members in the different groups. The estimated amount of that under this take rate is about, at the bottom of the slide, $43 million. We want to be very clear, that $43 million is not included in the $250 million liability, and it is not included in the 1.07 percent payment. So that is a separate calculation that is basically not part of the pension calculation. It's a direct cash payment to the members. So we do want to make sure we keep that separate. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Andy. On the next slide, on slide nine, we have exactly the same numbers, but now, instead of assuming that 2,229.
I looked at them, they're not the exact same numbers, they're a little different.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It is the same layout. It is the same presentation. Thank you. It is the same layout, the same presentation.
Clarify that.
Yep. Except now, instead of what would the cost be if 2,229 people elect the ERIP, this shows what would the cost would be if 2,763 people elect the ERIP. One reason this is crucial is that the general target, as we understand of the ERIP, is to get about 2,400 members to retire. And if you hit that number exactly, you would fall somewhere in between these numbers and the numbers on a previous slide. As you can imagine, they simply scale up. The payroll savings is greater, 250 million. The unfunded liability is substantially greater, not 250, but 354 million. And the increase in cost due to the ERIP, instead of being 1.07, is now 1.51. Similarly, the dollars are larger, you have a larger dollar savings due to the reduction in payroll, and you now about a $28 million mortgage payment to pay off the $354 million liability over a 15-year period. And finally, here, the cash incentive would be about $51 million, which again is not included in these numbers. Okay? That's a pause point.
Good.
Now, on the amortization period, we described here what are some of the considerations that are under discussion with the Lasers' Board. There has been a recommendation by the Laser staff to use a five-year amortization. That is based on a particular rationale. As you remember, we mentioned one way to measure the savings period is to look, how long would the ERIP members have worked anyway? Well, it turns out that's a sort of a tale of payouts. It goes, whoops, it goes as long as 10 years for some members, but if we do sort of an average over that group, what you get is about five years. And so what you'll see on this slide is that under alternative one, which is if 2,229 members take the deal, the average period of salary savings compared to when they would have retired anyway is somewhere between 4.3 and 5.1 years. Under alternative two, the average period of savings compared to when they would have retired anyway is between 4.7 and 5.4 years. Taking all this together leads to the recommendation of five years under the rationale of trying to match what the salary savings is based on when the members would have retired anyway. And again, this matter is under continued discussion with the Lasers' Board. Purely for illustration, this will also be shared with the Lasers' Board. We want you to get a sense of how sensitive the costs are to the amortization period. You can see under alternative one, which is the 2,229 members, the 1.07, which is a 15-year mortgage payment, would become 1.51 under 10-year mortgage or 2.86 under a five-year mortgage. Similarly, under the take rate two assumptions, where you have 2,763 members electing the ERIP, the 1.51 from before would go up to 2.15 under 10 years and 4.10 under five years. I do want to point out that the fact that there's a 1.51 on here twice is a complete coincidence. It's just how the numbers broke out. Okay? The last point I'd like to make is all of these numbers are based upon calculations as though they will be paid by the city and by the employer. The next two slides, the last two slides, are not covered in the formal actual report. This has come out again of our discussions with the CAO's office because it is just a commonplace fact of pension plans that when you collect pension contributions from members, the math works differently than when you collect pension contributions from the employer. We've listed here some of the reasons why the member cost rate to fund the very same benefit might be different from the employer cost rate. First of all, I can't keep them all that, thank you. First of all, member contributions are refundable. That is, if a person quits, and either they are not vested, or they are vested and they elect to take their money out, they take their money with them. Whereas employer contributions, if you contribute it based on some particular member's payroll and that person quits, those contributions are available to fund other people's benefits. In fact, we anticipate that in setting the employer contribution rate. So that's one reason. That has an effect of about 10%. So whatever the number is, if it turns to a member cost, you increase it by about 10%. The other ones are particular to the ERIP, the start date and the timing of member contributions. Remember, we deal with everything as a value today, which means a dollar paid two years from now is not worth as much as a dollar paid today. Well, one of the features, as we understand of the member contributions, is that they would not begin until 2011. Let me make sure I'm right. Which is two years from the day we run this valuation, 2009. So that additional two years of interest before you start making payments makes that contribution rate higher if you build that in. So what would actually happen is we would find a mechanism to track, here's the starting liability, here are the member contributions, and then here's the remaining balance. Well, we would want to anticipate that two-year delay. So the third thing that could affect this is just as we talked about, the amortization period for the unfunded liability, you have a similar question, what is the payback period for the member contributions? And that is actually, even though it seems like you're, the same question, it is actually two separate but interrelated decisions. That is, you don't necessarily have to have Lasers charging the city the same amortization period, that the city is negotiating with the members for the payback period. They could be the same, they could be slightly different. We've already mentioned that there's a mismatch in timing because one of them is going to start in two years and the other one would start earlier. So with all those considerations in mind, our last slide takes the same components of cost that were shown before and now says, what do these costs look like if instead of expressing them as a percentage of city money, that is, a city contribution as a percentage of pay, what if they are expressed as a percentage of pay that's paid by the members? And for example, where you saw 1.01 before, here you see 1.19. And I want to stress, that does not include refundability. We haven't built the refundability feature in here yet. So you have to add probably another 1/10th, would get you out to about 1.2%. We've also shown what happens if there's a 10, that's assuming a 15-year payback period. We've also shown a 10-year payback period and a five-year payback period. Similarly, if we use alternative two take rates, which is now 2,763 people take the deal, instead of 1.51, which was the employer cost, the corresponding number is 1.7. And again, if you add refundability, that would probably go up to about 1.9.
So, you got it down there?
I do.
I'm going to ask Mr. Garcetti, who opened up, to continue for a moment there, and we have two council members on the queue.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I appreciate the presentation. It was very concise, and these are difficult, very difficult things and complex to understand, but I think you have a gift in explaining them in a manner that makes them a little less difficult, put it that way. One thing I wanted to pull out, I know we've really asked you to analyze this, and the CEO can chime in as well, but just as somebody who understands the financing, I think, of our budgets, one of the key pieces that I want to make sure everybody heard, public and members, was really the savings on early retirement have to do with the discipline of backfilling or not. Right? The long-term, the biggest numbers are really whether we hire behind the, let's say, 2,400 people retire early if we were to move forward with this, or even if 2,400 people are laid off. Our long-term savings in our budget depends on us not hiring those positions back and having discipline for much more than five years to be able to do that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
The second thing, too, in terms of stretching out, you said, slide 13, that the member costs could differ from city costs in a report. So one thing you said, member contributions are refundable. That would be assuming if we had overbudgeted, I assume that we could return? Does that, I mean, was that some scenario that doesn't exist here, or is that something else?
No, the idea is that if you increase the member's contribution rate by, let's say, 1% of pay, and then two years from now, that member quits, there's an active, that member quits, it's refundable upon voluntary quit in the future.
Got you. Okay. And the start date and timing of member contributions, your main point here is depending on how long we extend this. It's the percentage and the length of time, right? So it's not just the contribution statistics that you put before us of the 1.07 to 1.51, even 2.86, these depend on the amortization period. I think, you know, that's clear in the chart, folks, but I want us to dig down and reiterate that, that if we are looking for this to be full-cost recovery, we have two options. It's either increase that amount or increase the years of the amount, of a small amount. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Now, Mr. Corret?
I have a couple of questions. One is if there's a particularly desirable number of retirees to make this work. It sounded like you were saying that in your presentation. Can you cap the number of people, like, as in the first 2,400 that take the deal, if that's advantageous to this approach?
In some ways, that's more of a plan design question I might ask the CEO to address that.
Certainly, the intent was to look at 2,400 separations. And originally, when the study went out, that was one of the target numbers. However, since some, we've actually had some retirees, the actual number for the study went down to the 2,200 number based on the different scenarios and groups that were put together.
I'm not sure that was an answer to my question. The question is, is it, is there a particular number that's the most advantageous? And if there is such a number, can we cap it at that number so that we don't wind up having more retirees that we're paying for? Is there a reason why we would or wouldn't do that?
I think the goal was set at 2,400 with the expectation with that number moving off the payroll that it would help us in our budget situation, both in the current year and the out years.
I don't think you answered my question. Is there a number that's advantageous for us to hit? And if we go above that number, could we have capped it at that number?
I guess, what, your question on the ideal number?
Is there an ideal number?
It all depends on what our goal and what we're trying to achieve.
I think we're trying to, we're trying to balance this budget so the city doesn't go broke or have to eliminate services that we desperately need.
Well, either way, we're faced with a very difficult situation. Whether we go down the path of having early retirement, we have separations, or we go back to furloughs and layoffs, we're going to end up reducing the payroll, and services will be impacted. It's all a question of to what degree are those services going to be impacted?
Am I imagining things, or did I ask this question four times and not get anywhere near an answer? Mr. Miller, could you possibly?
If I could try, I'm not going to give you a specific number, but you have two issues that you're going to be discussing over the next week or so. One of those issues is the budgetary savings this fiscal year. That is, the purpose that we discussed this is how many people can we get off of the general fund as quickly as possible? I will say to you now that the numbers look like putting a cap is not in our interests because we need as many people to leave the general fund as we possibly can in order to balance our budget. The second issue is the issue of is it being paid for? And that's the issue that the actuary went through. So is there a specific number? No. In the estimations previously, we were looking at anywhere from 2,000 to 2,400 general fund positions leaving. I would say we need at least that number to balance the budget.
So we believe the more retirees, the better off we are?
From the budgetary savings standpoint, clearly, there clearly will be a service impact, and you're going to have those impacts whether there are retirements or layoffs. The fact of the matter is that we have to drastically reduce our payroll.
And the other thing, it's not a question, but just, well, maybe it's a question and a point as well. It seems like the 15 years is a responsible approach, and at the same time, it helps the city with its current budget situation. The five years seems to be unnecessarily conservative and also would appear to decimate the city's budget. Is the pension board taking both those factors into consideration? And can they?
I think that's a question for the Lasers' Board.
Is there a representative from the board here?
Hello, Sally Choi from Lasers. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Well, the question is, with, at least in my view, 15 years being a responsible number, and also one that would help keep the city's budget intact at the same time, is the pension board taking too conservative approach in looking at five years? And is it necessary to go to that number? And is the pension board at all looking at the possibility of blowing up the budget with that decision?
First of all, just to clarify, this is, at this point, only a staff recommendation. Our board has not considered this issue, so they haven't heard the full rationale or all the different options that are available to them. But to answer what the board will consider, the board will consider all issues that affect the contributions that will be made by the city, as well as what effect and impact it will have in the long term for our pension system, the assets that we have to safeguard for all the members, both active and retired members. So in looking at what is the appropriate amortization period, you have to look at the, bottom line is, this is going to cost you anywhere between $250 and $350 million. Over what time period do you want to pay that off? There are trade-offs by looking at a shorter time period or a longer time period. If you amortize over 15 years, it's a lower payment each year, but at the end of the 15 years, you're going to end up paying a lot more because of interest. If you pay it off a shorter period of time, you're going to probably save a lot in interest payments. So just comparing between a 15-year and five-year, it's a difference of $144 million. So there is a trade-off and a benefit of having a shorter payback period. And when we looked at what is the appropriate time period for this particular benefit, we look at the industry practices out there. There are things that are guidelines that have been established by the Government Finance Officers Association of how to look at and how to consider the cost-benefit of ERIP, and also what is the appropriate payback period. And what they suggest, and this is also supported by the actuarial community, is that the payback period for ERIP should match the time period in which you expect to realize the savings. So as Paul Angelo had indicated earlier, the methodology that staff took in considering all other factors as well, including backfill rates, is what we're looking at, the savings that we see, because it hasn't been defined anywhere, either by the city or anyone else, of what the savings period is, what we've determined is, what your saving is, let's say, an individual that's in one of these groups, we assume that they were going to retire, as Paul had said as an example, five years from now, right? But under this program, they're going to retire now. So the savings you would get is between, in payroll savings, is between now and when they would have retired anyway in five years. At the end of that five-year period, you were going to get the payroll savings anyway. So we can't count that as a savings from the ERIP because that guy was going to go anyway. So looking at that time period in between five years, so we looked at the whole ERIP group of the 2,229 people, and looked at what is the average, the weighted average savings from those people taking this package? And that's the range you got, which was between 4.7 and 5.1. And based on those numbers, we are recommending that five years should be the appropriate time period. And the other thing to consider is, unlike other benefit changes, where it's a general benefit change that applies to all employees in the system, a lot of those won't get that benefits until many years out. So it only, it makes sense that you would want a payback period for that, that would take longer. But in this case, with the early retirement window, the people are going to get the benefit immediately. So we're going to be paying out the benefit increase immediately. Therefore, there's also some rationale for saying that for early retirement window, that you would want a shorter time period to pay off that liability. So those are some things that were taken into consideration. Now, if you want to take into consideration the backfill rate, and we looked at that as well, it would be something less than 15 years. It would be between probably five to 10 years. So even if we take that into consideration, 15 years goes way beyond what you would realize in this ERIP payroll savings in the aggregate. So all those things are taken in consideration, and as we look at, it is not our board, our board does not determine what benefit you're going to provide. We are here to tell you how much it will cost and over what time period you should pay us back. So if it is too costly, that is, you know, up to the council and mayor to decide whether that is a burden you want to take on, whether it comes from employee contributions or through the city's general fund. But this is what's under the purview pursuant to the city charter as well as state constitution. That is, the board determines the amortization period and looking out for what is best for the system and its members, also taking into consideration the impact on the city's contribution rate.
Thank you, Mr. Corret.
That's a long-winded answer to your question.
Mr. Corret, you've got to push a button again. You're five minutes, 23 seconds over. So let me call on you afterwards, if you could, okay? Mr. Cardness?
So when it comes to the five year period, where does that come from? Is that an industry standard? Is that a custom and practice within the industry that is considered responsible? Is 15 years considered as responsible? Is it looked at differently? And what is the actual period that is within the legal flexibility? Is it limited to five? Is it limited to 15? Is it limited to 30?
In terms of legal, under the charter, we can amortize unfunded liability up to 30 years. That is, the charter sets a limit to that, so it can't go beyond 30 years. There are different opinions based on the actuaries of what an appropriate amortization period is for unfunded liabilities. But then there's a special consideration for early retirement windows. And so what we looked at is both the GFOA, which says the payback period for early retirement window period should be short, such as three to five years, and that the payback period should match the time period in which you're going to realize savings. So following that second line of what is, you know, matching the payback period to the time period that you're going to get these savings, using that as the principle and with the methodology that I had shared with you, it came out to about five years. Had the weighted average come out a different number, we would have recommended a different number. That's just the number that came up. But five years is what's considered best practice or a model practice. And Paul could speak to what the actuarial community's viewpoint is on this.
There's not an enormous amount of literature on this. The GFOA report, you know, which is one data source, is probably as clear, clearly stated as any, and it does capture this rationale of matching. In discussions with other actuaries, of which we've had a considerable amount recently, because, and I will have to say this is anecdotal at this point, there's a group of actuaries around the country that are developing a response to the Government Accounting Standards Board on all these issues. And one of the point questions is, what's the right amortization period for a retroactive benefit increase, a past service benefit increase? And the general answer from this discussion group was about 40 actuaries doing public sector work across the country was, well, if it's a general kind of plan amendment where, let's say you're changing the benefit formula and it applies to past service, you know, you want to try to match the expected working lifetime of the people who get the benefit. Because as Sally said, some will retire now, some will retire later. And that tends to come in somewhere in a range of 15 years. Similarly, if you're doing an increase for retirees, an ad hoc COLA, you want to maybe, not maybe, you generally want to try to match the life expectancy of the retirees, which again, comes in somewhere in a 10 to 15 year range. But the thing about the early retirement window is if you tried to match the expected future working lifetime of the people who get the benefit, well, I know that number, it's zero because they're all retiring today. So you have to look for some other rationale. And the GFOA, I think is a good indicator, is now you start looking at why'd you do it and look at the period of cost savings. And I can tell you that was also the consensus of this group of 40 or so actuaries, that it clearly, an early retirement window calls for a substantially shorter amortization period than a typical past service benefit increase. So all that went into our thinking and our discussions with staff.
And how much did politics play in your recommendation?
None.
Say that a little louder?
None.
Okay.
Our trustees and the staff, we are fiduciaries of the system, so as fiduciaries, we have to determine what is best for the system and to protect the assets.
So politics, if you adhere to your fiduciary responsibility, politics should not play a role in your recommendation and the board's decision, correct?
It cannot. There are court cases, and I'm sure you've heard, there's statutory reasons and legal reasons why that can't be taken into account. We have, as fiduciaries, we have a duty of loyalty and a duty of care. And that is loyalty to the system and the duty of care that we act as prudent fiduciaries, what a reasonable person would do that is best for the system. That is the same approach that we take and prudent prussian rule as we make investments for the system.
Okay. Now, a question was asked earlier about, I think, relative to your priorities or responsibilities. When it comes to the pension board, what is their first concern? And I'll give you two choices. Is their first concern the pension fund system that they're charged with or the city's general fund?
Under the state constitution as well as the city's charter, the primary fiduciary responsibility of our board is the system. The secondary consideration is to defray the cost to the city. That is a second consideration.
But whether you like it or not, it's in that priority order, correct?
Correct.
Whereas you're speaking and reporting to a body that has, in my opinion, equal responsibility to both. But when you look at state, whether it's state statute, the state constitution, the city charter, or what have you, I believe that the city council's responsibility is equal. So we have to have that balancing act, the city council.
Sure, except that the board has exclusive authority to determine the amortization period. The council does not.
Exactly. You're basically saying what I'm saying. The board's responsibility is much more limited. The council's responsibility is much more broad. And there's legal reasons why the city council shall not tell the board how to handle their technical responsibilities and legal responsibilities. They have that responsibility and they will agendize those items and they'll vote on those items accordingly. The city council doesn't have the authority or, in my opinion, acting, who would be acting outside of a responsibility if we tried to dictate to that board? Isn't there case precedent for that? People get in trouble for doing that?
There is. I'm sure you're all aware of the problems in San Diego, the Lexin case, where there was a quid pro quo between the plan sponsor, the city, and the board members.
So the bottom line is, part of what's going on here today is an education on behalf of the board to the city council. And whether you want to listen or not to what we have to say, the bottom line, what we have to say as a council, hold on, let me finish. We are not to be telling the board how to vote or what to do, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Your decision is whether or not you want to adopt this plan or not.
Mm-hmm.
And understanding what the cost of that plan would be.
Exactly, but we should not be telling the board what to do.
Exactly.
And that's not because we feel like it or not, that's basically what the law states.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sally, let me just ask, in addition to the comments you made about Prop 162, does that carry over to just also lobbying you about a position as well as the limitations of the council directing you?
You know, in terms of whether lobbying is appropriate, I think I would have to defer to the city attorney's office. But essentially, you know, our board is going to consider all the issues and factors that could be weighed in, the city's ability to pay, the financial status of the city, you know, because ultimately, we've got to know if you're going to be able to make your contribution to the system. We have to consider the immediate impact.
All right.
But the lobbying, I think you get into, tread into very challenging and scary territory if particular members were to try to influence a decision.
Okay. The other issue, when you mentioned San Diego, that was a case in which, as you stated, the members of the pension fund and the council basically cooperated with each other to address pension increases along with balancing their budget.
Let me, if I may, I'd like to defer that to Alan Manning of the city attorney's office.
Right.
That case is ongoing. There are allegations that there was an arrangement or an agreement between the San Diego City Council and the San Diego City Employees Retirement System Board where, that if the council agreed to give certain additional benefits, then the board would then, as a quid pro quo, agree to give the city contribution relief.
They give what now?
Relief from contribution. They would lower the city's contribution rate. And that's where the difficulty comes in because that was analyzed by the prosecution, the San Diego District Attorney, as being a contract. And therefore, Government Code 1090 was applied to that. It gets very, very complicated, but the, if you have a perceived agreement between the two bodies, then you do run into a possibility that there could be difficulty.
Okay. Let me ask, you mentioned the word contract. Is the issue of a pension basically a contract between the employee and the employer?
Well, yes, it is.
Okay. Can someone waive your rights to your personal contract?
Under what circumstances?
Under a negotiation or a deliberation or can someone, basically, if you don't agree, take away benefits or add cost to your initial contract that you signed on to when you became an employee?
Well, generally, not. I mean, can one person voluntarily waive?
Can a person voluntarily, but a person, can another person without their agreement basically waive your rights to your pension?
No.
Okay. So if you individually give up that right, that is appropriate?
That is correct. Your contractual rights cannot be taken away without your consent.
So that means that every individual that is retired or in the pension system would have to agree to an increase in their contribution?
It has been, that has been the opinion of the city attorney's office, yes.
Have we had court decisions where, I think the city of L.A. sued, was sued by, I think, the Police Protective League years ago about a change in benefits? And what was the outcome of that lawsuit?
Well, that was, you know, 20 years ago and, you know, I was not, I didn't come to council today prepared to talk about that.
And in the city, we sued and we won because it came out as a clear fact that you can't waive or change an individual contract no matter what your good intents are unless you give a like benefit.
Right, that is correct.
All right, let me ask, if whoever can answer, what is the like benefit in this current negotiation of talking about a .75 increase? What is the like benefit? What has been identified as the like benefit to those who have paid .75 increase?
I'm going to defer to the CIO since we weren't involved in the negotiations.
The like benefit, that is something that we discussed in closed session and I think we could, if we want to go down that path, be happy to have that in closed session.
Okay, we can go. Let me just ask this. If this agreement only covers those that are being basically signed off, those that are impacted that have not signed off, would they be considered, have been received the like benefit?
It's a good question. The issue, I think what you're referring to is for some of the, for those bargaining units who did not ratify the early retirement and what our legal exposure is to that, and that's something that we can sort of discuss further, but it certainly is a risk.
Okay. And I think one of the attorneys advises that it doesn't require a union, any individual can sue if they believe their rights have been tampered with in the pension system.
I believe that was the opinion of the city attorney, yes.
Okay. And then let me ask Sally, if, I think you told us in one of our meetings that there's only three forms of money that you get, is contributions, return on investment, or the city contribution. Okay? And you didn't really care where it came from, it's just that they have to match as far as unfunded liability. If you have a situation to where people have talked about stretching it out to 15 years and that unfunded liability was within the system for those 15 years and that contribution of .75 didn't cover it, where would that, those funds come from?
Well, looking at the different numbers that you got from Siegel, assuming, calculating based on the city paying for this over 15 years, it's the 1.07% of pay. So if you want to count the employee contributions, there's a mismatch, first of all, because this cost will hit you immediately. It will be included in your next valuation because the assumption is people are going to retire beginning this year, right? So the cost will hit you next year. So we have to start calculating that, so that will be included in your contribution. So under the agreement, the employees' contributions don't kick in for two years, which means the city would have to cover the cost those first two years.
First two years would be the total cost and then a percentage of cost.
Right. So if you want to use, just for discussion purposes, a 15 year period, the first year, the 1.07%, that $20 million would have to come from the city for those first two years until this employee's contribution would kick in. And then, as you mentioned, the city employees' contribution is .75, which does not equal 1.07, so that difference would then have to be made up by the city.
And that would be for the entire 15 year period?
Right.
How much is that in total?
The difference?
The difference between the 1.07, I don't know that we, we can probably dig that out of the.
We can calculate it for you in just a minute, yeah.
So the issue is, we know the first two years is 20 million per year and then it's whatever the difference between .75 and 1. something for the other 13 years.
Right.
Andy tells me that the present value, the present value of the stream of member payments, we do everything on value today, the present value of .75% of pay starting two years from now and going out the next 15 years is about 150 million dollars. And so compared to the 250, the value today, I can't tell you what it is in actual dollars, but the value today is a spread of a present value of about 100 million dollars. Andy, is that right?
So that's, so that would be the shortfall, the difference that the city would then have to pick up?
That would be the 13 year shortfall in addition to the two years of 20 million? Okay, let me, before Tom pushes my button, I have one more question. Let me ask, when you look at the figures that were given to us in the chart, do you ever get to a point where if you drop the number of retirements, did it ever drop to the point where the liability balances out? So if you get 1,200 or 1,000, does it ever come up to where the liability matches out what the savings and salaries are?
No, we looked only at these two scenarios. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't really have a sort of a dial on how many people took it. We had two take rates.
But I'm saying, if it drops down, would we consider that your, if you drop down the number of employees and you took that money off of the salary, would correspondingly the rate of unfunded ever match to where it would break even?
What we've been doing here is not counting the salary, I'm not going to be able to answer your question, is we're not counting the salary savings as a source of funding. So in our calculation, you know, as long as, you know, the smaller the number of people, the 250 million gets smaller, but it never goes negative.
It gets smaller, but does correspondingly, the unfunded liability, does it ever drop to the point that at least breaks even with the salary savings that you have?
Sure, your question is whether or not, if there's a break even as far as what the .75 would contribute versus the 250.
Would end up paying for the entire fund, including the unfunded liability.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If you're, I did not realize the question was comparing to the .75. If there's, I mean, it's, it's not really proportional, but yeah, if you, if you take the 2,229 and scale that down, the 1.07 will keep scaling down. At some point, it will hit .75. I don't know what that, I don't know how many.
But we don't know how many people that represents.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Richard Alakon.
What's the worst that can happen? I'm curious about this, this assumption of benefit over the five or 15 years. If we negotiate the salaries downward with our employees, in the case of the coalition, they've allowed us to, or they've waived the COLAs for the next couple of years. Does the pension system not gain a benefit from that?
We have a series of assumptions built in in terms of how pay will increase. And if pays go up less than that amount, then there will be a gain to the system, just as, it's similar to the fact that the, that the, you know, the cost goes down before the E-RIP. The cost goes down just because you've reduced the workforce.
Okay, so the fact that the coalition has agreed to waive their COLAs for the next couple of years, that's going to be a benefit that accrues to the pension system? that's going to be a benefit that accrues to the pension system?
If, in fact, all things taken into account, including that agreement, if salaries go up lower than assumed... It's not going to be a benefit to the pension system. It will be a benefit to the city because it will lead to lower contributions going forward.
But it will also lead to lesser benefits when they go to the pension system to ask for their retirement. Because their salaries are going to be lower.
Correct.
So that benefit would accrue to the pension system?
You know, the pension system isn't really a source of funding. And so, I mean, the pension system's job is to pay the benefits. If the benefits become less expensive, if the benefits become smaller, you know, the pension system passes that savings along to the employer.
Or put another way, a reduction in the liability is not necessarily a benefit to the system. It's a benefit to the plan sponsor who has to pay off the liability.
But the pension system has to pay the benefit at the end of the day.
Right.
And the basis for that payment is the highest salary in one year. So if the coalition negotiates a lesser salary for two, three years, then the benefit to them that would be accrued when they retire down the road, ten, maybe even fifteen years from now, or twenty years from now, would accrue to the pension system.
But the pension system would correspondingly charge a lesser amount to the city. So by the time both of those things happen, the benefits go down because of lower salaries, but the future contributions from the city go down because of lower salaries. And the effect on the pension plan is that it still gets the money it needs to pay the benefits.
But you also talked about interest. If you are paying less in interest, aren't you accruing that benefit? I don't understand why you are talking about this five-year window and saying that it's based on the benefit in the term that you should not have the payment back be longer than the benefit period. But you're going to get the benefit of this in the long run, by paying lesser benefits?
But this, again, speaking on behalf of the pension system...
Well, let me just point a couple of things out, okay? The cola deferral that you're talking about, that is just a deferral, right? You're just delaying the salary increase for two years. So that's not a permanent savings. There'd be some compounding savings, yes. But also, for the person that's retiring, that's getting the benefit, you're not going to pay them that cola anyway because they're going to retire now. Or, I guess, in the case of, if you want to compare it against, if they had retired with the cola, yes, you would save somewhat. The liability would be less because it's going to be on a lower final average salary. I think that, if that's what you're talking about, again, the benefit, yes, it reduces the liability system, which ultimately benefits the city because you will have to contribute less for that person.
So the benefit is longer than five years?
Which benefits?
Which benefit? The savings period?
The... You said... You described the benefit period.
No. I described the savings period as the period between when somebody would have retired and them retiring now. So if someone was... We had assumed someone was going to retire, let's say, five years from now, under this program, they're going to retire now. So you have a savings of that five years.
But there's other benefits. There's other benefits that accrue.
We'd be happy to look at those other benefits.
One benefit is that we have a system. Because if we can't cut a deal, this thing could blow up. I mean, what you're proposing, that five-year payment, is a deal breaker. So how does that benefit the system?
Well, as you know, it's really important for the parties to understand what the cost is and understand what the payback period would be before even agreeing to what the payback... The employees are going to pay as part of that deal.
But if the five-year period is a deal breaker, what benefit is that? Or you don't care?
Our concern is safeguarding the assets of the system and looking at what is the appropriate time period.
And that's exactly what I am trying to do. That's exactly what I am trying to do. But if this deal blows up, you may have undermined your own system.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Ms. Hahn, please.
Thank you. And again, I sure wish we could have had this presentation, you know, a month ago. And that's what's unfortunate. I mean, we have a deal that we have negotiated very painstakingly. And it really had all the points that we all agreed on. And we were given some preliminary projections, you know, on what we thought might be accurate. And in fact, when we get this report today, it's very different. So I think that's what's the problem for all of us, is that we have a deal. And as Councilmember Alakon said, if that deal blows up, you know, we've got a real problem on our hands. Now, I'm going to just ask Ray this because I understand that we in the City of Los Angeles, we take pride in the fact that we have never done a pension obligation bond. I was just wondering, is this the time to possibly look at that idea just for this $150 million that we seem to be a part on, between the five and the 15, between what we would be asking our employees to increase their contribution? Is this a good time, maybe a first time? As Sally said, she doesn't really care where the money comes from. And great bond rating for the city, you know, decent interest rates, which might really be, you know, better than what we've seen a long time. Again, I know we've never done... I don't know why we've never done it. I haven't been around all that long. But just wondering, maybe if this might be the opportunity to look at that possibility of doing a pension obligation bond, particularly so that we can maybe come together on these two numbers. Might be the right time. I don't know how far out we would go on it or, you know, how that would impact everything. But is that something that we could at least explore the possibility of right now so that we can maybe take this number that we can't seem to, you know, get close on and look at going out and borrowing that money?
It is something that we could take a look at. And it's, while the city have never done it before, we have kind of looked at it and then just determined whether it works or not. However, one of the things that we have to be very aware of with a particular bonding of this nature is whether or not it's tax exempt versus taxable. Certainly, if it's taxable, the rate is going to be much higher. And while, yes, we talked about, you know, the stormwater deal a little bit earlier, we had favorable rates. Probably with this market, in the taxable market, we're probably looking at about 7% or so. You then have to take that 7% and then match it up with the discount that the system uses, which is 8%.
Right.
And you start looking at the cost of issuance and everything else. And you have to determine whether it pencils out. So the city is going to bear some cost, one way or the other.
Right.
Now, we can look at whether it's actually pencils out over the long run, but there will be a significant cost, one way or the other.
Right. I just feel like we're trying to put everything on the table. We're trying to look at all the costs for this. I just don't see, kind of right now, see our way out of this. Particularly since, again, we have a deal already negotiated with our coalition. There's something, I think it would be interesting to look at that and crunch the numbers and see if that might be the right time for us to do right now. Is it possible that we could get some...
As you say, we can go back and...
Call some of our bankers, our underwriters.
And see what the market looks like.
And see, you know, what they have up their sleeves that might be helpful to us at this time. I'd appreciate that.
If I may go back to some of the points that were made earlier about what the deal entails and what the amortization period that's being considered. I just want to clarify and even ask Paul Angelo to help us understand. These are two separate issues. You can have a different member payback period than the amortization period. They're interrelated, but one does not depend on the other. It's ideal to have them match. But our decision to do the amortization period does not necessarily negate or change the terms of the agreement because the member payback is a separate issue.
That's true. We'd also like to point out, though, that please focus on the 15-year numbers. Even under the 15-year numbers, there's a gap between what we believe would be required from the members to fund this benefit and the three-quarters, the .75%. So it's separate from the amortization question.
Got it.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Kurets.
Yeah, I think we've heard that you can make a fiscal argument for a five-year period. You can make a fiscal argument for a 15-year period. So, and we've also heard that the pension system has a responsibility to watch out for its assets and, at the same time, consider the interests of its members. It sounds like the pension system's discussion has only been watching out for the assets. If you can do it in a 15-year way and not blow the deal, you're also watching out for the interests of your members because you're avoiding furloughs and you're avoiding layoffs. Can the pension system consider that as part of its process in looking out for the interests of its members?
I'm sure that our board will consider all the issues and factors that weigh into this issue and will do what's best under their fiduciary responsibility.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kurets.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm glad I clarified that your job and your responsibility does not involve including politics in your decisions and your recommendations to your board. So thank you for clarifying that. Did the board and/or the staff of the board, did they tell the city council what deal to try to cut relative to what's been discussed a few minutes ago, as far as deal, 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 whatever that deal is?
As you may recall, we did several presentations and briefings with the council and I think maybe one, a couple times with the EERC. And every stage, we indicated two issues. One is, it is ultimately the board's decision to determine the amortization period for any benefit change. So that was clear upfront. And it stated in a letter that we submitted to the EERC and what the board's role is in this process. The second thing that we shared with everyone is what we found as, from our research, the best practice or the guidelines, the best written guidelines that we could see, which, again, GFOA says, under, for early retirement window periods, you should look at a short time period between three and five years and that the payback period should match the savings period. So those are all things that we have been advising the council throughout this process. We have not been privy or been involved in the negotiations, nor do we weigh in on what the benefit structure should be because that is the plan sponsor's responsibility and role. Ours is to administer it, implement. We will administer whatever benefit you approve. But we will also tell you upfront what the cost of that will be and the impact it will have on the system, the funded ratio, the contribution rates, and the long-term issues. You also had us come in and talk to you about the existing benefits and the rising contribution rates you're going to see for the benefits that we have now. So, you know, and we've been very upfront about that in terms of the authority that our board has relative to the city's oversight.
Now, did you, in those presentations, did you change your information between then and now as far as numbers and figures and information that we asked you to provide for us?
No. We apply the same principles that we've been talking about. The only thing that's new is we know what the cost is. And so, based on that cost and looking at what that final ERIP program is, and then from there determining, okay, what's the savings period or the savings period approach that we came up with, that's what's new. And that's how we came up with a particular recommendation for our board.
Okay. So it's not like you gave us information over the last few weeks and all of a sudden today you're saying, oops, that information was bad, scrap it. This is the new information?
That's correct. All along, we've said, we can't tell you, you know, whether an ERIP is good or not or how much it's going to be until the actual study is completed. And that, you know, for to make a decision, it's important to understand what that increase in the liability will be because if you increase the benefit, there will be an increase in the cost.
So we would have been better off if we're trying to negotiate or do something on our end within our purview, we were better off doing that after this information came forth?
You would have had more information.
That was a question. What?
You would have had more information had you had this ahead of...
But wait a minute. It's one thing to have more information, but it's one thing to have more of the important information.
Exactly.
More accurate information.
Right. Because, you're right. Because all along, you weren't... It was not clear what the amortization period was going to be, nor was it clear on what the cost was going to be.
Okay. So, once again, how much does politics play into all of the information you've been giving us over the last few weeks and including today? On your behalf?
On my behalf...
Don't speak to the politics on this side, please.
Right. From our purview, we've been simply providing the facts, the information that we know. And based on the research that we've done and the industry practices out there, that is how we've approached this and provided information to the council.
Okay. And also, once again, you actually have legal constraints, both fiduciary and legal responsibilities and lines that you shouldn't cross?
Correct.
And you've tried your best to stay within those lines as much as possible?
We stay within that, those confines, yes.
Okay. Now, it was mentioned a few minutes ago that even the deal, as people have referred to it earlier, and that employee contribution increment, even with today's information, that supposed deal still doesn't match up with this information. It still falls short, correct?
Correct. If you're talking about the intent of the deal and what's the result of that now?
The employee incremental increase.
Right.
Yeah.
That's correct. Even if you were to follow the elements of the deal, the .75s fall short of what the cost of this plan is.
Did any of you recommend that a .75 would be an appropriate figure?
No.
Absolutely not.
So that figure didn't come from you?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Perry is our next speaker, and then Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just want to pose a question to the group. And I don't know if anybody can even answer this question at the table. But based on my recollection, I wasn't on EERC, but I do recall that an action took place before, I think it was July the 18th, with respect to processing or not processing colas in, I guess, exchange for the unions taking a proposal to their membership and having them ratify a proposal that was on the table without having the actuarial information in final form by that date. And so, some decisions were made without having final actuarial numbers before us. And again, I'm not totally 100% sure that I'm accurate, but I think that's what my memory serves me. And so, I would ask the group, as we proceed through this discussion, given what we know now, now that we do have, I believe, our final form of numbers, the final draft of the numbers, the verified actuarial numbers that are corrected, if that's a correct term, and I'm somewhat low to say that because I then have a concern, are we trying to take the actuarial numbers and make them fit what we've done retroactively? Or would we have reached another decision had we waited and just gotten the actuarial numbers first? So I put this out for today's discussion. And I don't know that there's anybody who can even answer that. And I don't even know if there is a right answer or a wrong answer, but I want to put it out there. If somebody wants to pick up on that and give me some response, that'd be great. But for my colleagues, I want us to give that some thought. And this is not the last day. This is probably just the first cut on what will be a very long and a very arduous discussion, I think. Anybody? Nobody? Somebody?
Take a little stab. It's certainly apparent that it would have been better to have the study completed before we went forward, when we're in the ERC and certain instructions go forward, before ratification and et cetera. Unfortunately, those were the instructions that were given and we're sort of in this place now, in this dilemma as far as what the actual cost, now that we have that cost data, and as far as how it interrelates to what was on the table. Let's just leave it at that.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sally, could you give us, and I think you mentioned it earlier, the... Sally, could you give us, and I think you mentioned it earlier, the condition of the current pension system unfunded liability? Where do we stand with that well before early retirement or any other benefit?
Based on the last valuation, which was June 30th, 2008, you had unfunded, or we had an unfunded liability of about $2.3 billion. That does not include the most current market downturn. Now we know that as of June 30th, 2009, you know, all along, over the past few months, we were projecting what would the contribution rates be and all that, depending on what the market returns were. Our losses as of June 30th, '09 is about 19.5 percent. It's a negative 19.5 percent. I think before we had reported to you on possible contribution numbers, if we lost negative, or lost 25 percent. So we did do better than we had expected. So based on that, I don't have the numbers with me right now, but I think when we were looking at a minus 25 percent loss, you were, you were going to see unfunded liability grow from a $2.3 billion to about $4 billion, if I'm not mistaken. And we can get you that information.
With the $2 billion, what was the percentage of salary we were paying?
So your current retirement contribution to our system is 19.43 percent, assuming a minus 25.
Of the overall civilian salary?
Of the overall civilian salaries of about $1.8, $1.9 billion.
Okay, and then if it doubles to $4 billion, unfunded liability?
Right. So that amortization payment to pay for that increased unfunded liability, your contribution rate under the scenario of a minus 25 percent loss, we were looking at it going to 20, 28 percent of pay from 19.43 percent of pay.
And that would be starting July 1st, 2010?
That would be for fiscal year 11.
10/11?
11.
10/11, that's correct.
Okay. And so we would go from 19 to 25 percent?
So with a minus, just under 20 percent loss, your contribution rate would probably go from 19.4 to?
More like around 20, this actually is in your, the big report on page 11, it's about 29 percent.
29 percent. And so, and if we do, we do not have a significant return on investment during the rest of this fiscal year, that 29 percent?
Actually, it won't matter because it's valued as of June 30th. So our losses, our assets as of June 30th, '09, our market returns was minus 19.5.
So we said 29 percent as of July 1st, 2010, and if we do not have a significant return on investment, the following year, is there potential that that number could increase?
In future years, yes.
Yes, there is. That, there's a, there's a smoothing method we use to try to take the market downturn, spread it over a period of time. So that is not, that does not reflect all of the market downturn. There will be further increases over the next three or four years.
Okay. So that 29 percent plus down the road is merely added to what the early retirement program could add, not only the cost, but the unfunded liability?
Right. So you would have to add, if you want to go with the 15-year example, you would have to add 1.07 to the 29 percent. So it's an additional cost to your existing liability.
Okay. And then what's, why are we dealing with actuarial studies? Is that required by law that we do that if we're talking about enhanced pensions?
For enhanced pensions, yes. It's required under the government code, 7507, and it's also required in the charter that any benefit change must be accompanied by an actuarial study.
Okay, now.
And under the government code, it also requires that there be a public hearing and a presentation by the actuary, an enrolled actuary, for the legislative body to understand the impact of the benefit increase.
Then is it a judgment call as what comes first, the study versus the negotiation, or negotiation versus the study?
I believe under the government code, it says that before the legislative body makes its final decision, the actuarial presentation must be made two weeks prior to that decision.
And so when we hear the word?
Something, yeah.
When we hear the word "deal," in effect, there can't be a deal until we know what the cost is?
Under the government code, you couldn't approve anything until the actuarial study is completed and it's presented to the legislative body.
Okay. And one of the concerns, colleagues, I think following this from the beginning, is that we were advised all along that the intent was this was going to be cost neutral or we would not be adding cost to the pension system unfunded liability. We would not touch the current unfunded liability that is caused by other factors, but that the early retirement would be a self-sustaining cost in the sense of the new contribution. Is that the understanding you had as far as evaluating the ERIP?
Your question is whether the, there was understanding that the .75 would cover the full cost. There was much discussion on that. Certainly, the .75 does not cover the unfunded liability of $250 million present value.
Okay. I mean, but was the, this discussion throughout this process is that that was the goal, that the .75 was to cover the cost and the unfunded liability of that segment, not going into the unfunded liability of what is currently in the system?
Yes. It was only supposed to address the additional unfunded liability as part of, that would be added as part of the ERIP and not cover the, the losses of the, to the system.
Okay. Thank you. And colleagues, I would just say to all of us, is one of the things, having watched that San Diego case and a few other things, I think it makes, at least for me, makes it uncomfortable when we're talking to the pension people about blowing a deal that they're not a partner to. And I think it puts really all of us in some jeopardy when we use terminology because they weren't invited, nor are they part of the deal. They're merely facilitating what we approve and to view them as a partner as though they have a responsibility to look at the, look at the pension and our budget, I think is inappropriate. And I think it's important as we go through this that we not put them in jeopardy and certainly not me in jeopardy. As I've told people all along, I'm not going to visit you and, and I'm not going to ask you to visit me. But the issue is, is that it is very critical that we watch our wording when it comes to dividing between these two processes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. We do have some public comment cards on this. Cheryl Parisi is our first speaker. After that is Julie Butcher. Like to come forward at this time.
Thank you. I want to remind everyone of the context in which we came mutually, oh, is that better? Okay. Good afternoon. I want to remind everyone of the context in which we mutually came together to engage in a set of mutually beneficial collaborative discussions to solve the worst financial crisis that the city of Los Angeles has ever faced since the Great Depression. We came together with mutual goals and those goals were to protect against the calamity of layoffs in our economy, the personal calamity to families who would be impacted by that, and the social calamity to move thousands of workers unemployed into a, into an economic environment that is already suffering at a 10% unemployment rate. We also, as city workers, were concerned about our ability to continue to provide a high level of quality services to the community and to not impact that service delivery. And city workers stepped up and overwhelmingly ratified a deal that involved great sacrifice on virtually every city employee who participated in that vote. This agreement provided for $500 million in savings over the next five-year period. Wage increases have been deferred and we have agreed that the city workforce will be a smaller workforce than the workforce it is today.
Thank you. Thank you. Two minutes. Julie Butcher is our next speaker. After that is Victor Gordo.
Also representing the Coalition of City Unions, based on our negotiations with y'all, we asked our members to vote on a, on an agreement that shares the sacrifice, that recognizes that we're all in this together. And that included staff of LACERS that came without, to us with the best practices of how this has worked in other places most successfully. We've had an example in this city of how it works least successfully. And it is in that context that we attempted to develop something that makes sense for everyone. We believe the best thing we can do for our pension system going forward is to reduce the number of people relying on it for the long haul. This agreement, if you leave this money on the table, you are leaving $200 million this year, $1.7 billion in savings over the next 15, count them, 15 years. A deal is a deal, brothers and sisters, and we expect the city to honor the agreement that the workers of Los Angeles stepped up to vote for in overwhelming numbers. City workers have acknowledged that this is a mutual process and we are all in this together and we expect the city to live up to its part of the bargain. Thank you.
Victor Gordo is our next speaker.
Good afternoon. Victor Gordo, Secretary of Treasury and General Counsel for Launa Local 777. I want to go back to some of the assumptions that were made in the initial study. Let's remember that the, the study looked at a 25% assumed loss, assumed a 25% loss. We've just heard today that the actual loss is 19.5 percent. Let's also remember that the study looked at a 4.5% per year wage increase and we now know that the deal that's on the table is a, the actual increase will be zero and zero. And let's also remember that the .75 that's contemplated pays for the increased employer costs because there will be fewer workers on the city's payroll. All of those assumptions need to be taken into account. Our membership came forward at the direction of this council and the direction of the mayor in order to try and resolve a financial crisis that's unprecedented. Our, our members took unprecedented steps in waiving or foregoing and deferring increased contract wage increases to which they're contractually entitled to. We're prepared to see this deal through. We think this deal is in the best interest of the city and the workforce of this city, but ultimately, we believe this deal is in the best interest of the entire city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Zuma Dog is our next speaker. After that is Jose Aguilar.
Let me taste of, I'm taking off my glass, my glasses, I'm very sad right now. I'm very sad. I came here over two years ago and I warned, you know, I said, you know what, with the condition of the global economy, Wall Street's going to go down, okay? I warned, we had LACER money in risky Wall Street investments, $7 billion loss. I mean, oh my goodness. I'm, I'm having heart problems right now a little bit when I'm thinking about it. It's, I flabbergasted. I'm just here to say, people, we have a doomsday scenario, what I am hearing here. We have a budget that I told the council, the union would not take these, they put together a budget, the whole thing's a flim-flam. Let's just cut to the chase. Firings and furloughs, get to them. This is a doomsday scenario. We are talking the end of the city of Los Angeles. Listen to the things people said, hand me some of these notes over here. I can't believe, I think, we have to drastically, dramatically reduce the payroll. We are having service loss. Okay, the, 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 the early retirement is not enough, people. The early retirement is not going to be enough to pay for the savings. Okay, the, the money's going to have to come out of the general fund or Wall Street going up. Now, I'm here to tell you, as the only person in the city of Los Angeles who came to this podium and said, Wall Street is sinking, and get the pension money out, the Wall Street's still going down. Okay, you're not going to be recouping your pension losses in Wall Street. That leaves only the general fund. I'm here to tell you, it's the most unpopular position as a city council candidate. Firings and furloughs, we got to drastically reduce the payroll. That is it. That is it. That is it. End of discussion. Get put together smoking mares, none of it could agree. The union said they're not going to do it. It's over, people. Media, the city of Los Angeles is over. It is over. It is over. You blew it.
I could remind folks to please keep your voice down, Mr. Dog, for our equipment as well as to address the council. Jose Aguilar is our next speaker.
Okay, look, the numbers don't add up. You, I don't know if you understand that, property's going to be reassessed next year. Your property tax value is going like this. Your sales tax revenue is going like this. Again, your hostility towards businesses is, you're driving businesses away. So if your sales tax and your property tax revenues are going like this and you got a $4 billion unfunded liability, we're going to be headed for bankruptcy. And yet you have the unions in the state legislature preventing cities and municipalities from filing bankruptcy. Look, the best way to go is to take this up to a bankruptcy judge, have them look what, what money's coming into the city, look at the contracts, because the only people that could break the contracts are a judge. I know you guys can't break the contracts, but a judge can. Let the judge break these contracts, renegotiate the contract, renegotiate the salaries, and let's start all over again. You know, we have to do that. And the situation that, that pink slips and, and furloughs are a dirty word here, you know what? I'm basically unemployed. I'm part of the, the 15% unemployed here in the city of LA. It's tough. And if you think you're going to increase my property taxes or, what is this bond, this pension bond that you guys want to put on the ballot, it's going to fail. Or what, you want to put a partial tax so we could fund these unfunded liabilities? Well, that's going to fail too. And next year, we're going to vote to cut your salaries in half and you could take half of your salaries and put it into these unfunded, unfunded liabilities. That would be the best way to go. All your city council salaries should be cut in half and, and that other half should be put into funding these unfunded liabilities. Thank you.
I'll close our general public comments on this item. There's nobody else on the speaker few from the council, so I want to thank you for your presentation and we'll move on to the next item. Before that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you.
We're, we're good. Thank you all.
For announcement purposes, we have a 2:00 ITGS meeting that was supposed to happen at 2:00. We're going to put that whole agenda over until next week. So no ITGS meeting today. It will be put over until next week. Thank you.
We have 56 and 57 are going to be continued until tomorrow without objection. That'll take us to item 14, called special by Ms. Han. Ms. Han, item number 14.
You know, I think because of the lateness of the hour, street services needed to leave, so can we continue this till tomorrow?
Okay, we'll continue that till tomorrow as well. Item number five was called special by Mr. Parks. It's fine, okay. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on that and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Item 24, Ms. Han.
I brought this forward, I'd like us to pass a resolution in support of a bill SB 378 that's sponsored by Gloria Romero. And it has to do with charter schools applying for facility grants. You know, I've been a big proponent of charter schools and the charter school movement. In fact, it was my idea to create an office of charter schools within the city of Los Angeles because many of us know that these charter schools are cropping up rather quickly in our council districts and sometimes they try to open up in facilities that weren't really intended to be a school. And we've had to work with our building and safety, with our fire inspectors, with many of our city departments to try to get them code-ready and code-safety to open for a September calendar. I'm a big, I will just say it right now, I'm a big believer in charter schools. I think that it is a movement that is here to stay and I think the reason that they're succeeding is because our public schools have failed in, in a number of areas and many parents want a choice. They want it still to be a public school, which charter schools are, but they want to be in an environment that seems to be a little more creative and innovative in terms of class sizes and, and the curriculum and how they're educating our students. But charter schools face a huge uphill battle in terms of funding. As you know, they're funded the same way public schools are on daily attendance of students, but usually it's calculated, you know, the year behind and they're trying to get up and running, they're trying to hire their teachers, they're trying to build their facilities. hire their teachers. They're trying to build their facilities. They're buying their books, their desks, and they're having to amortize it, and they're not, the money is not coming in as quickly as it could. This is a good bill, because it's the Charter School Facility Grant Program, which is available to charter schools. They can apply for this money, but right now, the charter schools must demonstrate that 70% of their students are low-income. And Senator Gloria Romero thinks that we could lower that threshold to 50%, and that would allow more charter schools to apply for this grant. I think that's very smart. It's very reasonable. I think it's a good idea. And anything we can do at the state level to allow these charter schools to get more money, apply for these grants, and help to serve a growing population of students, I think is a good thing. And I would like to see the city of Los Angeles legislative team up there in Sacramento work on this and see if we could pass this bill. It's a good thing. I think probably every one of us has a charter school in our council districts. I know I do, and so I ask for your aye vote on this bill.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. If nobody else wishes to be heard, let's prepare the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 43, called special for cards.
Okay, item 43. We have three cards on. Mr. Zuma Dog is out of time for today's meeting. Mary Ann Seymour. Is Mrs. Seymour here? Mary Ann Seymour. If not, Jose Aguilar. One minute left, sir. Is he still here? Looks like he has gone as well, so we'll close the public comments on 43. Any council members wishing to be heard on 43? If not, let's prepare the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item 46, called special for cards.
Okay. Arnold Sacks, if you'd like to come forward on item 46, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Arnold Sacks. Well, here it is, right in front of you. Consideration of motion relative reimbursement from the Los Angeles Dodgers for city costs associated with Dodger Stadium events from April 2, 2009 to June 30, 2010. How simple is that? So I'm wondering, does the city of Los Angeles have a similar agreement with the Coliseum for special events at the Coliseum to reimburse the city for costs associated with events at the Coliseum? Does the city of Los Angeles have an agreement with Staples Center to reimburse the city of Los Angeles for special events held at Staples Center? How about at Kodak Theater? Does the city of Los Angeles have a special agreement with Kodak Theater to reimburse the city for special events held at the Kodak Theater? How about LA Live? Does the city of L.A. have a special event, have an agreement with AEG to reimburse the city for special events held at LA Live? If they don't, why not? And if they do, well, that would answer the question about who's going to pay for the Michael Jackson funeral, because that would be a special event held at that facility, and the city should have an agreement. And if the city doesn't, why the hell not? Thank you.
Now we'll close our public comment for that item. If we can please prepare the roll on item 46 and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 49, called special for cards.
Okay, item 49. We have John Walsh as our first speaker. After Mr. Walsh is Arnold Sacks.
Check out the blog. Find out what's really happening. HollywoodHighlands.org. I'm really surprised at this phrase here about "inglorious bastards," this movie. You misspelled it. You cannot say "inglorious bastards." You cannot say the word "bastards." In the movie, it's spelled B-A-S-T-E-R-D-S. That's the way you spell it. But that's the way you spell it if you don't want to use bad language. Again, I'd like to thank everyone. Another bitter meeting, nasty, goes on for six or seven hours, and nothing happened. And I'd like to finish by saying, there must be something very wrong in the city when the LA Times and John Walsh both agree that the deal for the--
We're on a special event motion here right now, but thank you very much, sir. That will, and we should correct the spelling. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for that. "Inglorious" as well, seems to be misspelled. If we can please ask you not to yell, Mr. Walsh. Our next speaker is Arnold Sacks. After that will be Miriam Fogler in Van Nuys.
I'm also concerned about a rule of decorum. Last week when I was here, I was reading some magazine titles. My language was considered an affront. Here, I'm reading about "inglorious bastards." There'll be billboards in the city. Any concerns about the children reading the billboards? Any kind of decorum for what's published out there? Any rules that can be applied? Hey, if you got "inglorious bastards," do you have "inglorious bitches"? Be a lucky bitch from the cop, from the commentary of Cosmopolitan, June 2009. Thank you.
Sir, I'll restate and exercise my First Amendment rights again, that it's not us and rules of decorum. It's the Supreme Court that if you have items of a sexual nature, are not protected speech. You can use words that might be in poor judgment around children. I would decry those from you or from anybody else, but you have the First Amendment right to do that nevertheless. But when there's sexual speech, we are able to make sure that that is not given off in a public venue like this. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker, and then Donna Perman, both in Van Nuys.
No.
Okay, and they're not there. Margaret Marmalejo is our next speaker. Is she? Okay. Ann DeBello? Matt Dowd? Okay, not here or waved. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you all for your patience on those items. Next item, please.
Item 55, called special for cards.
All right, Mr. Dog has reached his limit. We have Justin Schnuel. Excuse me? No, we just said that you were out of time, sir. Justin Schnuel is our next speaker. Not here, and Jose Aguilar has also gone as well. We'll close the co-testimony for that. Please prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
There is a special one, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, city staff has learned that the Fire Department will move forward with a modified plan on August 6 to address its deficit. Immediate action is required to request the EERC to take up the personnel issues of the plan at its August 6 meeting. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. Anybody else on the findings? Please prepare the roll then on the findings and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And that is now before us. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item? Ms. Hahn.
I know we're all trying to figure out this budget crisis and trying to figure out what to do. I know I have a lot of my constituents who are worried about this modified plan that the Fire Department is implementing Thursday, so there's some information that came to me from our friends in the Fire Department who just want EERC to look at one of these proposals to see if it might help keep our fire stations fully staffed in August. So I'm just urging that at the EERC meeting on Thursday, that they just take a look at this proposal, that our CLA reports on the feasibility of this proposal, and see if it might be something that's workable for the city. Thank you.
If nobody else wishes to be heard, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Mr. Parks.
Just forthwith on 43, B and C.
Okay. No objection in 13, too, if I didn't call for that forthwith, please, as well. Those motions are posted and referred. Next item--
The desk is clear.
Any announcements, colleagues? I know Mr. Reyes has begun the plum meeting upstairs, so that is underway. Ms. Hahn?
Well, I just wanted to remind everybody, tonight is National Night Out across the country, where people all over are taking the opportunity to thank their law enforcement officers for what they do for us every day. I know many of us are going to go around to some of our stations tonight and thank our police officers in person, but just want to say that this is the night that the whole country stops for a moment to thank our firefighters, our law enforcement officers for jobs well done on a daily basis. So if you have an opportunity to go by one of your police stations, wherever you are, whatever neighborhood you are in tonight, I'm sure they would love to see you. And many community organizations are also having events surrounding National Night Out.
Thank you. We'll be out in Echo Park at Walgreens tonight for that same reason. Mr. Labange?
Yeah, thank you very much, members. As you know, I was out of the city for about nine days. I did travel to Manchester, England, where we developed a friendship city with Manchester, part of our Sister City program, in hopes of getting an international flight from Los Angeles to Manchester, and also participated at a conference in Belfast, Ireland, for our Sister City program. So it was a fruitful trip and learned a lot, and we'll continue to talk about it in days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to have you back, Mr. Labange.
Thank you.
If there's no other announcements, do we have any adjourning motions today? I could please ask everybody to rise for adjourning motions. Thank you, Mr. Alacon first.
Take your time. Councilmembers, Rudy Ortega Sr., who is also known as Chief Little Bear, was killed in a car accident. He lost control of his car in Acton, California. He was 82 years old and lived a good life with a very strong family. But he was born December 12, 1926, in San Fernando. His grandfather, José Rosario Ortega, was born in 1857 at the San Fernando Mission. Rudy Ortega was a fourth-generation tribal captain, and in 1951, he was elected leader of the Fernandeno Tataviam Band of Mission Indians. Rudy served in the Army in World War II. He later worked as a Lockheed Riveter and post office clerk before retiring in 1992. He had been struggling with diabetes and high blood pressure, but he did a lot to improve the social services for a few hundred remaining descendants of the Indians who worked at the San Fernando Mission from the 1790s to 1840s. He fought to raise the profile of the Fernandeno Tataviam Indians, and in 1971, they were recognized individually but not as a distinct tribe. On the day he died, Rudy worked with researchers at the tribe's office in San Fernando, completing the task of identifying members in hundreds of photographs dating back to the 1890s. This chronicling of the tribe's history was an important step in winning federal recognition for its culture, language, and sacred sites. Rudy fought for years to receive the tribe's national recognition, and his son, Rudy Ortega Jr., is hopeful it will come through soon in his father's honor. Chief Little Bear will be missed for his leadership, kind heart, and sense of humor. I had the opportunity to participate in a heat where we actually went in a tent, and he conducted prayer in the Native American fashion of his tribe. And I can tell you, Rudy was a very, he was a very interesting person, of course, but he was very dedicated to the cause of informing people about the history of his tribe in the northeast San Fernando Valley. It was in, it was when we were going to celebrate the bicentennial celebration, that Rudy Ortega Sr. came to me and said that he would protest if we celebrated this, because it was an insult to his ancestors. And I negotiated with the Archdiocese of Los Angeles to conduct the bicentennial in a way that respected the Native American history of the northeast San Fernando Valley. As you might not be aware, his tribe and he as the chief would not participate in any services or any activities at the mission. So we conducted the celebration outside of the mission. Of course, we wanted to be fair to all, and we did recognize the mission's history as well, but only as part of the longstanding history of the San Fernando Valley, which goes far beyond the 200 years. So he was an educator, and he fought for his tribe, and I'm very hopeful that they will soon receive the tribal national recognition in his son, Rudy Jr. I know will carry on the legacy of Rudy. The viewing will be Thursday, August 13, from 5 to 9 p.m. The prayer service Friday, August 14, at 11 a.m. at the San Fernando Mission Cemetery and Mortuary, not in the mission itself, but at the cemetery. And he is survived by his wife, Cecilia, four daughters, Connie, Evelyn, Elisa, Aurora, six sons, Danny, David, Steve, Larry, Freddie, and Rudy Jr., two stepchildren, 49 grandchildren, 54 great-grandchildren, and his brother, Jimmy Ortega. I want to thank Rudy for educating me and for extending the legacy of the Tataviam Indians.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alacon. The two members. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Ellen Breck Vanderlip, who passed away July 20, just six weeks shy of her 90th birthday. Ellen was the widow of Calvin Vanderlip and daughter-in-law of Frank Vanderlip Sr., the man who purchased the entire 16,000-acre Palisverdes Peninsula in 1913 for a whopping $1.5 million. Ellen was born and raised in Norway and came to the United States by way of England and India, where she worked for the Norwegian Legation, the Red Cross, and the Norwegian Embassy in Washington, D.C. Soon after coming to California, she met and married Calvin Vanderlip, and the couple regularly entertained the Hollywood elite of the day, such as Clark Gable, Howard Hughes, Lana Turner. But after only 10 years of marriage, Calvin Vanderlip succumbed to cancer, and she subsequently spent 21 years in Europe, where she raised millions for a nonprofit that she founded, Friends of French Art. And the money was used for art scholarships and restoration projects throughout France. Her efforts earned her the French Legion of Honor. Ellen's other talents included her green thumb and her earful languages. She spoke seven. And last year, she published a memoir entitled "Ecentric, Obscinate, and Fabulous." She's survived by her sons, Calvin Jr. and Henrik, daughters Katrina and Narcissa, and five grandchildren.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of James McKnight, who died suddenly Friday, July 31. Many of us remember we honored he and a number of others as part of the Tuskegee Airmen. He was honorably discharged in 1945 as a second lieutenant. He volunteered and active member of the People's Coordinated Services Advisory Council Committee. His funeral service will be held Thursday, August 6, at the Church of Christian Fellowship at 2085 South Hobart. He's survived by his wife Helen and two sons and their family.
Thank you. Ms. Ferry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Parks, and I want to adjourn in memory of a gentleman. His name was Winston Charles McKesson. He was also my cousin. He was born to Hugh and Susie Strode McKesson on March 26, 1928, in Tucson, Arizona, and died on July 7, 2009. I stepped out today to attend his funeral, and I appreciate your letting me do that. He went to school in Arizona, and his son said today at the funeral service that as soon as he was out of school, he came to Los Angeles, California, and he couldn't wait to get here. He attended L.A. City College and then L.A. State College, and he pledged a mega sci-fi fraternity, and he said, "People in Los Angeles always knew how to have a nice time." His studies were interrupted by his service in the United States Army, and he fought in the Korean War. After his service, he returned to Los Angeles, where he met the women of his dreams, and they were married, and their union produced two sons, Kevin and Brian, although Brian pre-deceased-- although Brian pre-deceased his father. Now, my cousin was employed by Douglas Aircraft for many years, and later as a skycap with Pan American Airlines and then American Airlines until he retired in 1997 and whenever. I would come back from the Midwest. It was always a real pleasure to see him there in his nice uniform, working hard, and always very personable, a really nice person. He was one of twins. The funeral service was held today at 11:00 a.m. at St. Raphael's Catholic Church, and the interment was at Holy Cross Cemetery. And he is survived by his wife of 53 years, Frankie McKesson, and his one son, Winston, Kevin McKesson, his daughter-in-law, Michelle Daniels McKesson, who is also a city employee in the city attorney's office and a host of family and friends. Mr. Parks said he wanted to...
Thank you. Thank you very much. If we can call the roll, please, in this meeting, the Los Angeles City Council.